We ready, man and clerk? Okay. Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to call to order the Ventura County Planning Commission. If you please rise and face the flag. Place your hand over your heart. You'd after me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Please be seated. Will the clerk call the roll?
Commissioner Calley?
Here.
Commissioner Dukas?
Here.
Commissioner Westner?
Present.
Commissioner Anstott?
Here.
Commissioner Rodriguez?
Here. Let the record reflect, we have a full commission, so we have established quorum. Item number four is public comments. This is the opportunity for the public to make a comment to the planning commission on any matter that is not currently agendized. Please understand, if you make any comments, all we can do is receive the information under the government code, commonly known as the Brown Act. We cannot act upon it. Is there anybody who would like to speak other than what's present today? Let the record reflect, there are none. We'll move on to item number five, approval of the minutes of April 2, 2015. Commissioners?
Move to recommend approval of minutes.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion, additions or deletions? Hearing none? I don't see our stuff coming up. Oh, there we go. Please vote.
I abstain, I wasn't present.
Let the record reflect, it's not up on there that it's four approving and one abstention, with no changes. Okay, ladies and gentlemen, why we are here today is item number six. California Resources Sources Corporation, applicant property owner, and Los Padres Forest Watcher, and the organization known as Sea Frog, are here on appealing of a director's ruling on approving additional new and oil gas wells, PL 13-0150. Before we get too far into it, just in case some of you are new, let me explain to you the basic rules that have been approved by the Board of Supervisors for a planning commission hearing. Sorry, Brian, I would've said something before. All right. The purpose of the hearing is for the five commissioners here to make decision. That decision is based on information that has either been provided for us or testimony that we received today. It should all come this way. There's a natural tendency to want to talk different directions, but I'm going to keep reminding you, you talk here to the five of us. It is our job here to decide that. The commissioners will ask questions when they feel it's appropriate, and, but this is the order. Staff will present what we're here for, basically known as the staff report. And once they are finished, then the planning commissioners will ask any questions of the report. At that point, then the commissioners will make any disclosures regarding this property. At that point in time, because this is an appeal, the appellant will come up first. That'll be, my understanding, it's Sea Frog wants to go first, and then the watch will go second. All right? Those that support the appeal will get to talk. Then those who oppose the appeal will get to talk. All right? And then at that point in time, the commissioners will engage whomever they feel is appropriate to get answers to questions. Now, this is a de novo situation, because it is an appeal and the applicant's rights are present. And I'm going to defer now to county council as far as what a de novo hearing is.
Thank you, Chair Westner. De novo hearing means that your commission is hearing the applicant's request for a modified conditional use permit, as though the request was never heard before by the county. And so in this case, the planning director did hold a public hearing and approve the request, but because that request was appealed, the slate is white clean. And so before you today is the same request for a modified conditional use permit, as though it has never been heard by the county before. And so that's what an appeal does under our land use hearing process. It wipes the slate clean and it takes the request to the next highest decision maker.
Okay. Thank you, county council. But the purpose of this commission has always been to hear everybody. But we need to do it in orderly fashion, so we can comprehend what you want to say to us, the information you want us to use to make a decision. So that's the flow of everything. And then at that point, when the commissioners feel that they have an information, whoever wants to speak has had their piece. We will close the public hearing and then deliberate. All right? One other ministerial thing, if you are parked in the parking lot immediately to my right out here, it's a three-hour time limit. I will try to remember around 10 o'clock, 10:15, to take a break and allow those, if they want to move their vehicles. The county will ticket you. All right? All right. With that, ladies and gentlemen, please put your cellphones on stun. And staff.
Thank you, Chair Westner and members of the planning commission. You know, we're here to talk about a request for a modified conditional use permit for an existing oil and gas facility. Before I get into the presentation, just for purposes of the record, and I'll explain later why I'm doing it, I want to say for purposes of the record, my name is Brian R. Baca. I have a degree in geology from California State University, Northridge, bachelor's degree. I have a master's degree in geology from UC Santa Barbara. I'm a licensed professional geologist in the state of California. I'm a licensed certified engineering geologist in the state of California. And I'm a licensed certified hydrogeologist in the state of California. And I've been practicing or studying geology since 1973. And I was president of the soccer club. So, therefore, fully qualified. Anyway, as I said before you today, is a request by California Resources Corporation for a modified conditional use permit. That's case number PL 13-0150. And this request is a modification of an existing permit, CUP 3344, and the latest modification of that one. That permit carries an expiration date of February of 2015, which would be in the past, as of today. But they have been in process for a couple of years in their request for a modified conditional use permit, so that permit remains in effect pending the outcome of this proceeding, or subsequent proceedings. So we'll go ahead and get into it. The project site is located in the upper Ojai area, right here. This is Santa Paula, Highway 150. This would be Santa Paula Canyon, and in the general vicinity of Thomas Aquinas College. Here's an aerial photographic view of the project site. Here's Thomas Aquinas College. Here's State Route 150. Santa Paula's would be to the south of this picture. You can see the roads along here. Here is drill site number three, drill site number two, drill site number one, and drill site number seven. Just to explain the numbering, drill sites four, five, and six were removed from the project with a permit modification that was done a couple decades ago. Again, here's a map view of it, and this is the outline of CUP 3344. It actually laps into the, you know, the adopted boundary of the Los Padres National Forest. And Santa Paula Canyon runs right through here. The project description would be the continued operation of the existing oil field facilities. The existing facilities include 17 existing oil and gas wells and various other accessory equipment. The proposal also includes the request to drill 19 new oil wells on those same existing four pads that are already part of the existing facility. There'd be no new grading. The new wells will not use hydraulic fracturing, that's specified in the project description. And there'd be approximately four maintenance trips per day. One thing to talk about in trucking, or in maintenance trips, there is no trucking from this particular site. All the oil and water and gas are conveyed from this project site through pipelines, and so there is no heavy trucking involved in the project. And hasn't really been since, for at least 25 years. This is a little more close-up picture. And again, here is Thomas Aquinas College. Here is State Route 150 over here. There's an oil field access road that runs up here to drill site three, drill site two, past drill site one, and up to drill site seven. All of these facilities exist. They were permitted approximately 30 years ago, each one of them. Drill site one is the site of some tanks and various other accessory equipment. The tanks are decommissioned, because they're not used anymore on this site, because all the fluids are piped into another site, an adjacent CUP in a consolidation. Oh, one other thing from that last picture. Right here is Santa Paula Creek and Santa Paula Canyon. You can see the active creek channel right here and the riparian vegetation along the channel.
Can I ask, excuse me, can I ask a question, Brian, while you're on that slide?
Sure.
Where's the punchbowl in relation to that picture?
Pardon me?
Where's the punchbowl? Is it off the grid? Okay, thank you.
It's off to the right and back in the hill.
Okay, thank you.
And just as a, for purposes of slide, because I'm sure it'll come up later, the public trail that is used to access Santa Paula Canyon, actually people park out here in front of the entrance of the college. And the trail is actually the road, and at least part of that, from here all the way to drill site seven, and around drill site seven is the public trail. It is the road, the paved road itself, and a trail loop around drill site seven that is maintained, and that's part of the permit that was given, the operator has to maintain the public trail around their drill site, which they have and it exists today. This would be the entrance, and this is a familiar entrance. Just to the right of this picture, there's another road that goes off and leads up to drill site three, and, but this is the main entrance to Thomas Aquinas College. There's the roadway that is on the site. Again, here is drill sites three, two, one, and seven, and the road that connects them This is drill site number one, and you can see there's active wells right here. This is the road that crosses by drill site one. This is a picture at the, at a point where there's a gap in the vegetation to look into drill site one. This is how it appears today. The applicant has put some screening, replaced the screening on the fences that are there, and repaired the gate. This is drill site number two, and it looks that way and has looked that way for a long time. Drill site number three. And here is drill site number seven. Again, here is the paved road that comes to the gate of drill site seven, and here is the public trail that goes alongside of drill site seven.
Which way is north on that?
Which way is north? North would be to down, toward the floor. I could probably turn it over if it would, if it'd be better. Anyway, this is the gate to drill site seven. You can see there's some wells there. This is, you're standing on the public trail. Here's the public trail right here, and there's a fence separating the trail from the drill site. And there is a, there's sort of a safety wire on the other side of the trail. The trail actually sits on the berm, or levee, that is between the Santa Paula Creek and the drill site. This is how it looks today, with some screening that the applicant put in. And, you know, you can, and I'm sure it'll be discussed later, as to which you prefer, either this or that. These are typical pumping units. These are on drill site seven. The permit history, it all started with an exploratory well, and a productive one, in 1971. And it's been, you know, various modifications over time. There's at least 12 modifications that have been done on this permit, two number elevens for some reason, but nevertheless, there's been 12 modifications. And so we start in '73. There's one more well, a negative declaration is adopted in 1976, another negative declaration is adopted, and now the total wells go from, go from, starting with one, you go to two, then to six. Then in 1978, there was a modification granted by the planning commission for 30 wells, for a total of 36 wells. And the first environmental impact report for the project was reviewed and certified by the county. In 1985, there was another request to modify the permit for the continued use of 14 wells, and, again, to continue to have the option to drill up to 36 wells. A second environmental impact report was certified, and it includes a mitigated negative declaration. To explain that more clearly, there was a mitigated negative declaration prepared. That determination by the Environmental Report Review Committee was challenged, it was appealed. And the Board of Supervisors agreed with the appeal at that time, and said that the mitigated negative declaration is okay, except in areas of traffic and noise. And they sent it back to have a focused EIR prepared, that's EIR number two, on traffic and noise issues, with the MND incorporated as part of that EIR. So that constitutes the second EIR that was prepared on this project. In 1989, there was a PAJ, a permanent adjustment granted, and that was merely a time extension to allow the wells to be drilled at a later time in the history year. The operator drilled another well in 1989, and in 1990, they drilled two more wells, those last three being on drill site number seven. In 1997, there was a public hearing, and the planning director granted mod 11 for another time extension for drilling, which allowed wells to be drilled up until 2011. At that time, there was also a requirement to turn in an as-built site plan for all the drilling sites. And so all the pads, as you see today, were validated in that hearing, as they are, which is, as you see them today. In 2011, again, the drilling period expired for any further well, so we're at where we are today. In 2013, the current application was filed. In February, the planning director granted the modification. An EIR addendum was prepared, which is in your packet. And on February 26, the decision of the planning director was appealed. And that's why we're here today. And the addendum is, again, that's a statement that the previous EIR, or EIRs in this case, cover the environmental impacts of the wells, and there's no new impacts of it identified. So you have two EIRs for both, for a total of 36 wells, which is the same as the project is today, and we have not identified any new significant impacts. I would look at the responses to comments. That would be in the EIR addendum, exhibit 4D, it says 4A here. That would be a typo in four-inch letters. And each of the comments were received in the public hearing, and in letters for the planning director public hearing are incorporated into that. And so we, of course, have done noticing, including people within 1,000 feet of the project, a legal ad, and of course, we've emailed all the appropriate public interest groups, including the appellant's. So the two appellant's are Citizens for Responsible Oil and Gas. They filed and list 10 grounds of appeal. Los Padres Forest Watch just lists one ground of appeal, and I'm going to go through those. We'll start with Sea Frog. They talked about that two wells in the application are being investigated. Well, for freshwater intrusion. Well, none of the wells, none of the 17 wells on the site are injectors, so they're, they're not being investigated. And the, because the water is injected elsewhere. And the construction standards for wells, that's one thing that Dogger has done for 100 years, is make sure that oil wells don't leak or transmit fluids from the intended zone to another zone. The excitement that we're seeing in the newspapers regarding the injection well program involve wells that were deliberately permitted by Dogger to inject in certain zones that had not yet received an EPA exemption. And so that doesn't have anything to do with the failure of the design standards for wells enforced by Dogger. And so we haven't identified any significant impacts. And then this talks about trucking of wastewater, is the second ground of appeal. And, of course, the wastewater is piped to the hamp these, where there's an injection well, that they're allowed to use, and is permitted, fully permitted by Dogger, and so there is no trucking of wastewater. So, in fact, our zoning ordinance encourages the consolidation of facilities to limit the number of facilities that are out there. And so that's what has happened here, where the actual production facilities between the hamp and the Ferndale lease, which are adjoining each other, were consolidated on one site. So this ground of appeal is without merit. Again, we're talking about truck traffic, and there's no inability to transfer the wastewater, and there's no trucking required or proposed. So truck traffic will neither begin nor increase. So again, there's no merit to this appeal. Drill pad number seven is in violation of the non-coastal zoning ordinance, because it's too close to a red line stream. This, this particular issue is addressed in a February 10, 2015 memorandum, provided by me to the planning director, and also reviewed and found adequate by the Public Works Agency in a memorandum from manager Jim Otusa. So that issue's been addressed, and the required setback at this site is 100 feet. And so the existing wells are more than 100 feet away, and the proposed wells will be required to be more than 100 feet away from the top of bank of the creek. So, and of course, there's no new grading or expansion of drill site seven proposed. So it would be just used as it is. And then it talks about this ground of appeal, that the drilling of 19 wells has expired and have been, you know, that vintage has shown a lack of interest in the project. And I'm not quite sure I understand this one, but number one, secret documents don't expire. The certified EIR evaluated the 36 wells, and the company applied for the modification prior to the expiration date of the permit.
I guess that's been questioned in one place. It says that they should have done it 18 months prior, and it says, no, they did it 15 months prior. Can you answer that point?
Well, the, the permit and its conditions say that you should apply 18 months prior to expiration. They applied 16 months prior to its expiration. However, the zoning ordinance allows you to apply for a modification up until the date of expiration. So the zoning ordinance sort of supersedes that permit condition. They could, they have, they have the right to do it either under the permit condition or under the zoning ordinance. So there is no issue there. We'd have to process it. We can't, in fact, this is an interesting thought. You cannot have a condition which says that a permit applicant or permutee cannot ask the government for something. We cannot tell them, well, you can't apply for a month. We can't do that. You, every citizen in the United States has the right to petition their government and ask a question. And it's the government's responsibility to say yes or no. But you cannot prevent an application from coming in the door, regardless of what a permit condition says. So, I mean, that was really an encouragement for them to get in early, so they didn't, you know, we didn't drag on, and they didn't come in five minutes before the expiration date. But it had no force or effect, other than you had to follow the ordinance requirements.
Can I, can I dovetail on that? What is the actual, what was the actual expiration date of the CUP?
February of this year.
Of this year?
Yes, four months ago.
Okay. And the application was received some 16 months prior to that?
Prior to that, that's correct.
Okay, thank you.
The next ground of appeal is that there's no mention of endangered species on the site, and the lead agency has not provided evidence that is addressed, especially the condor. And our answer to that is that impacts for biological resources are evaluated in the EIR. And of course, we haven't received any substantial evidence of condor injury or death due to oil operations, so, and that's addressed in your responses to comments, so there's no new evidence of a potentially significant impact. So there's no basis there by which we can require an EIR, or even make a finding of an impact. The cumulative effects of oil and gas wells in the upper Ojai Valley have not been studied in this century. So this was an issue about cumulative effects. And, and that's addressed in your staff report, and I've just summarized it here, is that, you know, the things that an oil, that oil wells could accumulate with would involve air quality, traffic, biological resources, or visual resources. Well, here's the, the answer in summary, is that in air quality, all those facilities are under the purview of APCD, and they're, they're under ministerial permits. And under the adopted air guidelines of this county, that is also adopted by the BC APCD, those are ministerial, and they do not have the potential for significant impact through the program that the APCD operates. So that they both don't have a project-specific impact on air quality, and neither do they contribute to a cumulative impact, under our rules. Traffic, well, there is no new truck traffic. So you can't contribute new traffic when you're not, you don't have any traffic. Biological resources, there's no new disturbance of any site. You would just have existing drill pads that are already denuded and used for the oil purpose, with a few more wells on the same pads that already have actively operating oil wells. So there's no new biological impacts. And in visual resources, it's going to look the same as it has looked for the last 25 years. So there's no new impact there, so there's nothing for it to accumulate with. And you can't see any other oil site from this site. And so they're, they're not accumulating in a grand, a grand vista of oil wells all over the landscape. You really can't see them because of the vegetation throughout the upper Ojai area.
Commissioner Rodriguez has a question, Brian?
I have a question as it relates to traffic, and I heard your comment about the four maintenance trips per day. It seems to me, in that thousand-plus pages we read, that there was some comment about truck traffic being used if the, if the pipeline becomes operation, in operation, inoperative for some reason or other. Did I misread that, or is that?
No, you, you-
And how is that addressed, Chair?
Commissioner Rodriguez, the existing permit has a provision that for some reason that the pipeline is down, is inoperable, they can temporarily truck for up to 30 days. And that's been a condition that's been in there for a long time. So in terms of a long-term traffic impact, there isn't any. There could, there could, at most, could be a 30-day occasional episode where they would truck. And, and that's it. But so far, it hasn't, as best I know, one time, there was some temporary trucking in 1995, when the pipeline went down. And I'm not aware of any trucking after that time. So that's a provision in the permit. But there's no planned or long-term truck traffic.
That was, I think, part of my question, because I recall seeing temporary, but I didn't see a temporary defined in the document.
It's a maximum of 30 days.
Okay. I didn't, I didn't recall seeing it defined in the document that we looked at.
Okay.
But that's what it is, though.
Yeah, it's 30 days.
Thank you.
There was another issue about water usage. Well, the water usage for the 19 wells, that is, the water used to drill the wells, the wells, when they're operating, don't use any water. They actually produce water, wastewater. The, the water uses that is temporarily used would add up to about 10 acre feet over the 30-year lifespan of the permit. So that's the equivalent of a third of an acre foot per year, which is the equivalent of one small, single-family dwelling. So that's below the county threshold, and it does not represent a significant impact on water resources. And like I said above, no cumulative effects have been identified. We do have a control effect here. I guess my presentation has come to an end.
Battery budget down this year for staff?
Well, if you guys can hear me up there, just go to the next slide when I raise my I think we're, I think we're locked up there. Just raised my hand, and you can go to the next slide. Ah, there we go. Okay. The, another ground of appeal is that the greenhouse gas emission done by staff is inadequate to meet the requirements of law. Well, we've had plenty of conversations and analysis by the Air Pollution Control District, and, and their view is that the greenhouse gas emissions- and their view is that the greenhouse gas emissions have been way overestimated for this project and they're far below the 10,000 metric ton per year limit. And we have more information on this issue later. And so there's no evidence that these wells would have a substantial impact on greenhouse gas production. And remember to point out that the project involves 19 oil, operating oil wells. All of the gas is piped into the Southern California Gas Company system. It's not flared and it's not vented. It's all piped into the general system that feeds homes in Southern California. So, this would have even less impact than just a standard well operation. And the evaluation that they've done uses standard EPA factors, which is the best available information. And APCD has, I've talked to them as late as last night, that it doesn't come close to meeting the threshold. So there's no merit to this ground of appeal. The well-drilling project has never been authorized for more than a few years. The authorization time in this addendum is overly broad, especially when the effects of global warming are intensifying. So, you know, we don't understand the idea of a narrow, the CUP was effective, you know, has been effective for 44 years and they drilled wells between 1971 and 1990. So there was a 20-year period in which wells were drilled. And the CUP expiration is not related to global warming impacts. And again, we haven't identified any significant effect on greenhouse gas production. So again, this is without merit. And then the final one from Sea Frog is that the site is part of the original Chumash Village of Sisah and that there is likely to be some type of impact on cultural resources with the development that's proposed. Well, unfortunately, the, fortunately or unfortunately, the EIR, unlike documents we produce today, actually shows the, that is, the last EIR, actually shows the boundaries of the Chumash Village and it essentially coincides with Thomas Aquinas College. And that site was studied by the chief archaeologist of UCLA and there's been a large archaeological study. All of the drill sites, that is, all of the areas that would be used for the oil facility are outside, far outside of the limits of the archaeological site. And that's in the document. And furthermore, the sites are already graded and have already been constructed and below the ground, there would not have been any archaeological sites from the Chumash Village of a few hundred years ago because the site's already graded. And so anything that might have been there wouldn't be intact today. But the analysis and the information we have is that there wasn't any archaeological sites, you know, archaeological materials on these drill sites. So again, that's without merit. The Los Padres Forest Watch ground of appeal, the decision doesn't comply with SEQA, the non-coastal zoning ordinance, and other state and federal laws pertaining to the protection of the environment. Well, this is pretty general. We're not aware of any violation of law. We've followed the requirements of SEQA to prepare an environmental document. It's, the consistency with the NCZO is described in your staff report and we have no other evidence that they're in violation of any law. So again, that's without merit. So, in response to the grounds of appeals, there's no substantial evidence of significant impacts. There's no substantial evidence to support a fair argument to require an EIR. And there's no evidence that the planning director made her decision in error. Sea Frog recommends that you overturn the planning director's decision. You direct staff to prepare a, either a full environmental impact report or a supplemental EIR that addresses cumulative and specific potential impacts of the project as outlined in the appeal. And limit any future CUP area to a maximum time period of five years and of course, refund all fees to the appellant. Well, we of course disagree with this, but there is something in here. This is, as Mr. Brooks and Mr. Kuiper point out, this is a discretionary hearing and your commission is free to decide what the terms of the new CUP are, if there is one. And so, at least as the part about the maximum time period of the CUP, that's within the discretion of your commission.
One question, but if we were to change this, we'd have to determine specific findings to make those changes. Is that my understanding?
Mr. Chair and members of the commission, well, I'll let Mr. [inaudible].
It would depend on what the condition was. But you have, like Mr. Baca said, this action is completely discretionary and so you have discretion to deny the CUP in whole or condition it as you see fit. And so any action that you take must meet, must be supported by substantial evidence, basically. And so when you get into the specific conditions, we can talk about what findings you might need for those because it would depend on what condition would be involved.
The Los Padres Forest Watch recommended actions, again, find that the addendum is inadequate to comply with the requirements of SEQA and direct us to prepare a supplemental or subsequent EIR and refund the fees to the appellant. Again, staff disagrees with that and we'll, I'll talk more about that in a minute. You've received some late submittals and you should all have a copy of a memorandum dated yesterday from myself and the case planner, Jay Dobrowolsky, that responds to each of the five documents that you have been provided. None of those change any of the findings and I've made specific responses. I should point out that we spent a lot of time responding to the public comments. We don't take them lightly and we take them seriously. And so there's, I believe, 41 separate comments in this package. And we've taken our time and done a thorough job in responding to each one of them. In summary, none of the comments point out an error by the planning director in her decision or that there's a potentially significant impact on the environment of the project.
Excuse me, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Rodriguez.
You referring to Exhibit 7? Your comments right now are referring to Exhibit 7 that we received this morning.
It should be June 10th, the memorandum you have, that's seven, because I turned it in last night.
Thank you.
Could be seven, yes.
If I could just a second, did the appellant's receive a copy of this? Okay. You're certainly welcome to my copy if somebody would like to hit the, oh, if I keep mine. Hit the clerk, if, Mr. Brooks, if you want to come down?
Yes.
Clerk, he'll give you a copy.
I read it online this morning.
Oh, okay.
That's why I was saying I don't really have a copy.
Okay, does any, does any of the appellant's?
None of the appellant's received copies.
All right, all right. You'll be given time to review them. Please proceed, Mr. Baca.
So, the memorandum, Exhibit 7, includes the response to late submittals, the inclusion of a staff memorandum that we had provided to the planning director for the hearing on January 8th, the planning director hearing, and somehow it was inadvertently left out of your packet, so I've added that into this memo. A clarification of condition number seven, just to make sure it's clear that the setback standards for drill site seven that are in the staff memorandum are directly linked into the permit conditions. And then there's a typographical correction that's included in that memo. So, where I said 400 and I meant 40. So, that's what's in the staff memo. I won't read you the staff recommended actions. You can read those yourself. That, needless to say, staff has recommended that the project be approved as indicated in your staff report. And with that, I'm available for any further questions.
Okay, any questions of staff at this time? Commissioner Iducas?
Aside from the submitted by Blue Tomorrow not having an engineering stamp, are there any issues in here that staff responded to, not just who wrote it, but the issues that are raised in it?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Iducas, I glanced through that Blue Tomorrow document. Legally, it's inadequate on its face. It even includes a statement, a disclaimer, that it's not intended for official flood plane determinations.
I'm aware of that. I was wondering if you had a chance to review the substance of what it's contained and not who wrote it?
As best I can tell, there's no actual recommendation as to what a setback would be under the NCZO. There's just some flood analysis using a HECTU computer program and some slight disagreement over where the top of bank should be. So as best I can tell, they're trying to say that the well should be set back further, you know, and, but there's no actual conclusion. And again, an undated and unsigned report is not substantial evidence on the record. That's why we did not provide you with a detailed analysis of something that really has no bearing in a public hearing. It cannot be used for any purpose and it cannot be cited as substantial evidence in the record. I actually spoke to engineering manager, Jim Otusa, about it and his statement to me was, "We're not interested in unsigned and undated reports." And they don't have any intention of reviewing it because it's on its face, it's invalid.
I see. Maybe I can direct this question to County Council.
Please do.
There are certain things where we can take a layperson's testimony as substantial evidence, for example, you know, somebody who has firsthand experience with, you know, traffic being an issue, you know, an intersection that's constantly clogged, over, that may be counter to a traffic engineer. But the issues that are raised in this, in this report have to do with the setback being sufficient or not. It's not possible for the planning commission to consider it at all because of the focus of it? Is that, is that right?
That's right. And there's just a little nuance in SEQA. Mr. Baca is entirely correct. The report can't, cannot be considered substantial evidence because it's, the content is very scientific and so SEQA says and case law says you need an engineer stamp for that. The most you could do with the report would be to, for it to raise questions in your mind and ask staff to follow up on any specific issues because the SEQA standard here, in terms of the addendum, is whether there's, basically whether there's substantial evidence to show that, in the record to show that there is no significant impact. And so there should be, you should be assured of yourself that there's substantial evidence in the record that shows that there is no, let's say, flooding hazard. And so if a report raises that question in your mind and you feel like there's not enough other information in the record to assure yourself of that issue, then you could ask staff to address that issue more. Does that make sense?
Yes. I just wanted to know if the substance of the points that were raised in this report were looked at by staff?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Iducas, I did look at the report, but to clarify and add to the comments of council, it's a violation of the Business and Professions Code to practice engineering without a license. And so there are certain fields of endeavor, geology, engineering, and medicine, that in the state of California can only be practiced by people who are licensed by the state of California. So on its face, it can't be considered a substantial evidence. And absent any substantial evidence in the record of an impact, we can't make a finding that there is an impact. And so it's the other way, it's sort of the other way around. We have to identify and we search and we look and we review, that's why you have a very long memorandum here, we review everything to the nth degree, including until, right up till, you know, witching hour last night, to see if there is any substantial evidence. And I would point out that we have an environmental impact report right now that is being circulated in the Upper Ohio area for a project in the Upper Ohio area because the rules of SEQA required a supplemental, actually a subsequent EIR to be prepared. So we're not adverse to preparing an EIR for an oil project. And that particular project only involves three wells. And yet we've done a full EIR for that project because the rules of SEQA require it. In this case, we have not identified any substantial evidence that would trigger one of the requirements of SEQA Section 15162 to require the preparation of a subsequent EIR. And as far as the Blue Tomorrow report goes, it actually doesn't exist in my mind. I have looked at it. I looked at it to see if there was any recommendation, like, oh, if you don't like a 100-foot setback, what do you like? I didn't see that and all I saw was various technical commentary about maybe the top of bank is a little higher and, but that's sort of not, it's not useful to spend county money and staff time to address something that really doesn't count and doesn't exist legally.
Thank you.
And just to close the loop, Mr. Baca is correct that at the end of the day, if someone is claiming a new significant impact, the burden is on them to show substantial evidence of that impact. My point was, at the same time, the county is obligated to do its due diligence to ensure that no significant impact exists. So it's, you know, Mr. Baca's, his statement of the law and the process is completely accurate.
Thank you.
However, Commissioner, if your question is raised in your mind from what you read, you can ask staff to respond to that. So, again, if you feel you've received new information but you want questions. Mr. Baca, any other questions to Mr. Baca at this point in time? Hearing none?
I would like to make one final statement. I know that Mr. Dobrowolsky is sitting at the edge of Boston Common at the moment and eating lobster rolls for lunch. And my only message to him is thanks.
My favorite place is the Copper Kettle with steamed clams, but I'll remind him when he gets back. All right, before we go any further, at this point in time, ladies and gentlemen, on the commission, this is your time for disclosure. Commissioner Kelly.
No disclosures.
I have no disclosures.
I'm going to jump over one individual, Commissioner Rodriguez.
No disclosures.
The chair has no disclosures. Commissioner Anstot.
I represented Lawrence Barker, who was the owner of Ferndale Ranch and ultimately gifted Thomas Aquinas the property. I was, he retained the mineral rights and worked, I worked with him, the oil companies, the Forest Service, Thomas Aquinas College on the conditional use permits. Mr. Barker was interested in preserving and protecting the surface while at the same time seeing that oil and gas exploration took place in a responsible manner. I have not represented Vintage. I may have represented a predecessor, an interest in an accident that took place in the Sespe many, many years ago. I have currently no relationship with them. As a matter of fact, I represent many property owners who are negotiating with them, so I saw that I'm on the other side of them in some respects. So I have intimate knowledge of the area. I grew up in the area. I hiked the area as a kid. I know the property intimately and I know the history. If that creates a problem for anybody, then you need to raise it now.
Anything else? All right. Is that enough?
Forty years of it, yeah.
If there is somebody, particularly the appellant's, feel that they object to Mr. Anstot saying it would be a conflict, please let us know. If not, then we'll proceed. All right.
I guess just to close the loop on that, just for the record, Commissioner Anstot, based on your interaction with the property a long time ago and your knowledge of the property, is, does any of that create a problem with you in terms of being impartial today?
No, it's not.
Okay, because that's the bottom line.
No, I have no conflict in that regard.
No current conflicts either.
No, none whatsoever.
Thank you. All right, as I said earlier, this is an appeal. The appellant's will be given wide latitude, which has been the policy of this commission, to present their appeals. We will also allow the applicant sufficient time if they so choose. And if you want to speak, you need to fill out a white card. Okay? If you just want to make comments, there are, oh God, now I'm going to pick a color. Salmon-colored cards? My wife's going to beat me up for that. And I will call you in the order that I have received from the clerk, except for obviously the appellant, Sea Frog, and the watch. They will be given, like I said, wide latitude for the purposes of this hearing. Okay? So with that, my understanding from the representatives, that Mr. Brooks was to go first, is that Your name for the record, John.
Sure. My name is John Brooks. I live in Oakview, California. I am a retired person, former broadcast journalist. I have no oil stocks, no representation of that. I'm a hiker. I like to hike Santa Paula Canyon. Me and my, I and my family have hiked it for years. That's my disclosure. That's my disclosure, I guess. I see that my first slide is up before I, Chair Westner, Commissioners Idukas, Calley, Rodriguez, Anstott, before I get started on the specific points of appeal, I do have one additional photograph to submit to you that I wasn't able to get onto the PowerPoint because I just thought of it this morning when the rain began to fall. Earlier this year, we went up to look at Drill Pad 7, which we'll be referring to after a rain, to see what actually was happening with it. Our, our goal at that time was actually to collect samples of the, what was coming out of the drain, to be honest with you. It didn't rain enough to do that, but you'll see in this picture. That there is significant ponding, there was a chemical sheen on top of the water, and it drills directly into Santa Paula Creek, or drains directly into Santa Paula Creek. Just quickly again, before I get to my points, while I have it fresh in my mind, Mr. Baca showed you new pictures of the screening that has just recently been set up on the Drill Pad 1 and Drill Pad 7. It's excellent that after 30 years, they finally put the screening up just in advance of this hearing. We commend them, however, there was no discussion or analysis or any review of what type of screening should be available on those drill pads. I particularly think that that, as Mr. Baca inferred, that the view is kind of worse with what they put up. So maybe that's something that should be addressed in a, in an EIR or a targeted EIR. Biological resources, they keep talking about no grading. My reading of the document shows that there's going to be extensive grading of the road between Drill Pad 1 and Drill Pad 2. Perhaps they can respond to that. It's a little unclear, but certainly that would run across Schumash Resources. And also, the, his, Mr. Baca's statement that there's nothing underground that could be harmed by drilling operations is his conclusion based on, I don't know what, I don't think he has an archaeological degree, so we'll get to that later as well. I want to clear up a couple misconceptions, perhaps, about our group. We are not anti-oil, we're not anti-jobs, we're not anti-little children, okay? We are an all-volunteer citizens group that believes that together we can keep Ventura County healthy, wealthy, and wise, and in fact, make it even more beautiful. Now, let me see if I can make this thing work here. Ah, how can we do that? Can we do it with confrontation? It's defined as a hostile or argumentative meeting or a situation between opposing parties. That is not what we want, or why we spend all these hours poring over documents and speaking at hearings. And it's why I'm now trying to calm down from what I heard this morning, especially the, the dissing of this, these professionals who provided, provided the material to your board on, on the drill pad. Confrontation is hostile or argumentative. That's not why we're here. This is why we're here today, collaboration. We believe that you can work with others. Shared goals. Do a task, achieve shared goals. We're working with you and your planning staff to achieve a mutual goal, which is keeping oil and gas wells compatible with one of the most beautiful and ecologically sensitive locations in Ventura County, and I've heard no dispute about that. Last week, at the Board of Supervisors' appeal hearing on some other wells in Condor Country, we witnessed that collaborative spirit come alive. Board members understood that our concerns about a huge amount of oil and gas wells proceeding unchecked because of old CUPs is a real risk. It should be dealt with, and they called for a future hearing so that can be. And that's what we're looking for today, some recognition from you that our concerns are serious and that more work must be done before this particular project goes forward. So we're talking about CUP PL 130150. Let's get busy collaborating, okay? County Council Jeff Barnes, on February 19th of this year, said, and I quote, "We don't have the opportunity very often to review a CUP, but when we do, we better get it right." And we need to show you today why the EIR addendum is incomplete. Your staff says an environmental impact report is needed if substantial evidence supports fair argument that a project may have significant effects on the environment. And just what is substantial evidence? Can you take testimony from me? I'm no scientist, but I might give you substantial evidence that you could determine to send it back to staff. What is substantial evidence under CEQA? Number one is fact. Number two is a reasonable assumption predicated on fact. Or number three, and this is especially applies today, it's expert opinion supported by fact. Now you've read or heard today that staff has said all 10 of our appeal points and all the appeal points of Los Fuentes Forest Watch are without merit. Now I disagree, based on the scientific literature I've read and the written material that we've submitted to you. But admittedly, I'm not an expert, I'm not a scientist, so we're bringing the experts to you to provide substantial evidence that supports that fair argument that this project may have significant effects on the environment. Each of you has been provided a copy of the analysis of Drill Pad 7 by Blue Tomorrow. It demonstrates with precise onsite measurements by professionals and observation of some critical flaws in the staff report that demand more study, and in the opinion of experts, should remove that drill pad entirely from this project unless that's done. It most certainly proves that the project addendum to the EIR does not satisfy the environmental review requirements of CEQA. Now Blue Tomorrow is an environmental consulting service company based in Santa Barbara. It combines the disciplines of hydrology, environmental science, and economics. The response from staff concerning the report that I read this morning is disingenuous at best. Perhaps staff's measurements were based on actual field surveys, not aerial photographs. We don't know, but we, we choose to bring the data that was, were actually measured by crawling in the stream bed and running tape lines to the drill pad. Now if Mr. Baca did that, we'd like to hear that he did. We don't know how, how he attained this data, and in fact, he did not present any data, he just presented conclusions. So you'll hear also, after we discuss Drill Pad 7, from a foremost authority on air pollution and greenhouse gases, Dr. Steve Colome. He, he'll talk about another area where the addendum to the EIR has failed, greenhouse gases and air pollution. Both of these issues have to be reviewed with either a full or directed EIR. The project before you could more than double the number of oil wells in a very environmentally and archaeologically sensitive area. There are risks to public recreation, protected condors and steelhead, Schumash Archaeological Resources, water quality, climate change, and available laundry list of the inherent risks of fire, pollution, and pipeline transportation in the oil and gas industry. The proposed mitigation and the additions to the CUP we suggest are not based on unreasonable or unproven fears. You have only to look at recent events with a pipeline rupture along Caesar Creek in the upper Ojai, I don't know if you know about that one, the exploding storage tanks and huge fire in Hopper Canyon near the Condor Refuge, and of course, the ongoing tragedy of the Refugio, Refugio's pipeline rupture and deadly ocean oil spill that is still with us. That could be Santa Paula Creek, and I'm not, I'm not using hyperbole here, okay? There's a pipeline crossing the creek, it, it could rupture. It needs to be looked at. We could have just as easily, although there are 10 grounds of appeal in our document, I'm not going to cover them all in the interest of time, we could have just as easily, albeit expensively contracted to study the waste disposal wells for this project on the HAMP lease a mile or more away. Those are the wells we were referring to in the report, not the waste injection wells on the actual Ferndale lease. They're on another nearby lease. At the time that we filed this appeal, those, those disposal wells were part of the EPA investigation into unprotected aquifers. HAMP 72, you can look it up. The pipeline that feeds HAMP 72 well crosses Santa Paula Creek several times, the records show more than six and a half million gallons of wastewater have gone into it, into that well since 1985. What's the capacity of that disposal site? Is the disposal responsible for the high TDS level in the water that's in that aquifer? The lead agency must do an analysis now of the freshwater basins involved in this project and ensure the public that our water resources are indeed protected, and that another 30 years of waste from even more wells will not spread to nearby aquifers with less than 10,000 TDS total dissolved solids. If the pipeline is in fact carrying gas, oil, and produced water at the same time, is that safe, is it legal? The EIRs from 1978 to 83 do not even mention endangered species and make no provisions for protecting condors and steelhead trout. At this point, I'm going to ask you to refer to the Blue Tomorrow Report, which is new and substantial evidence that, on the, that the effects on the environment may be in violation of the non-coastal zoning ordinance. See if I can get to the right slide. There it is. The current location of the wells on Drill Pad 7 poses undue risk of flooding and degradation of water quality, and adding five new wells will markedly increase this risk. The study proves, the Blue Tomorrow Study proves, that there's a much higher flood height and risk of flooding at the upstream end of the drill site than was specified in the February 10th, 2015 memo from Mr. Baca. The estimates made in this scientific study of the 100-year flood plain place it within four feet of the top of the upstream end of the well pad, and it could be flooded by the 200-year event, which is a 0.5% chance in every year. So even the information provided Mr. Baca, such as these aerial photographs, show that if the drill site is flooded, it could be destroyed even if flooding stays below the top of the well pad. Look at this 2004 aerial photograph that Mr. Baca placed in the record. This is where, this is where the stream is now, this is vegetation that's grown in. After the floods of 2005, which was a big flood, look where the stream, look where it was eroded here, and look how close it is now to the pad. That's where it is today. Now if we get floods this fall, which way is it going to go, do you think? Oh, of course, it could go this way and erode over here. Isn't just more likely to go this way and, and tap into these two wells plus five more? And what if this narrow channel right up here gets blocked with debris? Would that not cause it to overflow the, the drill pad? I think that's highly likely. The Blue Tomorrow Study, the erosion by the most recent flood shows it chopped into the pad in 2005, and if there's major flooding on the creek this fall or later, the entire facility could likely crumble into the floodwaters. Look at those photos, again, please. That's what happened in two, between 2004 and 2005. The Blue Tomorrow Study documents the uncertainty of estimating the flood height in the upper Santa Paula Creek, and how the creek is still very active and it's a braided stream. The stretch of creek near Drill Pad 7 shifted between 150 and 200 feet as a result of that 2005 flood event. I repeat, the creek bed shifted between 150 and 250 feet. It is now right up against Drill Pad 7, and it certainly can be eroded in the next storm. The risk of flooding and the uncertainty of what the stream will do during large floods demonstrates an unacceptable risk. Flooding the well pad could impact and damage pump jacks and pipelines, which could result in a spill and mobilize contaminated soils and sediments from the drill site. It's no exaggeration to say that this is a disaster waiting to happen. And then there are the setback requirements. This new study also measures and documents the distances from Drill Pad 7 to the Santa Paula Creek Channel, which is a redline channel. According to your own ordinance, no well should be drilled and no equipment or facility shall be permitted located within 300 feet of the edge of existing banks of a redline channel as established by the Ventura County Flood Control District, or 100 feet from the existing banks of all other channels appearing as a blue line. Now these setbacks shall prevail unless the permittee can demonstrate to the satisfaction of the Public Force Agency that the subject use can be safely located nearer the stream or channel in question without posing an undue risk of water pollution impairment of flood control interest. But in no case shall setbacks from streams or channels be less than 50 feet. Drill Pad 7 is a facility. It's drained by one drain pipe, that picture I just gave to you, on the northwest corner of the well pad. This drain pipe drains directly down into the stream channel now, which has moved adjacent to it, and discharges below the 100-year flood mark. The proximity of the drain pipe and the oil wells to the stream channel demonstrates an undue risk to water quality. Your staff on page 5 of the responses to the public comment refers to Drill Site 7 as a facility. We agree with that determination. And the drain pipe, which permanently concreted in place, as you can see, and is equipped with a large valve, should be considered part of the facility. The drain pipe, by the way, is less than 50 feet from the 100-year flood mark. The 100-year flood mark is what the Ventura County defines as the top of bank of redline channels and where the setback distances are measured from. Also within 50 feet is the fence boundary of the facility, which is now, has a green draping on it. The fenced area of Drill Pad 7 and the drains should be considered the extent of the facility and are subject to the setback distances of the non-coastal zoning ordinance. We urge you to look at the precise measurements that we've presented to you. According to the study, the additional wells will increase the risk to water quality by increasing the level of contamination and sources of pollution on the well pad. Additionally, the increased activity, compaction of the soil, and I guess it's not going to be paved now, that's been stripped from the report, based on our input, will increase the amount of water draining from the well pad. This is contrary to the determination made by county staff that the installation of additional wells would not have a measurable effect on the conveyance or water quality of runoff waters. Therefore, the determination made by county staff from the top of bank is adequate and in compliance with the setback standards established in the county's non-coastal zoning ordinance is incorrect. Now before I introduce Dr. Colome, I need to talk about fish. Why, I don't know, I don't even fish. But I have read letters in the project file from old, old-time ranchers in the area who years ago were lamenting the impact that oil activities were having on the once abundant trout that were in the area. The study from Blue Tomorrow also documents the steelhead habitat quality in the upper Santa Paula Creek. There it is. You see from this map that the high-quality steelhead habitat is in this area of Santa Paula Creek. It's the most probably critical area in the greater Santa Paula River watershed. This is the zone, and it's vital to efforts to save the endangered species. This places greater importance on protecting water quality and minimizing impacts to water resources in this area. And this is new information that was not available at the time of the earlier EIRs and is not contained in the EIR addendum. We ask the planning commission to consider this report and its findings as substantial evidence that supports fair argument that a project may have significant effects on the environment, or at least my testimony about that report can be that evidence, however the law defines it. We think it's both. This commission should require an extensive EIR for the facility that addresses these environmental and water quality impacts and specifies mitigation strategies. We believe the EIR should address if the current well pad facility riprap is adequate to mitigate flood risk. Has anyone asked that question? Can you develop an understanding of how the current well pad is affecting the position of the stream channel itself, and how that may be in affecting channel erosion during high flows? In the interest of time, we'll present new substantial evidence on only one more specific area of our appeal, and for that, I call on Dr. Stephen Colome. He's a foremost authority on air pollution and greenhouse gases. He personally received his doctorate in environmental health sciences from Harvard University with emphasis in air pollution control. He also earned an SB degree in biological sciences, which is molecular biology, from Stanford University. His research experience is in the areas of air pollution exposure, pollution control, epidemiology, and risk assessment. He's served on the faculties of both UC Irvine and UCLA. He's currently in private industry, bringing control devices to the wine industry. He's here this morning to speak to you as a volunteer. He's not being compensated. Thank you.
Doctor, before you begin, a little housekeeping. We'll need for you to fill out a speaker card when you're done.
I will.
For the record purposes, and if you, please announce your name for the record. There are people at home listening to you.
My, excuse me, my name is Steve Colome. I'm a resident of, of Ojai, a three-year resident of, of Ventura County, and while that's coming up, I, I thought, because what I'm going to be presenting to you is testimony as, as an expert witness, to give you a little bit more background on my qualifications to address this particular issue. One of my very first publications in 1980 was a book that was, with a, with a very fancy title of "The Health Effects of Fossil Fuel Burning: Mitigation and Assessment." We were looking for a place on the New York Times Bestseller with that. My co-authors in that were Professor Richard Wilson, who's the Mallencroft Professor of High Energy Physics at Harvard University, Professor David Gordon Wilson, who's Professor of Mechanical Engineering at MIT, and Professor John Spengler, who's Professor of, in the School of Public Health and trained in, in meteorology and atmospheric sciences. We addressed in, in that particular book, the issue of global warming, and it was a wonderful time to be doing so because it was before there was a politicization of the, of that issue. And it was really very much basic science at that time. We were looking back at measurements that were made here at Scripps University, Scripps Institute, Harvard, University of Michigan, and the projections that we made in 1980 are right on the mark now, both in terms of the global concentration of greenhouse gases, CO2, and to the, the temperature impact of, of those. In terms of the effect of this particular study, it was picked up in the last quarter of Walter Cronkite's Evening News, it had a five-minute spot, and we had multiple invitations to congressional and senate committees to discuss the implications of some of the things to discuss the implications of some of the things that we were talking about in this particular book. I also, on the regulatory side, served for about a 10-year duty as a member of the Technical Advisory Council to the South Coast Air Quality Management District. This wasn't your average advisory committee. It was made up of individuals from Caltech, UCLA, Jet Propulsion Lab, and advising the executive officer, who initially was Jim Lentz, and is currently Barry Wallerstein, on a number of issues leading to improvements of air quality at a time when rapid improvements were being made in the South Coast Air Quality Management District. So with that as background, let's see if I'm getting this the right direction.
Don't hit the one on the bottom.
I hit the one on the bottom. How do I undo it?
Aim over somewhere else and click to the right.
Okay. And then it's the middle button?
It's the other one you go right at four. It tells you if it's left or the right.
Okay. So what we're going to look at now are some of the greenhouse gas targets that, as a state, we really need to meet. So we go all the way back to 2005, when there was the first gubernatorial executive order. And that one established that by 1990, by the year 2020, five years from now, we're supposed to roll back to the 1990 emissions of the state of California. It looks like we're on target for, in fact, meeting that particular objective. And that by 2050, we should be 80% below that 1990 emission target. And that's really the challenge. And the issue is that in trying to meet the 2050 challenge, there was no intermediate goal, so that the guideposts that would be required to get from here to there were not at all clear. So just a little over a month ago, our current Governor Brown issued a new executive order. And that one is calling for an intermediate goal of a 40% reduction in greenhouse gases below the 1990 emissions levels by the year 2030. So we're looking at 15 years from now. And it's a very aggressive target to try and hit it, but we're not going to make the 2050 target unless we have that intermediate target and do the things that are necessary to get from here to there. Now, we're going to be talking about the statement of the Planning Commission, and I'm going to disagree pretty wholeheartedly with Mr. Baca in this section of the issues. What Mr. Baca did for this particular case is that he went back to a 2013 evaluation of global greenhouse gases from a completely different site, from the Marata site, and clipped that analysis out and moved it into the current analysis. I don't want you to read this because we're going to dissect this statement, and it is what is in your packet. I think on page 102 or 120, I've forgotten the page number. But let's start to dissect that statement now. In quotes, I have some statements come from the paragraph you just saw. So that the annual ROC emissions would rise to 4.37 tons per year, which is said to be 4.8 metric tons with the proposed project. Now, a little background. ROC is reactive organic gas. Reactive organic gases are controlled by your APCD in order to reduce the concentration of ozone. It's not, ROCs aren't reduced for their own health impacts. They're not a criteria pollutant. They're a pollutant that participates in the chemical reaction that induces the formation of ozone in the atmosphere. Now, again, as a scientist with a strong engineering background, I'm looking at this. I had a really hard time. How do we get, what's the scaler factor that goes from 4.37 undefined tons per year? Is this a long ton, a short ton, a metric ton, into 4.8 metric tons? Tearing my hair out, I called a couple of the people from the APCD, who in fact indicated that this analysis that we see from the Marata case did not come from them. It came from the Planning Department. And this is going to be indicative of the kind of loose engineering, loose analysis that we're seeing here that are just frankly error-filled. There is no scaler factor that goes from 4.37 to 4.8. It's not a short ton to a metric ton analysis. I figured out that what it is, is an error of dividing instead of multiplying and going, if you go from a short ton, which the 4.37 almost certainly is, to a metric ton, the number's actually going to be lower. It's going to be closer to four metric tons. You know, someone with an engineering background should see that almost immediately. And you'll see that this kind of error was propagated over and over again. All right. So how do we get these ROC errors, these ROC emission factors? They're based upon a fugitive emission factor from the individual wells. So there's a number that Mr. Baca indicated that that number comes from EPA emission factors. Well, the data on that are very old. They're not very good. And when EPA generates an emission factor, it's not to be taken as fact because it's not fact. It is a point estimate, and the true truth is some number that's around that. So you really have to know what the emissions are for the particular well. So the emission factors are only an average, and they're subject to potentially very, very high variability. So the estimates that were generated by the APCD come from limited data, older measurements. And as we've seen in the rest of the country, estimates of methane emissions from well sites tend to be higher than were predicted from the very, very old EPA emission factors. The other thing is that the emission estimates, and we'll talk about this a little bit further in another slide, assumes that all the wells are in compliance. So you move off the compliance of the requirements for the APCD, and all of a sudden, the emissions are higher. So dissection number two. And here's where there's the first citation to a member of the Ventura County APCD from back in 1913, from Kirby Zozula. A reasonable estimate is that 90% of oil field emissions are methane and 10% are ROC. Why is that important? Well, it's important because contrary to what Mr. Baca said, the APCD does not regulate greenhouse gases and is not responsible for the emissions of methane. They are responsible for the emissions of ROC. They attend to ROC and they measure ROC because it is an ozone precursor. So what is this factor of 10% as ROC and 90% of TOC, total organic carbon emissions, being in the form of methane? Well, I talked to Mr. Zozula, and it's a very crude rule of thumb. It's not a number that we're going to, you know, put any reliability into. We're not going to bet our life on that number. It's an indirect attribution to global greenhouse gases because methane is specifically excluded from the ROC label. Ethane and methane are part of the TOC, but they are by definition not a volatile organic carbon or a reactive organic carbon. They're just not. So the applicant, it turns out, the applicant CRC is the one that probably has the more detailed information because this gas and gas mixture is a product. So why we're using an absolutely indirect rule of thumb when it would be possible to get real data is really beside me. So site-specific data are clearly going to be necessary here if we're going to pursue a meaningful analysis. All right? So where do we go from here? Dissection number three. We're taking, the analysis is now going from 42.3 tons per year of methane, and that's derived by taking the 4.8. And like I said, I'm going to be an equal opportunity critic here. That 4.8 is more likely four, times nine. However, there are no recent Ventura County methane-specific measurements. The leak detectives, detection sniffers that the APCD uses are nonspecific. They just generally sniff out hydrocarbons. You could, a person with a sensitive nose could do the same thing. You're looking for connections and pump valves and places where there are gas leaks coming out of the system. So it's a nonspecific. It's not designed for greenhouse gases or methane. It also assumes that there is continuous compliance with those air pollution standards, those APCD standards that Mr. Baca discussed. But that really isn't how human behavior operates. I've worked as a consultant on the other side. When you get a call from what would be an applicant saying, hey, you know, the APCD is scheduled to come by in two weeks, because most of these visits are scheduled. They're not unannounced visits. Could you come down with your sniffing machine and tell us where our leaks are? We'll fix them before the county inspectors come in. That's human behavior in this industry. To be, to use evidence from Marata and apply it to another case ignores the fact that geologic formations differ, that oil-gas ratios differ, that gas composition differs. It's just not that simple. So once again, site-specific information is necessary. So in my professional opinion, given these uncertainties, it's very possible that the real emission value is three to four times what was estimated by Mr. Baca. I don't think it was estimated actually by the APCD. Again, they don't have jurisdiction there. So dissection number four. The emissions, the 42.3 tons, were then applied by a scaler factor, which was 21, to come up with, you know, an all-too-precise number of 909 tons from the Marata case. And this, I mean, this could be chalked off, chalked up to being sloppy clerical error, but I've never squared an oxygen molecule in my life. There's a basic misreporting of what chemistry is all about. Again, systematic of the kind of unprofessional representation that we've seen by the county staff on this particular issue. It's subscript 2, thank you. And the 909, as we'll see, is just, is not a very good way of representing significant figures because we don't have that level of precision, which again, you'll see. So the methane impact, it's important to know, of methane is far greater than the impact of carbon dioxide. In terms of a global scale, there's a lot less methane in terms of total tons released into the atmosphere and in parts per million in the atmosphere than there is CO2. But on a molecule-by-molecule basis, methane is far more potent a greenhouse gas than is CO2. And this is something, it wasn't recognized by us when we wrote our book in 1985. It really became, you know, an issue of scientific understanding in the 90s and into the 2000s. Now, the half-life, this becomes very important, it gets a little, it's as technical as I'm going to get today. The half-life of methane in the atmosphere is on the order of seven years. The way in which the county represented the multiplier of methane to CO2 was to take a 100-year lifespan. Now, the 100-year lifespan is meaningful for CO2 because CO2 has, is in the atmosphere for hundreds of years. It takes a long time for it to be incorporated into the terrestrial biosphere or into the oceans and sequestered away. Additionally, the multiplier of 21 used by the county, I think they're, I think they're the ones who did the analysis, is grossly out of date. The current multipliers for a 100-year timeframe are, in the literature, are now between 25 and 34. So again, new evidence that the county did not consider. Mr. Baca says they went through a careful review of all of the information. Well, this is, this is out there right now. I mean, this is stuff that is being talked about in the literature all over the place. How that was missed, I don't know. So if we start to look at the shorter lifespan impact of methane, it's about 100 times more impactful in terms of global warming equivalents compared to CO2. So we scale back into a reasonable period of time. If, in fact, we need to meet shorter-term goals and reduce the impact of global warming contaminants, we're going to have to go after methane. There's no other way around it. We're going to have to go after methane aggressively. So methane reductions are needed to meet our short-term goals. Further dissection. This level of greenhouse gas emissions is below the applicable threshold of significance of 10,000 metric tons per year of, again, CO2 to the power of 2 equivalence. So to my understanding, and I can be corrected here, I don't believe that Ventura County has a local plan for reduction of greenhouse gases, nor do I believe that the county has formally established a greenhouse gas level of significance. The project evaluation should be on whether a project contributes or detracts from the form, the emission reduction goals, and whether mitigations are, were even considered. And there were no mitigations considered because the county considered this to be a de minimis impact, which I don't think it is. The recent executive order from Governor Brown does not appear to have been considered. So the county analysis is in error, and the proposed project really may exceed, and here I'm using the proper term, the 10,000-ton, when we refer to T-O-N-N-E, that is a metric ton, threshold of significance, which is, in my mind, probably not applicable. So let's get to the bottom line and see what we can do with a reanalysis of the Ventura County planning calculations. So I'm going to take Mr. Baca's 4.8 tons and correct it down to the four tons unless he comes up with some other way of getting from short tons to metric tons of 4.8. I can't, it's an error. So I, and I'll use Mr. Zozula's factor of nine to go from ROCs to methane. So we'll use the same number. And I'll use Mr. Baca's 2.1 conversion to go from the Marata to the current applicant CRC because there are a larger number of wells that are there. I'm going to say that there's a factor of two in error in this emission factor because Mr. Baca is overly optimistic about what the real behavior of the oil field is going to be. And then I'm going to use a short-term scaler factor for methane to CO2 because we really have to get some short-term gains here. So now we're up to 15,000 tons of CO2 equivalent from this particular little site. The point being that if we're going to get from here to there, we can't incrementally divide up all of these little oil and gas sites and say, oh, they're de minimis. They in fact add up, and this particular applicant is adding to the state's burden. There were no discussions of mitigation. It's in addition to the state's burden when the state is in fact trying to reduce the impact of greenhouse gases. How that's logical is really beyond me. So in summary, the whole way in which we're evaluating now climate change, both scientifically and in terms of the policies of particularly the state of California, but the rest of the globe if we're going to be making these targets, is but the rest of the globe, if we're going to, going to be making these targets, is, is under rapid change. So using old CUPs and, and old MNDs is, is really not very meaningful, especially when you make lots of frank mistakes in, in the presentation by the county. I mean, these are frank, frank errors. And, and honestly, I find that to be an embarrassment for a professional public agency, a true embarrassment. The, the lead agency should be making a good faith effort to describe, calculate, or estimate greenhouse gases from a project. They haven't done that. Feasibility means trying to find ways of mitigating. If we wanted to have a whole nother discussion, I could give you two dozen different ways that we could mitigate these impacts and still have this well operation going. So best practices would be to look at the project, compare its baseline emissions, and the consistency with California's greenhouse gas objectives. And that, that concludes my statement.
Thank you, Doctor. Any questions of the Doctor at this time? Thank you for taking me back to my junior chemistry class.
Yeah.
Okay. It's a little bit after ten o'clock. As I mentioned earlier, I'm going to remind you, if you're parked in parking lot G. So the chair is going to take a ten-minute break. We're going to reconvene at ten-twenty. And Mr. Brooks, you'll be up. All right, ladies and gentlemen, we are back on the record. The appellant was still, had his position, so John?
Yeah, we're, we're actually done. I want to give Jeff adequate time. Just one quick point on the Blue Tomorrow Study. We'd love to have an engineering stamp on that report, should you desire to have it. The measurements are accurate. We presented them to you in good faith so that you could have an objective evaluation of what, how it contrasted with the, the report that was done by Mr. Baca. If they call, if the planning calls APCD individuals to rebut our expert, I would hope that you would question their technical credentials. Some of the people cited in, in their document are not actually as qualified as our expert, but we, if you explore at least what their, their credentials are, we'd appreciate it. And now to Mr. Kiper.
Please.
Like I said, there are people listening at home, so you need to say your name for the record.
Good morning, Chair Wesner, members of the Commission. My name is Jeff Kiper. I'm the Executive Director of Los Padres Forest Watch. We're a nonprofit organization that works to protect the Los Padres National Forest. And we're here today due to the proximity of these, proximity of the project, project site to the Los Padres National Forest. So we have a few requests of your Commission this morning, and I'll go through all of these at once at the beginning, then address each of them in more detail individually, and then I'll, I'll wrap up my comments. First, we're requesting that the Commission decline to certify the EIR addendum, and related to that, direct the Division to instead prepare a subsequent EIR based on new information and more severe and significant impact that, that wasn't previously evaluated. Number three, catch up here, nullify the permit application based on ongoing violations at the site. And number four, last but certainly not least, uphold our appeal and refund our appeal fee. So we'll take the first two together, because they, they do go hand-in-hand. They are, they are related. And really, the, the heart of what we're talking about here this morning is, can the county prepare an addendum to an EIR? Or in this case, can the county prepare an addendum to two EIRs and three negative declarations, all of which has, have been prepared over the course of a thirty-year time span? Or does the county need to instead prepare a subsequent EIR? Not necessarily starting from scratch, but taking that information from previous EIRs, putting it all back together, packaging it into a single document, addressing the, the new information, changed circumstances, more severe, more significant impacts, and moving forward in that regard. So what, when is it appropriate for a subsequent EIR? Really quickly, there's actually quite a few different situations where the, the county can prepare a subsequent EIR. I'm only going, going to focus on a couple of them that, that I think are the most relevant. And the first one here, new information of substantial importance. We think we outlined a lot of new information, and we believe that it is substantially important at the Planning Director hearing, in advance of that hearing, and as well in a letter to the Commission in advance of this hearing. And that new information of substantial importance needs, needs to show any of the following, and I'm just going to highlight two of these. The project will have one or more significant effects not discussed in the previous EIR or negative declaration. Or, B, significant effects previously examined will be substantially more severe than shown in the previously adopted negative declaration. So number one, effects not previously evaluated, or if they were evaluated. Number two, they're more severe now. So we'll, we'll talk about examples of both of those. So on the other hand, when is the EIR addendum appropriate? An EIR addendum is appropriate, this is straight out of the CEQA guidelines, section EIR addendum is appropriate when all of those conditions where the county would normally have to prepare a subsequent EIR do not exist. And so going back to the, that previous slide, if there's no new information, if that new information is not of substantial importance, if there are not more severe and heightened impacts, those are situations where the, the county can get away with preparing an EIR addendum. You can see here in B, that an EIR addendum can be used for minor, minor technical changes or additions as well. Going down to C, an addendum need not be circulated for public review. That's one of the big differences. A subsequent EIR does need to be circulated for public review. EIR addendum does not. D, the decision-making body shall consider the addendum with the final EIR or adopted negative declaration, those are singular, not plural, prior to making a decision on the project. So the Commission this morning, in order to, to follow the CEQA guideline and, and be able to make an informed decision, needs to have all those previous environmental CEQA documents that the county has prepared before you, including the two, the one EIR, the initial EIR that was prepared for, for a few wells. In nineteen-eighty-four, nineteen-eighty-five, a second EIR was prepared, a focused EIR, just addressing traffic and circulation issues, nothing else, just traffic and circulation. And then scattered in there are three separate mitigated negative declarations as well. All of those need to be in the project file for your review in advance of this hearing. They are not. The mitigated negative declarations are not in the project file that, that was presented to, to your Commission. And then E, a brief explanation of, of the decision not to prepare a subsequent EIR. So that's, that's county staff's position. They've decided not to prepare a subsequent EIR. So this is what they need to do. They need to briefly explain that decision. It needs to be included in the addendum to the EIR. It needs to be included in the findings on the project or elsewhere in the record. And this is key. This is what's really important here. Explanation must be supported by substantial evidence. So it goes back to that, that famous substantial evidence standard under CEQA. And again, we, we feel very strongly that, that county staff has not presented substantial evidence that a subsequent EIR does not need to be prepared, that there is not new information, that there is not more significant and severe impacts. So since we're arguing that a subsequent EIR needs to be prepared, what are we saying is this new information or, or more severe impacts? And we've broken them down into four categories. First one, recreation and visual impacts. As we discussed, hiking trail goes immediately adjacent to Drill Pad Seven, which is what we're looking at here. Oil spills, we believe there's a heightened risk for oil spills. It has not been mitigated as required by previous environmental documents. California condors, that issue seems to keep coming up over and over again, whenever we get oil drilling next to the forest. I'll discuss that. Southern Steelhead, Steelhead has been added to the Endangered Species Act since the previous environmental documents have been done. In addition, critical habitat has been designated, including in Santa Paula Creek. So first topic, recreation and visual impacts. So here we are, a map of the Los Padres National Forest. This is Highway one-fifty. This is actually the, the U.S. Forest Service official map. And Thomas Aquinas College is right in here. The project site is here. And so essentially, when, when people want to go out hiking, this is an extremely popular trail, the most popular trail in Ventura County, and certainly the most popular trail in the Ojai Ranger District, which covers from the Santa Barbara County line all the way to the grapevine, the I-five corridor. It's a huge district, by far the most popular trail. We were out there yesterday, and in the span of, of maybe about a half hour of, of walking the trail, we saw close to twenty people out there with us over the course of a half hour during the week in the middle of the day. So when people go on a hike out here, they, as Mr. Baca said, they, they walk through the, the campus, they walk through the oil field, and then start heading up Santa Paula Canyon. And you can see on this map, there's a, a great collection of, of backcountry camps. They're very remote, very rugged campsites, tremendous amount of waterfalls. The scenery is just spectacular out there. If you've never gone out there, I encourage you to. I will be your tour guide. Just fantastic, fantastic. So, and it, it really opens up and is one of the, the main gateways that, that folks from all around Ventura County and the region use to get into the Sespe Wilderness. The Sespe Wilderness is these two green areas here, part of which includes the Sespe Condor So here's a aerial view of the Greater Santa Paula Canyon. And I believe Commissioner Rodriguez had a question about where, where are the punch bowls? Where are these fabled punch bowls? Punch bowls, by the way, refer to a series of swimming holes that are ways up Santa Paula Canyon. That's the attraction why most people go out here. And so again, here we are, Thomas Aquinas College down here in the corner, the four pads right here as part of the project. Essentially, this trail, the mapping software has it actually jogging through the avocado orchard there, but it actually goes along this section here, past Drill Pad Seven, and essentially down into the creek. It climbs up a few times, up the ridge, ridge lines. There are some great pools right around here. The official punch bowls is this area right up here. Again, great, great waterfalls, great swimming holes, chutes that go down these giant rocks that, that people slide down. It's a, it's a really special place for a lot of people. And that's evidenced by the fact that in just about any hiking book that you open for part of this area, including one on, on waterfalls throughout the state, they all mention this area, and they all mention how popular it is, they all mention how special it is, and they all mention the fact that the trail starts right next to these oil So again, a really quick tour. We're going to condense a multi-day hike into about two minutes here. So this is the entry to Thomas Aquinas College. As you wind your way off the campus, you follow the signs that point your way to the hiking trail. You follow the road as it passes through an avocado orchard, probably one of the more, more remote avocado orchards in the county. And then eventually you get to the, the first evidence of, of oil development. Here's some old out-of-service tanks that actually need to be removed. Under state law, they've been there, who knows how long, out of service. And you see your first glimpses of, of oil wells. And Mr. Baca, just to address one of his statements here briefly, mentioned that there's no trucking traffic associated with, with this permit. We were out there yesterday. You can clearly see a tanker truck there. So maybe we could get some clarification on, on, on that. I'm, I'm curious about that myself, if, if there's not supposed to be tanker truck traffic out there. As you pass that, that first drill site, you continue down the road, and you're greeted by a series of flow lines. These transport oil and wastewater from the, the drill pad that's closest to Santa Paula Creek. And eventually you get to what is more clearly defined as, as a trail. And this is the one that, that goes by Drill Pad Seven. You can clearly see the, the oil pumps are quite visible from the trail. Before I forget to, to mention this, I'll do so now. It looks like the, the applicant has spent a great deal of effort to, to screen these sites within the last month. Probably no, no coincidence that, that this hearing was coming up, and, and they wanted to make the site look as good as possible. Here we have some, some new screening placed along this, this corridor here. It's supposed to be six feet tall. As you can see by these hikers, these hikers are not eight feet tall. The, the fence is probably on average about five feet tall, even a little bit less in, in some locations. So we do still have, you know, we, we appreciate the efforts that the applicant has undertaken to at least attempt to screen these sites. The other issue here is that the sites are supposed to be screened with landscaping, not with the, the green screening material. Anyway, back to the hike. So this is, this is going further up, up the creek here, further up Santa Paula Creek. And you start to get to a series of waterfalls. This is the, the first one you encounter. A lot of nice water-polished giant rock formations that, that create some, some excellent swimming holes. Another waterfall. This is what people actually refer to as the punch bowl. There's a nice slide that goes down this, this huge flat rock for, for at least fifty feet, and people just slide down this thing. You plunge into this really deep pool, and it's a really refreshing way to, to spend a hot summer day, or, or a drizzly morning, as we're having today. Here, here's a more bird's-eye view of, of the punch bowl. And again, if, if you go further up the canyon, more waterfalls. So many people know that, that these resources are out here right in their own backyard, but a lot of people have not been out there. A lot of people don't even know that these places exist. So they're all for, for people to go out and explore and enjoy. Eventually, you get to the Sespe Wilderness Boundary. This was established in nineteen-ninety-two. And you get to a series of backcountry camps like this one. So again, back to, back to Drill Site Seven. Some work was, was performed here recently, and again, the fencing needs to be six feet tall according to the current permit condition, and it needs to be screened with, with landscaping, not with, with fencing material. One of the, actually, the applicant presented several reasons that, that the county followed suit on as to why this landscaping has not been done. It's been on the books for about thirty years, this landscaping requirement, yet it was never fully implemented. And the applicant now claims that they can't do it for several reasons. One, it would create a tunnel effect. While they did a great job of creating a tunnel effect with, with this current screening, I think some natural landscaping would go a long ways. They say there's not room for landscaping. They say they can't do landscaping because of the fire code. The fire code only requires thirty feet of clearance around a facility. They can easily scoot the fence in a few feet to accommodate landscaping. They can try to put the landscaping on the other side of the fence, even a more simpler. I think it would be preferable to have it on the outside. But the fact that this landscaping hasn't been installed for more than thirty years of it being on the books, of it being part of the applicant's permit condition for operating, for having the, the privilege to operate this facility, is, is striking and telling about how the county has turned a blind eye to this facility for decades and decades and decades. Here's what it looked like just about a, a month ago without that screening in place. Here's what it looked like just about a month ago without that screening in place. Again, we noted that there was significant graffiti at the site as well. We notified the county about that. Here's what it looks like today, painted over, nicely done. Here's the first out-of-service tank battery. Now with the new screening in place, still no landscaping. And again, the wells associated with those tanks, screening, but again, no landscaping. And so what we see in the application for this permit, which was submitted back in 2013, the applicant goes through each permit condition and each mitigation measure in the previous environmental documents and explains to the county how they have been complying, or whether they're in compliance with the terms and conditions of those permits. We took exception with several of the statements that were made in that application as either misleading or just patently false. And this is a good example of one of those. They state in their application, "Drill Site 1 equipment is screened from views from the hiking trail by fencing with wooden slats, trees, and other vegetation. The equipment on this site is painted in colors that blend with the surroundings. Short-duration intermittent views of the equipment exist from the hiking trail." So this is Drill Site 7, not 1, but the fact remains the same. Whether you're talking about this site or the other site, neither one is screened to the extent that you only have short-duration intermittent views. You can see these things, you can see all the facilities, your entire route along the trail as it passes by these facilities. The equipment's not painted in colors that blend with the surroundings. Some of the well pumps are black. Some of them are a strange concoction of graffiti and beige or tan. Others are just in a state of decay and rusting. They just need a good paint job, and the applicant has failed to do that for the last 30 years. So with respect to Drill Site 7, the application states, "Drill Site 7 contains only well pumping units." No disputing that. "No other oil production-related equipment is contained on the site. The pumping units on Drill Site 7 are painted in the color that blends with the surroundings and are at a sufficient distance from the hiking trail enforced by the fence. Therefore, the pumping units are obscured from the hiking trail views." That's an unconditional statement. "The pumping units are obscured from the hiking trail views. Totally inaccurate and misleading. Although the pumping units could be visible from the hiking trail," could be, they are, "landscaping to completely screen the pumping units from the trail is not feasible because of the following." And then they go into those issues that I addressed previously, the, "Oh, we can't do the landscaping because of fire clearance. We can't do landscaping because it would create a tunnel view down the trail. We can't do landscaping because there's no room, and we would have to get the landowner's permission." The oil company has the right to do whatever they want to do on this oil pad consistent with their current permit. And that current permit says that they need to put landscaping to shield the views, not just some of the views, all of the views, from the hiking trail. That has not been done, even though they said it had been done in the application. And then county staff just took those statements from the application without really questioning them. And this is the staff report from the planning director hearing back in January. They state, "The oil and gas production facilities will be located in a region that is surrounded by hills and screened from view from any public location. The proposed changes in the existing oil and gas facilities will not create any new substantial effect on the existing uses on the surrounding lands. The existing character of the area will not be substantially altered with the implementation of the proposed project." Again, totally not accurate. The addition, simply the addition of five wells on Drill Pad 7, that nearly triples the number of wells that are currently on-site, each one making their own humming noise level as you walk by. And the cumulative impacts of that to noise, to views, to the experience of going out into nature, people are excited to get out to the punch bowls, yet you really just have to hunker down and create your own tunnel vision to try to pretend that this highly industrialized activity is not located right next to a hiking trail and right where the hiking trail begins nonetheless. So let's talk about oil spills. That's been in the news a lot lately. And again, we think that there's new information of substantial importance to indicate that the risks posed by oil spills from this facility were not adequately evaluated in previous environmental documents. Significant effects that were not previously examined, those effects will be more severe. And there's new information as well, so let's get into that. So the issue that is most relevant when we start talking about oil spills is a pipeline that extends across Santa Paula Creek. So you can see that same out-of-service tank battery with a series of well pumps right down here. A pipeline, actually several pipelines, extend from the site along this cleared area, across the creek. You can see the shadow of it down here, across the creek bed, and over here to the ham fleece. Obviously, you want to try to avoid having pipelines go across creek beds. Creeks are everywhere, and that's not possible. So when your pipeline needs to go across a creek, it's important to make sure that it's built, number one, in a way that your permit requires it to be built, and number two, that it will withstand flooding and other issues that could cause oil spills. That has not occurred here. And so the previous environmental impact report from 1978 addresses this issue of the pipeline specifically and oil spills as well. And this was the analysis with respect to oil spills. EIRs were a bit more brief in the 70s. They say, "The proposed new oil shipping line from existing Site Number 1, where the tank battery is located, to tie into the Arco Pipeline would cross Santa Paula Creek, thus exposing the line to possible breakage and spillage of contents into the creek during flood periods. This potential adverse impact will be partly mitigated by the installation of automatic shut-off valves in the line, which will confine the maximum amount of oil that could be spilled into Santa Paula Creek to 45 barrels." They also require the pipeline to be constructed using a properly-designed suspension bridge. And I'm quoting that language even though it's not up on the screen. Sometimes when you put a slide together at 2:00 in the morning, you forget little snippets of language. But the permit condition states, and I am quoting, "A properly-designed suspension bridge", and they use the word "bridge" for this pipeline. What does Vintage, now known as CRC, say about this pipeline and the bridge in their application? They say this, two sentences. "There are shut-off valves on the pipelines, and the line is suspended above ground across Santa Paula Creek. The measure is in compliance." The condition doesn't require the pipeline to just be suspended across the creek. It requires a, quote, "properly-designed suspension bridge." Again, another misleading and factually untrue statement. This permit condition is not being complied with. And the fact that these things are glossed over when applicants submit their permits is troubling. We hope that county staff will pay more attention when applicants submit their permits so that we don't have to come before the commission and say, "Hey, we need to go back to the drawing board and nullify the permit because of these misleading and factually incorrect statements."
Jeff, Commissioner Dukas has a question.
Yes.
Okay. I understand the 2:00 in the morning thing, but from, is it your recollection that that suspension bridge language was in the previous EIR, or was it in the condition of approval? Was it in the previous CUP? Where was that?
I know for a fact that it was in the previous EIR. Was it in the CUP? I believe it was, but I couldn't rattle off a specific provision off the top of my head. I know we cited to it in our comment letter.
Okay, thank you.
I wish I had a photographic memory. So here we have another view of the pipeline. Again, here's the storage tank facility out of service. The pipeline runs across the creek right here and over to this other pad. So looking at the FEMA data designating the floodplain, it actually stops just at the top of this map. FEMA doesn't designate floodplains once they get to the National Forest Boundary. So we don't have the benefit of having this FEMA designation for Drill Site 7. But it does extend up to the point where the pipeline crosses the creek and a little bit further. And this is what it shows. It shows that the pipeline, as it extends across the creek, is within the floodplain. That makes sense. But also, even where the pipeline is laying on the ground up here, and on the other side as well, is part of the floodplain as well. Pipelines and floodplains don't mix. So, and so we have a couple different things here that I want to just reemphasize with respect to oil spills. Number one, the environmental impact report from 1978 required a properly-designed suspension bridge for this pipeline. That wasn't done. Number two, Vintage Production, now known as California Resources Corporation, has an absolute dismal record of spills in Ventura County. Obviously, with the nature of oil drilling, apparently some spills are seemingly inevitable. But Vintage, I would be willing to bet, has more incidence of reporting hazardous spills than anyone else, any other oil company at least in the county. This is an article from 2002 in the LA Times. I can't read it very well. But the gist of it is that the oil firm to pay $120,000 for 10 spills, that oil firm was Vintage, they had spills going into Santa Paula Creek, not from this particular pipeline, but from another one nearby, as well as several other creeks in the county. The state of California took them to court to recover the costs and to recover some money to compensate for natural resource damage, and $120,000 for 10 spills. And the district attorney at the time, whose last name, I love this, is Mick Waters, said that Vintage needs to spend some money to bring their pipelines up to compliance and to modernize them, or else this would just happen again and again and again. And it is happening again and again and again. As recently as this March, and probably close to just about every year or every other year subsequent to that, Vintage has entered into another settlement agreement with the state of California to recover damages for oil spills that they have caused. They used to be one of the primary operators out in the Sespe Oil Field in the Los Padres National Forest. Same thing, over and over again, spill after spill after spill. Okay, everyone's favorite topic, California Condors. You guys ready for this? I know you are. Okay, so.
Just before everybody else, we've been hearing this all, what, now 10 months? How many times have you presented this story?
Right, and yet here I am again. So again, what new information do we have of substantial importance? Personally, I may be biased. I think anything relating to Condor is substantially important. But I hope you agree with me that some data that I have here is new, and is substantial, and is important, and suggests that there will be or may be significant impacts here that need to be addressed in a subsequent EIR. I'd like to introduce you to Condor 262 and Condor 449. They're numbered. It's not a very personable way to refer to a Condor, but that's how it's done. So this is a little love story here. 262 male, 449 female. They've established a nesting pair out in the wild. That's the first time either of them have nested. And it just so happens that they chose a nest location approximately two miles away from this facility. That two-mile standard is important because 1.5 miles is the requirement for a buffer zone from a Condor nest. So this Condor nest is not within that 1.5-mile buffer zone, which is why the Condors like it so much. And so what we have here, this is a Condor biologist with the Fish and Wildlife Service going in to check on the health of the egg that's in the nest. They do this, they don't like to do it too often, but they'll check in on it once or twice to make sure that the shell is not too thin, to make sure it's a healthy egg, and to make sure there's not microtrash in the nest. Because as you've heard before, Condor adults will feed microtrash to their chicks. So when the egg hatches, they want that nest to be clean of every speck of trash. You can see the Condor hanging out over here, not quite sure what's going on. And so this is a photo of the egg inside the nest. You don't see too many pictures of Condor eggs actually inside the nest anymore these days. And wouldn't you know, last Friday, the egg started hatching. I was hoping that they would have an image of the new Condor chick that I could unfurl this morning, but I don't have it. This is as close as we're going to get. And what's particularly important about this turn of events is this nest site, actually any nesting in Santa Paula Canyon with Condors, has not occurred in probably close to a half century. This is the first time, at least after Condors were reintroduced back into the wild, and looking back at Condor nesting records, it looks like the most recent recorded nest site was in the 1960s, maybe 1970s. The records are a little fuzzy about that in particular, but the first time in probably about half a century that this nest site is being used. That is momentous. We have Condors in Santa Paula Canyon now. That is fantastic. Also, we have Condors 262 and 449. They're the first Condors to be hatched from eggs laid in the wild, to then lay their own egg and hatch that egg in the wild. So this is the second generation of wild-hatched Condors starting to take flight. This is pretty momentous. And so anyway, we have, this is a different Condor. The location of the drill sites in the canyon bottom, this is back from the 1978 environmental impact report. This is the discussion on impacts to Condors. Again, a little more detail is required these days, but what they said in 1978 was, "The location of the drill sites in the canyon bottom and on the ridge to the northeast are factors which tend to reduce the impact of the project on nesting and roosting Condors, not eliminate the impact, but reduce it. It should be noted, however, that any activity beyond the proposed sites could have severe adverse impacts on this endangered species." That conclusion was done before Drill Pad 7 was even installed. That drill pad is closer to the nest than the others are. And so just by reasoning of going back to this 1978 EIR, that well pad in and of itself will have severe adverse impacts on this endangered species. And what exactly are those impacts? Staff is quick to point out quite frequently at these hearings that they don't have any evidence, any evidence whatsoever, of oil facilities impacting Condors. That is patently false. The Fish and Wildlife Service has sent them a letter in 2013 reviewing what those impacts and possible impacts of oil drilling to Condors are. And that is why they listed those 23 mitigation measures. "Hey, County, we see you guys approving oil wells and Condor habitat. Here are 23 measures, fairly simple install signs, perching deterrents. Here's what you guys can do to prevent these potential impacts, potentially significant impacts, from occurring on these well sites that are proposed in Condor habitat." That first one, first of those 23 recommendation measures, I think is the most important one. And that is that any oil facility, or any human activity actually, should not occur within a half mile of a roost site and within a mile and a half of a nesting site. So we're safe with the nesting site. The nesting site is more than a mile and a half away. Maybe "safe" isn't the right word, but at least it complies with that standard. But let's look at roost sites. So anywhere there's an active nest, you're going to have Condors. They don't, they're not homebodies. They don't like staying in their nest the whole day. They get out and about. They're pretty social creatures. They're pretty social creatures, and so, they'll just touchdown on a tree and hang out for a few hours. Sometimes it's even overnight. They get tired of flying. Sometimes the weather conditions aren't right for them to, to hold up their 20-plus-pound body weight, and so, they say, "Hey, I'm done with this flying thing. I'm, I'm just going to hunker down at this tree for a few hours, maybe overnight, and, maybe it'll be a better day tomorrow." So, we can look at, at data provided by the Fish and Wildlife Service. That's what this is here. It's current up through 2015, the first quarter of this year. And, the blips represent Condors. A blip occurs about once an hour on a condor, and so, it's not, it's not a real time. You can't plot its trajectory every minute or every second, but you can get a good idea of where Condors hang out, especially when they're hanging out over long periods of time. And, you can tell where they're hanging out over large, large periods of time when you see clusters of dots like this, and like this. And particularly relevant to Drill Pad Number 2 up here, Roost Site Number 1 is within about a quarter-mile of that drill pad. Doesn't comply with that half-mile setback requirement. That was not evaluated in the 1978 EIR. Roost numbers 2 and 3, they measure about exactly a half-mile from that drill pad. So, depending on, on where the oil wells are installed, the applicant and the county don't give specific locations for the proposed new oil wells on, on Drill Pad Number 2. They could be within that, that half-mile setback, or they could be just outside it. It's hard to tell, but I think Condors deserve maybe the benefit of the doubt, and at least some analysis, or, or some clarity on where those particular oil wells are going to be located, so that we can see, are they going to be less than a half-mile, or more than a half-mile from Roost Sites Number 2 and 3? And, this is just data. We summarized this in our letter that, that you can pull from the Fish and Wildlife Service data showing when the bird touched down, what bird number it is. You can see bird number 262, bird number 262, bird number 449. This, this is the, the pair of Condors that are nesting. Bird 262, bird 449. Also, a really short visit from bird 412 and 326 to 328. Not really that important for, for, for this discussion today. You can even see Roost Number 1, the bird hung out here for two nights. It, it hunkered down in this grove of oak trees for two nights, within a quarter-mile of, of the pad, and it hasn't returned since. Why is that? Is it, is it because it doesn't like the oil pad? Is it because it didn't like the roost site? That's hard, it's, it's hard to get into the mind of the condor. But, just the fact that there's this roost site in close proximity dictates that in order for the county to avoid significant impacts, we need to figure out where those, those proposed wells are going to be located exactly. Do they fit that half-mile setback? Do they, do they not? With respect to Roost Number 1, no, no, no site on that drill pad is going to, to comply with the, the half-mile setback standard there. And figure out what mitigation measures, if, if any, need to be put into place. The county keeps latching on, onto this interesting argument about, "These buffer zones are land use decisions. We can't impose them for, as part of a permit condition." That's what this process is all about. You have setbacks for creeks. You can have setbacks for Condors. Again, it's just a nonsensical response, and I, I think telling about how the county planning division does not seem to be taking the condor protection measures seriously. Time and time again, we hear, "Oh, we have, we have, we have no evidence showing that, that these oil wells impact Condors. But, but we're, we're going to do these things anyway, just in case." It's sort of a circular argument. And then, they also come to this other argument about, "Oh, but we don't need to even follow all of those 23 recommended protection measures, because the most important one, oh, that, that's a land use decision. We, we, we don't even need to discuss that here." And then, they go through, they, they do a pretty good job of incorporating most of the condor mitigation measures into this permit. And again, those measures include things like installing anti-perching devices, so you don't get something like this occurring. And also, just at a fundamental level, and again, this is from the US Fish and Wildlife Service. These are the biologists, the experts that deal with Condors all the time. They say, they said in 2011, and I think they would still agree with this statement today, "The combination of Condors and well pads creates a difficult management challenge for the California Condor Recovery Program." It's not too often that, that you hear an agency admit to a, a difficult management challenge, but that's exactly what, what's happening here. Condors, they're needing to, to completely change the location of, of their feeding areas for Condors to accommodate the oil industry, and, and we think the Condors deserve much more than that. And so, in 2013, Fish and Wildlife Service sent this, this very important letter to the county. They say, "We have become aware that you're reviewing the impacts of proposed oil and gas facilities on biological resources to assist you in that process. We are enclosing a list of measures for you to consider incorporating into your review process, which will help protect the California condor from the potential adverse effects of oil and gas projects." These aren't hard and fast requirements. They are recommendations. County staff likes to point that out quite a bit. "Oh, these aren't requirements. These are just recommendations." But, the fact of the matter is, if the county does not incorporate these recommendations, then it is going to be liable for take under the Endangered Species Act. And, the Fish and Wildlife Service is essentially doing the county a favor here, saying, "Hey, here's your roadmap on how to avoid being liable under the ESA for take. Here's the simple mitigation measures you and your oil facility applicants need to incorporate into decisions, when those decisions are within habitat for Condors." We're not talking about incorporating these decisions across the entire county. Condors don't hang out across the entire county. There's, if you look at that Fish and Wildlife Service data, if, if we zoomed out and looked at the entire county, there's clear, very well, excuse me, well, very well-defined areas where Condors do hang out and where they don't. Again, here's those 22, 23 mitigation measures. The first one, we discussed already, half-mile buffer zone for roost sites, mile-and-a-half buffer zone for nesting sites. That was not incorporated into this permit. Frankly, that's new information that, that wasn't even incorporated or evaluated, mentioned in the previous environmental documents. None of the five previous environmental documents talked about the, the roost sites in particular. The second one, "If new power transmission and distribution lines are necessary, they will be placed underground to avoid potential for collision by California Condors. Where undergrounding of power lines is not possible, location of those lines will be developed with the US Fish and Wildlife Service." There is a permit condition addressing undergrounding of power lines that incorporates some of this, but they do not address the undergrounding of existing power lines on the site, which... Go back for a second here. Looking at number three, "All existing power lines will be retrofitted with raptor guards, flight diverters, and other anti-perching or anti-collision devices." That one, that one is a condition of the permit. That is good. But, existing power transmission and distribution lines, the, the permit is silent about that. Number eight, informational signs describing the threat that microtrash poses to Condors, and the need to keep well pads dry, well, I guess we need to keep them dry from, from oil spills, but we need to keep them clean from, from trash. And so, number eight, they did partially incorporate that into the permit, but it, it's not triggered, under the language that the county is proposing, it's not triggered until the applicant comes in and submits application for zoning clearance. That could be years from when their permit is actually approved by, by your commission or the board. There's no requirement to install those signs right away, as soon as the permit is issued, or within 30 days, or within 60 days, or 90 days even. This open-ended nature of, of the permit condition, in this case, and in other cases as well, doesn't really hit at the heart of Fish and Wildlife Service's intent in putting together these, these mitigation measures. Also, a really critical one here, number 22. This pertains to Condors being, being sighted at or near the, the well pad. It says, "If any California condor is observed on or near approximately 1,000 feet of an oil and gas facility, the Fish and Wildlife Service will be notified immediately and allowed to access the facility. Additionally, if the Fish and Wildlife Service has data to indicate that any California condor is in the vicinity, the service will be allowed access to the facility to confirm the presence of the birds. Measures to deter the birds from using the oil and gas facility may be deployed after review by US Fish and Wildlife Service." So, there is a requirement now to report condor sightings on the pad, but they are restricted to Condors actually on the oil pad. Nowhere does the county's proposed permit address the 1,000 feet. If you see a condor coming near an oil pad, just let Fish and Wildlife, Fish and Wildlife Service know. That is not, that is not in the, the permit condition. So, you know, we, we give a C grade to the, the existing permit conditions with respect to, to addressing some of these, these condor issues, but with these holes that, that county staff have included, with these and a couple other permit conditions, the, the intent and the letter of the Fish and Wildlife Service's recommendations are still not being adhered to. That needs to be evaluated as well, because if these are not carefully and strictly adhered to, then, as Fish and Wildlife Service noted in the letter, there will be significant impacts to Condors. Last but not least, with respect to permit conditions, there's sort of a catch-all waiver, I guess for lack of a better word, that the county has inserted at the end of all these condor protection measures. And it says, "The permitees shall implement the BMPs listed above throughout the entire life of the project unless modified by the county planning director in consultation with Fish and Wildlife Service and California Fish and Wildlife. A county-approved qualified biologist shall confirm and photo-document the installation of the BMPs." So, here we are. We have all these permit conditions, and, and by the stroke of a pen or the, the pluck of a keyboard key, the county is saying, "We can waive these at, at any time. All we need to do is consult with Fish and Wildlife Service." They could go call up Fish and Wildlife Service, say, "Hey, we're going to waive this permit condition." Fish and Wildlife Service can say, "Heck no, that, that's, we don't agree with that at all." The county can say, "Well, that's what we're going to do." The county can, can modify that permit, apparently without any necessary approval. We think this should be changed to say, "They need written concurrence, or written approval from Fish and Wildlife Service before these mitigation measures are modified." Otherwise, again, if the county can just modify these on, on their own volition, we could see significant impacts that, that again, would have to be evaluated in a subsequent EIR, not just the EIR addendum. And, last but not least, Steelhead. This is going to be quick. No disrespect to the Steelhead. I like them just as much as Condors. So, here we have a map showing formerly-designated critical habitat for Steelhead. Steelhead were listed as endangered under the Federal Endangered Species Act in 1997. Critical habitat was, was approved in, I want to say sometime in the 2000s, the, the early to mid 2000s. So, it's been on the book for, for quite some time, and, and at any rate, these are, this is new information, changed circumstances, that was not evaluated in any of the previous environmental documents, because Steelhead weren't listed back then. And what we have, you can see, this blue line is the formerly-designated critical habitat for Steelhead, as it applies to this facility. Again, the pipeline goes directly across it, and there are no safeguards on that pipeline to prevent it from sagging, to prevent it from getting snagged by a, a tree that's floating down the river during a, a giant storm. And it, it's, it's in the FEMA floodplain, where, where it touches the, even where it touches the ground, not, not just where it's suspended over the creek. These things have, will pose a severe and potentially significant impact to Steelhead. If we have an oil spill in Santa Paula Creek, we've seen what it, what it did to Refugio Beach up in Santa Barbara County, it would be a disaster here. Other Sequo violations, just really briefly here. About a week after the applicant submitted their application, the county, on a memo that was circulated to other county agencies and departments, indicated that they were going to prepare an EIR addendum for this, just a week after receiving the, the application. They made that determination before receiving input from other county agencies, like flood control, the county biologist, the list goes on and on. They made the decision before looking at any of the environmental impacts. They didn't do an initial study. They didn't do any sort of, of other analysis to take a good look of, "Okay, what are we going to do? Can we submit a, can we prepare a, a EIR addendum here? Or do we need to prepare a, a subsequent EIR?" And, the record seems to indicate that the county predetermined the level of environmental review for this project, and now, despite the overwhelming evidence that the public and Los Padres Forest Watch and Sea Frog and, and others have presented to staff and, here at the commission today, they're digging in their heels, they're sticking to their guns, they're saying, "Oh, nope, still EIR addendum. No, no big deal here." And, we don't think, we think the county needs to take a more careful and calculated approach, instead of just jumping right in, saying, "Hey, this is what we're doing," and then not incorporating what, what we believe, and, and a lot of our experts believe, are, are sound and very credible evidence of potentially significant impacts. Staff just dismisses, dismisses all of them as meritless. They have not made, to my knowledge, much of any substantial changes to the permit as part of the planning division, Planning Director hearing, as well as the time leading up to, to this hearing. No changes have, have been made to the, the permit conditions, at, at least nothing significant that, that we were able to detect. Again, the county can, cannot prepare one addendum and attach it. How is the county supposed to attach an addendum? The requirement is to, you're, after the county approves an addendum, they attach it to the previous environmental document. How do you attach one addendum to one EIR prepared in 1978, a focused EIR on, on traffic and circulation prepared in, in the mid 80s, and three mitigative declarations? Sequa, this whole process was, was not put in place to address a, a situation like that. And I think because we, we have such a scattering, piecemeal evaluation of, of this project that has occurred over the last 30 years, the county is now faced with this, this troubling situation of, "Hey, how, how, what do we do with this EIR addendum? What do we attach it to? What are we adding? What do we include in the, the staff report?" And, there's some, some glaring inconsistencies here, and it just goes to show that, that Sequo was not designed for situations like these, where you have all these various documents, some MNDs, some EIRs, all of which were prepared over a, a very long timeframe and, and are all, all outdated. Sequo requires that the county adopt a mitigation and monitoring plan. That has not been, been done here. And a landscaping plan. It appears that the county inserted a, a new condition after the Planning Director Hearing, Condition 70 regarding the landscaping plan, and I think this was probably in, in direct response to the comments that, that we brought up at, in our, our comment letter and the, and at the hearing as well, regarding the lack of landscaping here. And so, instead of merely holding Vintage's now CRC's feet to the fire and saying, "Hey, what's going on here? It's been three decades. You guys haven't implemented your landscaping plan that's required by this, this permit condition under your existing CUP." They're saying, "Oh, we're just going to, to insert a, a new and different permit condition in, into this, into your new permit, and, and you guys can get off, off scotch-free." That landscaping plan, by the way, is only, they only need to install the landscaping that, that the Planning Director deems feasible. And so, again, that does not provide the public or your commission with any clarity. Certainly doesn't comply with Sequa, which, if you have a mitigation measure, it can't just be, what, what that actual mitigation measure is can't be punted to at some point in the future. We have no idea what the, the Planning Director... We have no idea what the Planning Director will consider to be feasible, and it won't be subject to environmental review, it won't be subject to public comment, or even public notice for that matter. So again, we request that you nullify the permit application based on the ongoing violations and the material misstatements that were included in the application. Basically, the applicant needs to go back to the drawing board, resubmit their application, correct some of the misstatements that were in there, bring it all up to code, and then let's have this discussion about extending this permit for another 30 years. Until these permit violations are addressed, it seems like the prudent course of action. We don't want to say, "Okay, we understand that oil company, you haven't been following your permit for the last 30 years, but that's okay, we're going to come up with some new conditions and hopefully you'll follow those." That's not good planning. So on this topic of nullifications, this is in the zoning ordinance, where a violation is discovered on a lot where an application request has been accepted or is being processed after being deemed complete, said application shall become null and void and returned to the applicant. And that's exactly what we're alleging here, that violations have, are occurring on the site as we sit here today, and they have been occurring on the site for the better part of 30 years. That is not acceptable. So when these violations were discovered by us, we sent the county a letter. This was after the Planning Director's hearing, but before she issued her decision. And we put together what we thought was a very thoughtful letter. Here's what the permit condition says, here's what we've seen out in the field. We did this for eight to 10 different permit conditions that we thought were the most egregiously And we spent a lot of time and effort on that letter. We identified permit condition number four that requires a compliance review every five years. Condition number 21 relating to the color of the facilities to blend into the surrounding environment. Condition number 22 unsightly conditions pertaining to graffiti. Condition number 49, the requirement of the six-foot fencing. Also, condition number 49 locked gates. We saw gates that were left completely open and unlocked for anyone to wander in and do whatever they want to do. And condition number 51 with respect to the landscaping. And so with that first one, CUP condition number four, it states that two years and five years after the approval of the existing CUP, and every fifth year thereafter, the permit shall be reviewed by the Planning Director at the permitees' expense. Okay, so we looked back at the project file and expected to see a healthy dose of compliance reviews. This permit condition was inserted as part of this permit modification reference down here in 1982, a long time ago. So, two years after that, 1984, no compliance review. '89, none. There was one, I believe, done in 1990. And again, as more and more time goes by and as these five-year intervals progress, the county again and again and again drops the ball on one of the most important, if not the most important, permit condition that's part of this entire permit. If you're going to put together a package of permit conditions, you've got to go out there periodically. Every five years, I would say, get out there every year. That's what Dogger does with their oil facilities, they're inspected once a year. The county is saying every five years. I think that's pretty lenient to determine whether the county's own permit conditions are being complied with. But, again, as time goes by, still no compliance review, even as recently as 2014, still nothing. The best time to have done this compliance review was when Vintage acquired this facility in 2008. They didn't do, the county didn't do a compliance review there either. What did happen in 2008 was the new owner, Vintage at the time, now CRC, signed this reimbursement agreement for permit condition compliance review. It basically said, "Hey, we, the applicant, are paying the county 500 bucks to make sure that a compliance review is done as part of this new facility that we've just acquired." And there's a memo in the file in February 2008, and it says, this is an internal memo from the Resource Management Agency, "I've completed my review of the relevant materials in the case file for Seneca." Seneca was the previous owner who transferred it to Vintage. Vintage changed names and is now CRC. So, "I've completed my review of the case file for Seneca Oil as they pertain to the landscape bond submitted." So, when that landscaping permit condition was initially put onto the permit, it required the oil company at the time to submit a $5,000 landscaping bond to make sure that the landscaping required under the permit was completed. And so, this person completed her review of the landscaping bond submitted. Based on an extensive review of the files dating back to 1991, it appears that the landscaping was not installed within the timeframe contained in the original conditions. An extension was granted, but it does not appear that the appropriate landscaping was installed within a timely fashion. As per our previous conversation and after consultation with the Planning Director, please transfer the balance of the Seneca Resources landscaping bond, that $5,000 amount, as a credit to the condition compliance account for the existing oil operation." So they're essentially saying, "Hey, the landscaping wasn't done under the previous operator. We want you to transfer that $5,000 amount so that it's available for the new owner, Vintage slash CRC, to comply with those landscaping requirements." No condition compliance was ever done after 2008. Even though that money was transferred into a condition compliance account, it never was done, even though the applicant paid $500 when the facilities were transferred into that same account as well. If I was the applicant, I'd be asking for my 500 bucks back. If the county's not going to be doing compliance reviews yet asking the applicants to pay for them, what's going on? So here's county staff's response to our detailed letter outlining the various permit violations taking place at the site. "The Planning Division received your letter dated February 11th regarding the Vintage Petroleum Conditional Use Permit Modification Request that has been under review. Given that Los Padres Forest Watch has appealed the February 17, 2005 decision of the Planning Director, your letter and the staff response to the issues raised thereon will be included in the staff report provided in the Planning Commission at the de novo hearing on the proposed project. When a date for the hearing has been identified, I will let you know." So despite receiving a very detailed outline of ongoing permit violations at the site, instead of addressing them before we get to this hearing so that we can focus on more important matters, the county says, "Hey, you guys appealed this? We're just going to punt this down the road and have us all duke it out at this hearing today." That's bad planning. If, we need assurance that if we submit a zoning ordinance complaint to the county, that they will follow up with that in a timely manner, not punish us because we filed an appeal of their decision or to delay it to some unknown time in the future. These things are important, they need to be taken care of immediately. Finally, my last point, this is brief, and then I'll sit down. Uphold our appeal and refund our appeal fee. The county policy says if any appeal is fully upheld, all fees shall be refunded. If the appeal is upheld in part, the commission shall determine today what portion of the appeal charges should be refunded to the applicant. So, we paid $1,000 appeal fee. That's a lot of money for us. It's a lot of money for any member of the public to participate in the planning process, but we feel strongly about this. We're willing to put our money where our mouth is. And so, whoops. So why do we think we're entitled to refund? Well, any changes that the commission makes to the project today, we believe that makes us, at least our appeal is upheld in part. And we define our appeal as not just that one- or two-sentence statement that we included on the actual appeal form, but the detailed appeal points outlined in our comments. So I want to make that point entirely clear. Our appeal is not just the one- or two-sentence statement in our appeal form. Our appeal points are laid out in specific detail in our comment letter that was submitted to you last week. And the public can't simply put together that level of detail in the 10-day appeal period. That's why we keep our appeal points brief and then focus in on the details as we get closer to the hearing date. So again, the landscaping plan, the new condition number 70 that was added on or after the Planning Director hearing date, the recent improvements made to the project, I think that was a direct response to our appeal, given the uncanny timing of it all. And again, any changes made today. So again, I'm asking your commission today respectfully to decline to certify the EIR addendum. Staff is asking you to certify it, we're asking you to decline to certify it. Related to that, direct the division to prepare a subsequent EIR to hash out some of this new information and more severe significant impacts. And even at a more fundamental level than that, nullify the permit application based on ongoing violations and misstatements. I hope that the county will take a stand today and perhaps maybe send a message to applicant saying, "Hey, if you're going to apply for the privilege of doing something in this county, we expect full disclosure in your application, and misstatements are not acceptable." And last but not least, uphold our appeal and refund our appeal fee. So I'm available for any questions, and I thank you for your generous dose of time you gave me this morning.
You paid $1,000, so you get to take as much time as you like.
I won't take you off on that.
Yeah, okay. About, what, 250 an hour you charge? All right. We do have a question from Commissioner Dukas.
Okay, so I found the properly-designed suspension bridge in the 1978 environmental document, and it looks like it was a mitigation measure for an impact. It's on page 704 of our packet. It's page...
People are laughing at the volume of the staff materials, I think.
I see.
Particularly when it keeps multiplying as close as we get to a hearing.
So my question is, is it your recollection that it made its way into the conditions of approval, or it was just something that was dropped as time went on from 1978?
I'm pretty sure it was made a part of that condition, but again, I can't say for certain, and I don't, I cannot cite to a specific provision. But nonetheless, even if it was not included as a specific condition of the permit, if it's included as a mitigation measure and it's not being implemented, then that's some new information that the county, that your commission today, needs to consider in determining whether to prepare a subsequent EIR. If previous mitigation measures are not being adhered to, that we maintain opens it up to a subsequent EIR.
Okay. And is your, you've gone out there, you visited it, and I noticed that you took pictures, but I was looking down and I couldn't see. Are there valves, are there valves on that portion that goes over the creek?
I could not tell whether there are valves or not.
Okay.
From that vantage point in the creek, we could not see valves, and there's actually private property on either side of the creek bed, so we couldn't get out there and actually inspect it.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Onstott?
I'm not sure what an engineered support bridge is or isn't. Did staff review that, Mr. Baca? It looks like there is some support structure to that pipeline by the pictures we've seen.
Chairman Westner, Commissioner Onstott, that condition or that mitigation that was described in the EIR did not get translated word-for-word into the permit conditions. What ended up in the permit conditions was that it had to be supported in a manner that was acceptable to the Public Works Department. Now, so what you see there, they've been conveying oil in that pipeline since 1982. They had a deadline to do it by '82, is an existing part, is part of the existing permitted setting. And so the suspension bridge language did not end up in the conditions. So again, a SEQA document is an information piece that goes to decision-making bodies for them to consider when they decide what permit to grant. Once the permit is granted, the environmental document is not a permit, you can't violate it, it's just there as an information piece. And so that, so the challenge period for that EIR in terms of the commission's actions in 1985 or '82 to approve the pipeline without a suspension bridge has long since expired.
Okay. Sir, regarding Drill Site 7 and the access and egress, I go back farther than I care to know. But when this whole process started some 40 years ago, there was no dedicated right-of-way for anyone to go up and down that creek, and they came up and down the creek bed. I know this for a fact because I was involved in all this. They were not, this was all private property, and my recollection of the matter, the county of Ventura, the Forest Service, Thomas Aquinas College got together and relocated that hiking trail so that it actually goes through Thomas Aquinas, up the roadway next to this drill site and on by. And I'm having a hard time with people complaining about the fact that it's sitting close to this drill, I think it's an, is it an engineered drill pad?
Yes, it is, Commissioner Onstott.
Okay. This engineered drill pad, we've got them out of the creek, up on an engineered drill pad, much safer situation, and now we're going to complain that they're too close to a couple of wells. Well, I understand that. Personally, I take exception that screening it makes it uglier as far as I'm concerned, but this was all done for the health and safety of the people walking up there, and now to complain about it, I have a real problem with that. They could be backed down in the river bottom. And the other thing that strikes me too is you're talking about flooding, and I'm just talking from experience here because I've been up there all my life, is that when that thing floods, Rancho Cuero takes the brunt of it, and they lose all their avocado trees. And if you look at that floodplain, you can see where the water went. Now, I don't think has, anybody from Vintage, has that ever flooded, that Drill Site 7?
No.
Ever?
No.
But the trail was created and moved for the safety of the people. And then now if they have to walk by it 200 feet or whatever the drill pad is, that's a small price to pay for their safety as far as I'm concerned. I'm editorializing, but I'm sitting here listening to this, and I'm going, wow, that all was created because of safety considerations for hikers.
Yeah, if I can respond to that for a moment, when this drill pad was installed and the mitigated negative declaration was prepared for it, one of the mitigation measures and permit conditions at that time, actually going back for a second, that MND noted that, so at least in the 1980s, there was a trail that went through this existing drill pad. That trail was rerouted to its current location now on the side of the drill pad. And one of the permit conditions mitigation measures at that time was for the applicant to cooperate with the Forest Service and Thomas Aquinas College and the landowner to reroute the trail. Again, this was just designed as a temporary reroute, what we're looking at here. The mitigation measure permit condition actually required the applicant to cooperate with those other parties to permanently reroute the trail to an area that was not immediately adjacent to the well pads.
Well, that'd be fine, but that's in the creek. That's why they got it out of the creek. There is no room, that's a sheer bluff behind it.
FYI, sir, the hiking trail used to be on the side adjacent to the cliff over there, on the other side of the wells. There was a landslide that came down and crushed the fence and obliterated the trail. That's when the trail was moved to the other side of this particular location. This is after you aforementioned, when we used to hike up through the...
And what I'm telling you is for... And what I'm telling you is, for all my lifetime, the right-of-way was right up the creek. Now, they may have moved it from the right or the left of the drill pad, but it was with the permission and consent of the property owner trying to get people in a safe environment.
Yeah, and I think there is several examples, numerous, too many examples of national forest trails, crossing creeks and being in the flood plain. There's a good distance between where this trail is right now and where the water is flowing today. Flows are very low. And between that 100 feet or so, whatever it may be, I would maintain without, you know, doing the engineering studies and really looking at this in detail, that there are options to reroute the trail at some point to comply with that permit condition. But I think the overall intent of that, and just my point of me bringing it up, is that the parties were supposed to get together and figure out, hey, is there a feasible way to reroute this thing? If so, how do we do it? They never even did that initial step. And again, it's just another example of...
Well, I was present at meetings that went on ad nauseam, and I see some people who were around in those days, too. And I don't agree with that statement.
Commissioner Rodriguez, you have a question?
Yeah, just a trailer on Commissioner Dukas's reference to the pipeline over the creek and the mitigation issue. So I'm interpreting correctly Mr. Baca's comments as relates to suspension bridge. In fact, the definition of suspension bridge was reinterpreted by Public Works in this process to allow what is there now. And because there was never appealed during whatever appeal period might have been available at that time, that issue is no longer in play. Is that correct?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Rodriguez, the issue there was that you have an EIR that says suspension bridge. And what you're talking about is, in theme, is a safe conveyance of a pipeline over a creek. So the decision-makers at that time, the planning commission, said rather than us specifying exactly how it's going to be safely taken across the creek, you need to have a pipeline design that is reviewed and approved by the Public Works Agency. And that's how they handled the pipeline across the creek issue. And so they didn't specifically require a bridge to be built, just required that it be reviewed and approved by the Public Works Agency, which is a pretty standard-type thing rather than having a specific design included in a condition. And so the answer is, is that that EIR is beyond its challenge period. The CUP, by the way, it was appealed, but ultimately approved by the Board of Supervisors. And that permit is beyond appeal. And that's the existing setting we have today. The applicant's not proposing to change any of the facilities except installing more wells on the existing drill pads. And we can discuss more about pipelines later, but it's dragging on.
I don't know if the applicant's going to speak today.
Oh, yes, they are.
But a question came up about where those shut-off valves are at in relation to that pipeline. I would hope we hear from that, on that issue. Thank you.
Okay. Anything else, Jeff?
I have one more.
A question this time, Counselor?
Yes, I'm not gonna. You showed us a map of the landing sites for the condors.
Do you want me to bring it back up?
Yeah, please. Over what period of time is that, sir?
The map itself contains, we used the entire Fish and Wildlife Service data set, which is 2004 to just about present. However, having said that, nearly all, or 99% of those condor blips on the map are from the two roosting condor pairs from within the last year or two. So even though we used a larger subset of data, if we went back and said, okay, we only want to use 2004 to 2012 data, we'd hardly see any green dots on this map. So this is all very recent activity.
Was this data available to the staff when they were evaluating your position on condors and new information?
It should be. I understand that they have occasional meetings and conferences with...
Is this a changed circumstance that you're talking about, that we now have all of this activity which didn't exist before? Or did this activity exist before? That condor range is generally in this whole area. Was this new, or is this something over a prolonged period of time?
It's hard to answer that question. They did not have radio transmitters on condors up until the last, up until they were reintroduced. So if you're talking about going back to the time where the previous environmental documents were prepared, there either weren't any condors in the wild because they'd all been taken out and put in captivity, or there were so few in the wild that they didn't hang around this area much to begin with. And at any rate, the previous environmental documents did not address the issue of the roosting sites. It talked about how far away the facility was from the nesting site, but it didn't discuss roosting. And that, we think, is new information based on this very, very new data.
We don't have, for instance, something that would depict, or maybe you have, maybe not this aerial photo, but something would depict condor activity going back prior to the oil and gas exploration development at Ferndale?
No, they just didn't have the benefit of that sort of electronic data at that time.
Well, I was trying to find out if there was a pictorial way to determine what the activity was and what it is now, so we can see that if there are in fact changed circumstances.
Yeah, I think the best we would be able to do is go back and look at some field notes back when people took notes in notebooks and see when nesting activity occurred in Santa Pollicani, which is what we did. We went to the condor archives at the Museum of Natural History in Santa Barbara to figure out, okay, when was the last time a condor even nested in this area? And it had been quite some time. But in terms of any more detailed data than that, I just don't think it even exists.
Commissioner Dukas?
Well, it's my recollection that, I think it was 1982, there were 22 in existence, and they were all gathered up, 22 in the world. And so in 1978, you can extrapolate that the numbers were, you know, in the couple dozens. So that's my recollection.
Yeah, that's correct.
Is that yours as well?
Yep.
Okay.
Any other questions, Jeff?
I don't have a Jeff, but I do have a counsel.
Okay. All right. Would it require additional information from Jeff?
It appears, I don't know if anybody, everybody can see this, but these roosting data is amongst about five birds. Is that what it looks like?
Yeah, if you want to count the two at the end there in the last column, we have one...
Four to five.
Four birds, yeah. But really, those last two just came once, hung out for not a terribly long time and took off.
Okay. Thank you.
Go ahead.
This is directed to Mr. Barnes. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
There's an assertion that you can't prepare and one addendum for the one EIR, one focused EIR, and three MND. Is that correct?
I wouldn't agree with that statement. It's, I will call it a novel sequel argument, but bigger picture, SEQA, SEQA does allow an EIR and then either subsequent EIRs or subsequent MNDs to be prepared after the EIR. And the larger notion is that the package of environmental documents all goes with the project. And so when you're assessing, you know, the potentially new significant impacts or project changes, what you really have to do is look at all of those SEQA documents together, which is what planning's done here. And then looking at them as a package, see if the 15-162 factors we've been talking about, see if any of those come into play, and whether a subsequent or supplemental EIR is required based on looking at that whole package of documents.
Okay, so looking over what I have, I haven't seen, you know, a focus on impacts to condors other than the blips, the little lines. And I'm just wondering, isn't there a mandatory finding of significance when it comes to an endangered species?
I can look at that at the lunch break, but I'm assuming that the mandatory finding of significance would require a link between the project and impacts to the species. But I will answer your question after the lunch break.
Okay, and the argument is that there's new significant information with regard to the roosting site and the nesting pairs? So I...
Right. And even without that mandatory finding, you could still determine on your own that in your mind, there's new, there's been a change of circumstances or that present a more significant risk than was assessed before. So I guess what I'm saying is, based on the evidence, it's your job today to find whether or not that risk needs to be reviewed more.
Okay, thank you. And I have one for Mr. Baca, too. The other thing I wanted to get from staff was the scouring of the creek bed in that 2005 rain event, and whether that changes anything with the setback and whether it's in compliance with county standards.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Dukas, actually, the 2005 rain event and flooding event was actually really good for analysis purposes. And since we have, you know, the, we had taken aerial photographs before the flood event and immediately after the flood event. And what's remarkable about that set of photographs is that the engineer who designed and built the drill pad seven knew what they were doing. Because not a single piece of the fill slope that supports that, supports the trail and the pad, there's a riprap fill face there. And of course, by that time, it was all vegetated. And if you look at the map, and you can match up individual plants, bushes, and trees, there was not one single iota of erosion on the face of the pad of Drill Seven. So they put it actually above the flood plain. And by the way, we also went back to 1969 and looked at the available aerial photograph resources there, and there was no evidence of flooding of that site anyway, even prior to all of this in looking at the available record. But the best record is the 2005 flood event, and nothing happened to the pad. It was completely untouched. You can tell by matching up bush for bush that there was literally no erosion at all during the 2005 flood event. And the flooding never got near the surface of the pad.
And so it meets the, I don't know, the 100-year flood plain or the 200?
Yes, it meets standards and it meets the setback standards of NCZO Section 8107-5.6. You know, there's a memorandum in your packet that was reviewed by the Public Works Agency. That's both the Engineering Division and the Watershed Protection District, that is the flood control people. And it's a consensus of your licensed professionals working for the county that the 100-foot setback is appropriate for that site.
Okay. And do we have information from staff regarding the testimony we received from Stephen Colome on the greenhouse gases?
Yes, but we'll be responding to that and other things later.
Okay, thanks.
Commissioner Kelly?
I'm sorry to interrupt. Commissioner Dukas, I found the SEQA Appendix G threshold of significance that you referred to. And so this is under Biological Resources, and it states, "Would the project have a substantial adverse effect either directly or through habitat modifications on any species identified as a candidate, sensitive or special status species in local or regional plans, policies, or regulations or by the California Department of Fish and Game or U.S. Fish and Wildlife Services?" The complicating factor here is that this Appendix G initial study is intended for use when a project is initially approved. And here we're dealing with, as Mr. Baca's mentioned, we have an existing setting of a project that's already been reviewed under SEQA. And so we've all been talking about the SEQA Regulation 15162. And so that, you can, you know, take this Appendix G into account, but the more appropriate analysis here is, and what Mr. Coopers referred to, is the, let's say, the 15162 prong that says if you have, if you have new information of substantial importance that was not known or could not be known when the environmental documents were certified, and the new information shows one or more significant impacts that either weren't previously examined in that document, or if one or more significant impacts were previously examined, but the new information shows that they'll be substantially more severe than was recognized in the prior documents. And so that is a more appropriate standard, I would say, for looking at the condor issue today.
Let me follow up on that. And so what is the scope of review? What is the evidentiary threshold? I mean, significant impacts, substantial adverse, can you translate that into something besides obviously minimal? But what, how do we, how do we measure that? I mean, what's the guideline, if any?
The guideline, it's, when you get into project changes and subsequent approvals, it's kind of the dueling substantial evidence. The county needs substantial evidence of a significant impact to require the applicant to basically fund a subsequent or supplemental EIR. But at the same time, the record upon which you base your decision must have substantial evidence showing that these issues have at least been looked at enough for you to assure yourselves that there isn't a significant impact going the other way. And so it's a bit convoluted in this context. I will say, though, I've heard the fair argument standard mentioned a few times, and because we're dealing with a previously certified EIR, the standard is not whether a project opponent has substantial evidence of a, presents substantial evidence of a fair argument that there may be a significant impact. And so that's the lower standard that applies when you're considering approval of a negative declaration or mitigated negative declaration. But that doesn't, that doesn't apply here. So it's, again, it's, I've explained it the best I can, but it's a bit convoluted.
Any other questions? Okay. All right. It's the intent of the chair, I have three cards in support of the appellant, okay, to then take a lunch break. What is the accounting minimum? Two hours?
Was that humor?
Yeah, okay. I happen to have a fourth one. To take a one-hour lunch break, okay? And then the applicant will be heard after that.
We're going to lose a lot of folks, the public, to attend to speak, to take that kind of a break. And I think that, I mean, given the breadth of the appellate's discussion, I just think it's, there's graduations going on right now.
Would you like to go through lunch, sir?
Yes, sir.
All right. Is that all right?
Fine with me.
We're comfortable with us staying, that's what we do, but for the public...
All right, then we will just trudge forward. And when I faint up here, somebody has to give me CPR, Steve. Not going to happen. All right, then that's what we'll do. We'll see how, I'm sorry, but as far as the clerk, does she have, the labor loss get a lunch break after so many hours? Oh, I see the laugh, don't I? I don't need ED coming into doors here.
I would say, is it possible for us to have a 15-minute break, so maybe I can trade out Denise with somebody else? A 15-minute break would be...
Everybody comfortable with that?
Yeah.
Because we do have an issue that they have to have breaks and lunch and all that. All right, it is 12 o'clock, 12:50. All right, ladies and gentlemen, thank you for allowing us to do that. If anybody have seen those Snicker commercials, that's me. I do a really good Joe Pesci, trust me. So if I ask you out for cannoli, you don't go. Okay. Appreciate the humor. And again, I want to thank Mr. Brooks for bringing up the collaboration. This is, the intent is not to be adversarial. It's, again, for this body to make a decision. Now, there may be some time issues out there I have been made aware of, of some of the people that may or may not want to...
I have been made aware of some of the people that may or may not want to testify. Is there anybody, I can take you out of order, if, I know Mr. Zach Schultz said he's under a time crunch. Does the appellant or anybody else have any problem to allow that person to speak, and then we'll go back to the format? All right?
Me, too.
Okay. And you are, sir?
Sandy Smith.
Sandy Smith, okay. Mr. Schultz, if you'd like to come forward, if you're here.
Chair Westner, I'm sorry to interrupt. I feel like I need to clarify and try to be a little more articulate about the CEQA standard, because I got a few questions at the break. The ultimate CEQA standard in terms of, is whether a subsequent or supplemental EIR is required. That's a CEQA question. And in order for your commission to find that a subsequent or supplemental EIR is required, there must be, you must be shown substantial evidence of either a new significant impact or a significant increase in a, a substantial increase in a significant impact that was looked at before. So that is the ultimate standard. When I was talking about substantial evidence supporting the addendum, the county and the planning commission isn't required to prove a negative. They're not required to prove that a significant impact does not exist. So I just want to clarify that. So the ultimate, again, just to be crystal clear, the ultimate question is whether there's substantial evidence of a significant new impact or a substantial increase in a significant impact that was looked at before.
Thank you, County Council. All right. Again, Mr. Zach Schultz, did you have to leave already? If you did...
Moving a skirt.
Moving a skirt. All right, if it comes back in, please let the chair know. All right, Mr. Smith? Now, Mr. Smith has marked supported the recommended staff action, so that means he would be speaking on behalf.
Chair of the Commission, members of the Commission, first of all, thanks for taking me out of sequence and skipping lunch. I have a daughter that's graduating from Ventura High today, so, or stepdaughter, actually, but like a daughter to me, so I appreciate that.
Your name for the record, sir, because there are people listening.
Sandy Smith. I'm here representing the Ventura County Economic Development Association today. And I'll begin by the same, begin with the same statement that I made before the Board of Supervisors last week, and noting the oil derrick, not a cell tower, in the middle of the county seal here. I'm a 65-year resident, third generation of Ventura County. On my mom's side, agriculture, and my family grew lima beans, and on my dad's side, worked in the oil fields for his whole lifetime. So with that as a background, on behalf of the CETA, I would just want to note that only responsible oil production has been a vital part of Ventura County's economy for almost 100 years. And the importance of the oil industry to this county's economy is pervasive. The industry generates about 12,500 total jobs, direct, indirect, and induced. The industry's total value add to the county's economy is approximately $2.7 billion, or 6.5% of the county's total. And then the industry's contribution to labor income in Ventura County is $739 million, or 3.1% of the county total. The industry contributes $121 million in county property taxes. California has consumed all of the oil and gas produced in the state and still have to import approximately twice as much from other states and foreign countries like Saudi Arabia to satisfy demand. While growth in alternative energy sources will meet some future demand, the energy we currently need should come from in-state sources that keep the jobs and tax revenues they provide here. The CETA believes it is the responsibility of our elected leadership and the appointed commissions and committees by those elected officials to only use real science and empirical data to determine the need for new regulations and measure the economic impacts and environmental impacts of those regulations on the communities that they serve. A substantive opinion of what needs to be regulated and how is not a responsible way to resolve issues, nor is it the way to set policy. County staff has done an admirable job in their due diligence in accordance with the laws, policies, and procedures in a most meticulous fashion, finding that, quote, "No substantial evidence has been provided that would require the preparation of a supplemental or subsequent EIR," and no evidence has been presented that the decision of the planning director to grant the request of modified CUP was made in error. We agree with staff's decision to deny the appeal based on their analysis and conclusions, and ask that you follow their recommendation, and hope that you deny both appeals, approve the EIR addendum, and grant the conditional use permit. Thank you for your time.
Any questions of Mr. Smith? Thank you for your time, sir, appreciate it. Okay, Zach is back, I'm told. Mr. Schultz, please come forward, and then we'll return to the supporters of the appeal. Your name, Zach, for the record?
My name is Zach Schultz. Good afternoon now. My name's Zach, I'm currently a sophomore at CSU Channel Islands, and I've lived in Ventura County my whole life. As a business major, I've learned a great deal about understanding laws and policies that corporations have to follow in order to conduct good business practice. From what I have heard today, CRC has done everything in their power to work with the county staff and have done their due diligence in accordance with the laws, policies, and procedures. This commission has always done an excellent job of upholding the laws of the county and has stood with businesses and organizations that have worked through our county's procedures to gain the approval of their projects. Today, I ask that you side with the business that has followed the rules and has consistently done so in this county. Thank you.
Any questions of Mr. Zach? Thank you for waiting, sir, we appreciate your participation. All right, ladies and gentlemen, we'll go back to our standard operating procedure. I have three speaker cards that say they oppose the recommended action, which to me means they support the appeals. If that's not your understanding, please let me know. First one will be Helen Conley, followed by Todd Schuman. Gather, you're not Helen.
Hi, my name is Todd Schuman. Helen had to leave, unfortunately. She has...
When you see her again...
Family issues. So she gave me a statement, so I'm going to try and read that quickly. I'll go into my own. I have actually a very short statement that I just want to say my own concerns, but then I have another statement from the Chumash woman in Ojai who would like to have something read into the record. So I'm going to be trying to be as efficient as possible. So let's start with Helen's. Again, well, first of all, my name is Todd Schuman, I live in Camarillo, I work as substitute schoolteacher. I'm a humble activist, and I'm appealing to you in that fashion. Helen Conley, she is on the Board of Directors of Sea Frog, so this is her statement, and I just want to read it into the record. She first wants to, we first want to say that we are not opposed to all oil and gas drilling. We're supportive of responsible oil and gas drilling. We are not opposed to the elimination of jobs in this industry. And one thing, what we would really like to see in this analysis, that we really haven't seen, is kind of a broader analysis of jobs and any kind of EIR analysis. We don't really have good numbers on that. But anyhow, Helen's, I want to read Helen's statement now, and her statement concerns water. Staff analysis has indicated that 19 wells would take 10 acre-feet to drill, and that this demonstrates a significant, let's see, hold on. We believe this demonstrates a significant negative effect on the water resources in the area. Staff goes on to present its analysis over a 30-year effective term. The drilling takes 0.5 acre-feet of water over a very short period of time, less than a month. The use is not long-term, and thus, the storage capacity of the groundwater in the area to sustain this kind of water must be evaluated by a qualified hydrologist. We understand that the Upper Ojai has a total of 3,980 acre-feet of water in its groundwater storage as of 1999. There's an average recharge rate of 400 acre-feet per year. However, due to the four-year drought, there has been little or no recharge for four years, and thus, we don't know the current collective storage capacity of the wells in the Upper Ojai. What we do know is that most wells in Upper Ojai have dropped in water depth about 50 feet in the last year. Since there are numerous references in the record of water concerns between the college and the oil facility, we believe that this is an issue that must be studied, and the applicant should prove that the water storage capacity in the Upper Ojai is strong enough, sufficient enough to sustain a withdrawal of 10 acre-feet over a 19-month period. That concludes Helen Conley's statement. I would distribute it to you, but this is the only copy I've got. I want to just briefly say something on my behalf. I did attend the planning director meeting in mid-January. Again, just as a humble citizen to hear all this, the one thing that I am familiar with is methane global warming potentials. And I did bring up that issue to Mr. Baca as my statements in that record. And I emphasized that the Intergovernment Panel on Climate Change, in their 2013 fifth edition report, came up with new global warming potential coefficients for methane. And it used to, Environmental Protection Agency uses 21, that goes back to the 90s, and that is what has been used in his report. But the 2013 IPCC numbers are 28 to, between, either 28, if you're not using carbon-related feedbacks, or 34, if you are using carbon-related feedbacks. And that's over a 100-year interval. If you look at a 20-year interval, the global warming potential coefficients for methane go up to 84 and 86. But there's also an important thing in that study that has not been emphasized. There is no scientific basis for using either the 100-year interval or the 20-year interval. They're equivalent. And given that we have a lot of things happening on our planet, and it's heating very rapidly in many ways, there are actually some good arguments for actually using a 20-year interval, in which case, you're looking at global warming, a global warming molecule, a methane molecule as being equivalent to like 84 carbon dioxide molecules over a 20-year period. So I think what I recall when I was in this planning meeting was, I recommended that the planning staff use these different coefficients in a range, so that, here's the impact if we use this coefficient over this time cycle, here's what the impact would be if we look at it from this perspective. I don't believe we have seen that, and I would still encourage county planning staff to start incorporating a broader range of methane global warming potentials when they're doing these kinds of analysis. So we get a range, so you get kind of a better perspective of kind of how these things are impacting us. I'm going to be, try and be really quick on this one, and I'm running out of time, probably out of time. Would you please, there are five copies? This is a statement from Dawn Theding. She is associated with the Chumash Nation, and she lives in Ojai. So I just want to try and read through this quickly. Her concerns are, again, artifacts, Native American burial sites, and perhaps the inadequacy of the analysis. So I'm going to try and rip through this for you. So again, this is from Dawn Theding, she lives at 323 East Matilah Street in Ojai. Here's her statement. "For the record, I would like to convey my grave concern concerning this project's potentially significant impacts to cultural resources. The project area is in close proximity to a significant cultural resource, CAVEN404. Artifacts have been found northeast of the archaeological site, and previous research indicates a, quote, 'relatively high incidence of prehistoric sites,' unquote, in the area, and the potential for the occurrence of subsurface archaeological remains. This project lacks appropriate environmental review as required by CEQA. I respectfully request that you deny the modified CUP and approve the appeal for the following reasons. One, staff report claims that the project does not have the potential to substantially affect archaeological resources as existing drilling sites will be used. However, the report fails to discuss the impact of well installation, which involves ground-disturbing activities that may impact possible cultural resources. Two, staff report asserts that no archaeological resources are known to exist on-site, and no new significant environmental impacts that were not evaluated in the previous certified EIR have been identified. The report wholly fails to recognize potentially undiscovered buried resources. Additionally, the previous certified EIR, 1978 and 1984, failed to evaluate the impacts at drill sites number one and number seven. Drill site number one existed prior to 1978 and 1980, and the 1984 certified EIR was a focused EIR and only addresses the environmental consequences of providing access. Actual drilling and production of, and production of oil from the proposed new wells was not addressed. Staff response to the appeal stating that the use of previously graded pads reduces the potential for significant effects on cultural resources to a less-than-significant level is inappropriate, as the project design is not a mitigation measure for potential impacts, and the impact of drilling is not assessed. Three, determination of environmental impact and their significance cannot be made without the appropriate investigation of potential cultural resources by a qualified professional archaeologist and in consultation with recognized local Native American groups. There is no evidence that the Native American Heritage Commission, the State Trustee Agency for the Protection and Preservation of Native American Cultural Resources, has been contacted regarding this proposed project. Additionally, there is no evidence that a sacred lands file search has been performed or that tribal representatives were consulted. Further, as the evidence above the project is inconsistent with the Ventura County General Plan, which requires all discretionary development be assessed for potential cultural resource impacts. Based on the information provided in the certified EIR and in light of the whole record, there's substantial evidence to warrant further environmental review of this project as required by CEQA and Ventura County General Plan. Thank you."
Anything else, Tom?
That will be it.
Any questions to Todd? Thank you very much for your time, sir.
Thank you for letting me run over my three minutes.
I have a Max Whitman. And my understanding is that Mike Stubblefield had to leave?
Yes.
Okay. Want to make sure he, Max, your name, please?
Mark Whitman.
Oh, Mark, thank you.
Mark with a C. I'm a resident of Ojai, 2160 Baldwin Road in Ojai, and I'm an architect. And my wife and myself, we own two small inns, blue and emerald iguana inns in Ojai. And I know this, we're talking about the EIR and the appeal of that. And excuse me if my comments are coming from left field, but I'd like to talk a little bit about the big picture, subsequence of this oil operation and the existing oil operations. But I'd like to start off with a question, does oil serve us, or do we serve oil? And if oil serves us, then when do the negative effects of oil outweigh its benefits? And I think we heard from, you know, Casey Smith, Sandy Smith, about the economic benefits, and I think that's what's driving this whole thing. And we all understand that, and we all drive cars, and we're all dependent on oil, and so we understand that. But when I go, when we're talking about the negative effects, when I go out in nature personally, and I see, you know, the oil derricks out in nature, it completely destroys my experience when I go out into the wilderness and into that nature experience. I think it does for many others as well. And so there's probably thousands of people that these oil operations are affecting. And I also would like to talk about the people that are coming to Ojai and the economic benefits that's been created by the beauty of Ojai. And when people come to our inns to visit, one of the main draws to Ojai is going out in nature and the trails. And this is the premier spot of nature in Ojai. Going up and to see the punch bowls is like the most beautiful area in all of the Ojai area. And so here we are, plopping down these, I think we all agree, they're very ugly oil wells, right at the entrance, and destroying the experience of those people coming to Ojai, spending money and driving, is what's driving most of the Ojai economics, is the tourist industry, and so I'd like you to consider that as well. And lastly, I just want to talk about the consistency of decisions and my experience as an architect and developer, and how hard it is for me and for people to do projects in this county, and how hard it is to get a CUP for, like a bed and breakfast, for instance. And my in-laws had a nature center up in Ojai, the Taft Nature Center, the IC, EC, what they called it. And that permit, or that CUP, which they spent hundreds of thousands of dollars in improvements on facilities, was revoked by Yarra County because of violations. And I hear these guys are violating, making these violations, and they're asking for to expand, I just, there's just something wrong there. And I know money is driving this thing, and I know you guys got to make decisions based on that, but I just want to make that for the record. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Any questions to Mark? Okay, that's all the speaker cards I have supporting the appeal. So what now, we'll get into the applicant, okay? How would you guys like to handle it? I have Kelly Ehrsmann, I got, who'd like to go first?
I put in a speaker card.
Oh, what we shouldn't...
I'm not with Cal.
Okay, what was your name?
Kelly.
Oh, sorry, they put it in the wrong stack. We can let him talk.
Well, actually, what I'd like to do is let kind of all the members of the public speak, and then, and then, actually, if it's a pleasure of the chair and the commission...
All right.
speak, and then, and then, actually, if it's a pleasure to chair in the commission, and that, that way they can, they can.
Come and go. Okay. Kelly?
Yes, if you recommend it.
You marked down recommended, you support the recommended action, that's why you went in the wrong pile.
Oh, I got it in the wrong spot?
Yeah.
Sorry about that.
I'll change that for you.
Yeah. My name is Kelly Ayersman, I'm with Seneca Resources Corporation, and we own most of the surface that's, relies on a CUP 3344. And really, I'm here today to support, uh, support the permit.
Oh, Mark, okay.
That's all I had.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Then I'll, I'll call these cards, as I have them in order, if, if, if you represent the actual applicant, uh, okay. I have a Tony Skinner, followed by, oh boy, Shane Werner, I think it is.
That's it, Shane Werner, you're right. Good afternoon, I guess it is now. My name is Tony Skinner, and I am the Executive Secretary Treasurer of the Tri-County Building and Construction Trades Council, which covers over 7,000 union construction workers in Ventura, Santa Barbara, San Luis Obispo Counties. I'm here to voice our support of CRC for a modified conditional use permit. Ventura County, especially the western part of the county, was basically founded by two industries, agriculture and oil. Domestic oil production is a main cog in keeping Ventura County's vibrant economy, not only with construction and maintenance workers, but also suppliers, contractors, and service providers. As CRC is the first of California oils to come to terms with our state building trades on a statewide PLA, this will put many of our out-of-work members to work in the years to come, and will also allow the trades to open up their training programs to more young men and women interested in becoming a skilled craftsperson. On another note, we've been reading all about fracking, which has become the buzzword to kill oil production on the central coast. There will be no hydraulic fracking or well stimulation treatments at these sites. Any such additional extraction technology would require additional approvals. And finally, I'd like to add that since this is a field that's already in operation, there should be no disturbing any new areas or habitats. I ask for your, for you to approve this conditional use permit, and I thank you for giving me the time to speak.
Any questions to Tony? Thank you for coming. Shane Werner, followed by Rod Cobos. Your name, please, sir?
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, um, Planning Commission staff, first of all, appreciate everything you do for the county, and want to thank you for the opportunity to speak in front of you today. My name is Shane Werner, I'm the Business Manager for the IBW, International Brotherhood of Electrical Workers. I represent some of the finest construction workers in the county, maybe not according to some of my other partners over here, but I think so. And, um, we've been here in the county since 1937. Um, yes, we are a labor union, but we're very involved with this community, kinda give you some quick background, whether it was the devastating slide, it happened a lot in Cheeta, um, our members offered our union hall to make sure those families had a place to stay in the evening with safety, we did many food drives for that community, clothing drives, um, here recently, in the last few years, we had Jim Monahan come to our office, along with the building trades, along with several county supervisors, want to do something with the Veterans Memorial here locally. Um, all the flag poles you see out in front, along with flags, was all donated by the building trades, paid for, and all labor donated by the building trades, so it was bought and paid for by all of us and our affiliates. And the only, what I'm, the point I'm trying to make is, we're very much part of this community, that's just two things we're involved with, let alone everything else we're involved with on a weekly basis. We care very much about this community, we love the people in this community, um, and we also care very much for our environment. Uh, we're also very much for good corporate stewards, and the IBW is fully behind CRC, fully behind their management team, and we're fully behind them getting applicable permits so they can move forward. Uh, you obviously heard earlier, um, some of what we felt, feel are good advantages to move this project forward, um, but I just want to reiterate, CRC supports safety, training, local hire, skilled craftsmen doing their work. We're not the lowest paid out there, which tells you kind of what they're committing to with us. Uh, we're trained. Um, not only that, we're also partnering with our local military leaders, um, through the agreement with CRC and the building trades. We'll be recruiting our veterans that are coming back from, uh, several wars, and giving them meaningful jobs, and putting them on those projects, and get them direct entry to our apprenticeship programs. Bottom line, this is a real win-win situation for our county. Uh, we're gonna work hand-in-hand with CRC. Believe me, if we're seeing safety problems out there, any kind of operational issues, we'll be working hand-in-hand with CRC to get those improved, get them, and to get them corrected. Um, and they're also making a commitment to do that by using us through the building trades, and using apprenticable crafts for that. They're not hiring from the street, they're hiring through us, and your local constituents. Um, with that, I thank you for your time, if you have any questions?
Any questions? Thank you very much, appreciate your participation. Rod Cobos, followed by Michael Lopez.
Good afternoon, Rodney Michael Cobos, for the record. I am a Santa Paula resident, and been a county resident for over 46 years. Chairman Weisner, Commissioners, uh, I represent the plumbers and pipe fitters, welders, and apprenticeses of Ventura County. I first start off by thanking, uh, the commission and county staff for all their preparation in today's presentation, and also their thoughtful consideration in responding to the appellant's concerns. I rise in support of CRC's request for a modified conditional use permit. I'm an affiliate of the Ventura County Building Trades Council, and many of our members in the past years have raised families, made a decent living, and all this done on the wages they earn from, from the oil industry. Over the years, we've seen kind of the pendulum swing from, going from putting profits before people. And today, we have a, a good opportunity to move this, this, uh, project forward, and, and doing just that, and bringing back those, putting people before profits. These jobs in the oil industry are still around today, and over the years, we've seen , uh, different industries have driven workers to work for substandard wages and benefits. And this results in many of our citizens often requiring the use of social services, and putting a huge strain on our, on our public safety net. The building trades, over the years, have always advocated for good-paying job, construction And we've also seen over the years where, where profits have always been, or profits have been put before our environment. And as we've seen today, in Mr. Baca's presentation, many of the concerns regarding protecting our environment by these wells have been researched, investigated, and the appellant's concerns have been addressed, and ultimately been found without merit. Approving CRC's permit would bring back these good-paying, family-sustaining careers back to our county. The building trades, like, uh, my brother Warner had mentioned, that we do bring a locally-trained and safe workforce. As we've seen a decline in oil prices over the recent months, many of these unemployed workers are looking to going back to work. And what better way in providing, what better way of going back to work in providing a good career that pays decent wages and benefits? So I urge this commission, I respectfully urge this commission, to move this permit forward, and also bringing back, again, uh, construction jobs to members of our community. Thank you.
Any questions, Rod? Thank you for your time, sir, we appreciate your input. Michael Lopez, followed by Steve Greig. Your name, Mike?
My name is Michael Lopez, uh, like to thank the Chair and the Board for entertaining this issue. Uh, I really wanna extend an unbelievable amount of kudos to staff for going through this incredibly vigorous research to give us the straight dope on what's going on here. It's astounding to me that, that the opposition or the, describes it being non-contentious and then tear staff apart. I like the idea that we follow the rules, and that we have the proper letters behind our name to verify that these issues are straightforward. I'm from Santa Barbara, I'm with the Pipe Trades up in the Santa Barbara area, we're dealing with an oil issue right now, and the one thing that we're starting to see in the petroleum industry in our area, is an unbelievable commitment to stewardship of the ecology and the local areas. One thing that I find very annoying is, when you can't find something substantive, you throw a lot of dirt up in the air and, and try to distract attention. In our area, what we're, what we're trying to see now is, is the focus is shifting on to, uh, how quickly response times work. Response times were three hours, it's unbelievable. In this instance here, we're talking about vulnerability to condors. I'm a 17th-generation Santa Barbarian, my family goes back to Santa Barbara to 1792. We are the Chumash people that were talked about by the earlier spokesman. I don't have a problem with a site that was described to me that the work was done, that there's an issue about digging up my distant relatives. I'm worried about my relatives that are walking around the streets today trying to find work and gain full employment. That's what I'm worried about. We talked about concern about the condors. You know, this facility was in that position for 25 years, these condors flew next to it, maybe they like it. Right? I mean, uh, I don't see that we're pushing them out, I don't see that this is a viable reason to be against this kind of an issue. I think if you look at, at, at what we're trying to accomplish here in proper stewardship of the, of the resource, this is the most highly-regulated, uh, industry in, uh, in the world, this industry's the most highly-regulated here. If we don't get it here, it goes to some of our resources offshore, and some of them are not necessarily our political allies or friends. I support, uh, this, this endeavor, and I hope that it moves forward, and again, I thank staff very much for their hard work. Thank you so much.
Thanks, Mike. Any questions to Mike? Okay. No? Steve?
I'm with the option.
Okay. Okay. Martin Rodriguez, followed by Greg Safane.
Good afternoon, Chair, Commission, Staff. I'm Martin Rodriguez, I'm Business Rep for the Ironworkers Local 433. I live here in Ventura. I, uh, spend quite a lot of time in the back country, hunting, hiking, et cetera. I know that area well, I see the condors, but this economic engine we're trying to stifle, I realize it's not about just the money, it's being good stewards of the land, and I see our friends here point, you know, they do want to be good stewards of the land, but stymying a project like this that brings benefits to the community so we can afford to go back out in the back country, you know, bowing arrows and hiking boots and packs, all that stuff's expensive, you gotta have a job, it's, uh, you go for a day, uh, but that's about it, you know, I mean, a pair of kids just don't cut it anymore. And, uh, I think, uh, CRC has done due diligence, along with the commission, I think the addendum process does work, and I think we need to move forward this project. Time is of the essence, the longer we wait to push a project forward, there's, there's people out there waiting for jobs right now, apprentices. Uh, we brought in 15 new guys here in the last few months, uh, from the helmets-to-hard-hats projects here in Ventura County area, these guys don't have four years to wait for a project to get pushed through, or longer. I firmly, along with my organization, support this. Thank you.
Thank you. Greg Safane, followed by Chris Collier.
My name is Greg Safane, and I represent the Coastal Energy Alliance. Uh, we are a local coalition that works to represent our fellow members of the community that work in the energy industry. Ventura County has always been a place where any business can be a vital part, not only the economy, but also our community. CRC today has provided you with the required information that will allow them the ability to practice their business in our county today. They have always safeguarded Venturaans and the environment of their operations. We have seen CRC as an active and supportive community partner to the businesses and nonprofits in the community, the Boys and Girls Club is one that I can name for you today. We have the, we have confidence in you and your staff that you will continue to protect the laws and the good business practices that has made Ventura County the best place for fair business today. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Chris Collier, followed by Sandra Burkhardt.
You know, I just realized it says good morning. Good afternoon, Chair and Commissioners. Uh, my name's Chris Collier. I'll start by saying, I'm born and raised resident of Ojai, I like to hike a lot. Uh, it's been mentioned by some of the others that support to deny all this appeal, that we also enjoy the environment, so I want to start and say that, uh, it's not, I don't, I don't want those that support the appeal to get to monopolize the fact that we don't care about the environment, we do, we are good environmental stewards, but that's not the point of my speech today. I'm here on behalf of the Camrio Chamber of Commerce, I'm the incoming Chair of the Government Affairs Committee, and so I'm, as a local business owner, I'm asking you to deny this appeal. CRC has done everything they need to do to supply the information, um, to this, to the staff, and the professional, well-trained and certified staff has done everything they need to show that this should be approved, and the appeal should be denied. Really, it undermines the state and federal processes we have, this is one of the most stringent places to produce oil and gas in the country, if not the world. If we don't adhere to our processes, what do we have? You know, we use more than we produce here in California, that's already been said today. If we don't produce locally, we're gonna buy oil from places like the Middle East, where they not, don't always align with us. I think that, uh, we need to do this locally, and we need to do it now. VACIDA also talked about, Sandy Smith, uh, from VACIDA talked about the benefits, the 12,000 jobs, the $2.7 billion in the economy, the $534 million in state and local government revenues, those are really significant numbers, they need to be taken into consideration. Also, the labor groups are here to support, it's good for jobs, it's good for our local economy, so please deny this appeal. Finally, while I'm up here, I just wanted to make a point about the process. Uh, I was at the Board of Supervisors last week, and staff was asked how long, how, what the estimated cost was to date of some of the appeals that have come forward, and it's been over $50,000 in staff time. We are spending significant amount of taxpayer dollars fighting these appeals that are just rambling on into lots of different places. Uh, we need to have some structure, it needs not fair to the public, uh, we need to make sure that when the public's here to speak, that there's some kind of a structure to the hearing. Uh, you know, a lot of us have to go back to work at some point, and we want to make sure that we have a process in place so we know that, you know, we can block off a certain amount of time and be able to get our points in, uh, to this commission. So, please deny the appeal, and let's also work on this process. Thanks a lot, have a good day.
Thank you very much. Sandra Burkhardt, followed by Nancy Lindholm, and then my final speaker card is Lynn Jensen.
Good afternoon, Chair Weisner, Members of the Commission. My name is Sandra Burkhardt, and I represent the Western States Petroleum Association, it's a nonprofit trade association that represents the oil and gas industry. Three points today that I wanted to make. First one is in regards to this process. Uh, this is the first appeal process through the Planning Commission that I've sat through, I was at the, um, Board Hearing last week on an appeal, and one of my observations from sitting here today is just that there seems to not be much process to the process. There were a lot of things that were discussed today on the appeal side that just didn't seem to have any relevance to what we're talking about today, and I think having the public process be a part of this is critical, so I would just like to ask that maybe in the future you can look at putting some sort of standards in place for how an appeal is handled, uh, maybe put a time limit. I understand they paid $1,000 to, for the appeal, but there should be some standard or process, and then for folks that come that take time off work, they can plan, okay, the first hour, or two hours, or however long you're gonna allow, is for the appeal itself, for the appellant to come up here and present, and then maybe at around 11 o'clock, or whenever, you know, you can say that's when we're gonna have our public comment, and then that way we don't have people like today that had to leave. But I do want to thank Chair Weisner for allowing a few folks that needed to leave to speak, but just a observation and maybe a recommendation going forward if we could look at maybe some sort of a process for this. Uh, second comment is really my disappointment in the appellants today, I didn't hear a lot of actual factual information to back up the appeal. I did hear them say that they wanted to be collaborative today and not argumentative, but then I also sat through them insulting and belittling and just being quite rude to the planning staff today, and so that was surprising to me. And so, um, I want to actually commend planning staff, because I've read through the staff report, and, and they seem to have the only true justifications and science and backing for why they made the decision they made, it seems like a very simple, clear-cut decision today, based upon what they presented, that this appeal should be denied. And so I just want to thank the staff, um, the industry doesn't always support their decisions, but- The industry doesn't always support their decisions, but I think we should respect what they do. They certainly have a lot of experience doing this. And so, again, I didn't hear any facts or science to support the appeal, so I feel the appeal should be denied. Thank you.
Thank you. Nancy, followed by Ms. Jensen. Sit down, Counselor.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair and members of the Commission. I'm Nancy Lindholm. I'm the CEO of the Oxnard Chamber of Commerce. And I'd like to echo a lot of the comments that the previous speakers rendered who are supporting the recommended action. I have to admit, I didn't read the entire 800-page staff report for this item, because I do have a day job. Staff has obviously invested a great deal of time and expertise in this appeal. They've responded to all of the issues, and we support the staff decision and recommendation to deny the appeal. And I just wanted to add that I'm actually offended that the applicant would ask for a refund of the $1,000 fee, when they've obviously eaten up tens of $1,000 in staff time. Thanks for your consideration.
Thank you. Lynn? Then Steve, you're up, if you want to.
Good afternoon, Chair Westner and Planning Commission. Thank you for allowing me to testify today. I am here, Lynn Jensen, on behalf of COLAB, the Coalition of Labor, Agriculture, and Business. We have 400 members countywide, many businesses who hold conditional use permits that go through this long and arduous process with the county. And we commend the county planning director and their staff for their careful and thorough analysis of this project. And as we don't usually support specific projects, but we felt today that this unfounded appeal, unfounded appeals such as this really need to be countered for the greater good of the business community. This project, as you know, is a modification of a CUP, which is an existing setting under SEQA, and that needs to be taken into account. It's a continuation of oil and gas operations and the drilling of 19 wells from four existing drill pads. The drill pads have been there on this Ferndale lease, and they've been there since 1971. Oil operations have been ongoing, and the wells have been continuously drilled over this period and completed through several CUP modifications, environmental impacts being evaluated throughout its history. It's not like one of these old CUPs that people have been talking about that never had any environmental analysis. It's had environmental analysis all along. And actually, these 19 wells were previously authorized and previously evaluated in an EIR. There's no new grading, there's no vegetation removal in the current modification, and the production will be transported through existing pipelines to existing off-site facilities. The two EIRs in 1978 and 1984, and the EIR addendum in 2013, have evaluated the potential impacts of the project. On existing oil pads with existing roads and facilities, the environmental impacts are generally less, and especially with experienced operators like CRC. County planning staff is recommending that the decision-maker find that there's no substantial evidence to warrant the preparation of subsequent or supplemental EIR. After a review of SeaFrog's 10 appeal issues, we believe there's a basic lack of understanding in those appeals of the oil operations of this county, the rules, the permit requirements, and the state and federal laws. The appeal points are statements. They lack really specific evidence to back up the claims. And the Los Padres Forest Watch appeal is a statement that includes, again, no real evidence. We concur with county staff that the appeal issues are without merit and do not constitute substantial evidence that supplemental environmental analysis is needed after this. There are three points I just want to make about those appeal points. One of them is that we particularly find the appeal issue number one of SeaFrog pertaining to freshwater intrusion reflects an often-used fear tactic that is pervasive in those who oppose oil production. I just want to quote from the county staff report. It said, "There have been 12,000 oil wells drilled in the Ventura Basin. No evidence has been presented or identified that degradation of groundwater resources in Ventura County has resulted from the installation and operation of oil and gas wells. The well construction and design standards that are enforced by Dogger have been proven to be effective for a century." And I think that's really important to talk about here, because they're always talking about these possible effects of drilling wells through aquifers, and there's just no evidence that it's ever happened here. In addition, I personally, this issue about the hiking trail is very problematic for me, as we are looking perhaps at a recreational trail through the middle of the Santa Clara Valley through agriculture. And when you look back at the history here, the project owner has collaborated and provided a portion of the trail, it's actually on private land, to allow the hikers through, and they provide maintenance for the trail as well. And if hikers then become entitled to such a trail and then oppose the operations within the drill sites along the trail, there's just going to be more opposition by such entities that might give private property to support public trails such as these in the future. And I also wanted to point out a point about the landscaping, the landscaping that they're talking about, which would require water, which is in short supply. And the reason for supplying that landscaping would be so hikers would not see these oil rigs as you go on a five-minute walk-through? I mean, for me, families and kids need to see what provides the energy in this county and provide the energies for their cars that they drive through to get to the trailhead. I don't believe it's unsightly, and I don't think that it's necessary to do that. On the third issue, I just want to talk briefly on the condors. The Los Padres Forest Watch admitted that the applicant has implemented most of the recommendations of the U.S. Fish and Wildlife that they have offered. And then Ventura County in the staff report stated that there is no mitigation measures or alternatives that would substantially reduce the significant effects of the project that the project proponents declined to adopt. And so there was some comment about them not adopting some of the, perhaps some of the mitigation measures, and that is not the case. And the county has new mitigation measures that were developed based on the recommendations of U.S. Fish and Wildlife, and they are shown in the EIR addendum for the project. Oil wells and condors have coexisted throughout history. There's not been any evidence submitted by the appellants that condors have been impacted by the oil activities in the past in Ventura County, and so we don't see any significant evidence there. So we support the planning director's decisions and recommend that the Planning Commission approve the EIR addendum, deny both of the appeals, and deny any refund of the appeal fees. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay, before you come up, Steve, Madam Clerk, do I have other speaker cards? One more. Teresa Hirschberg?
Hirschberg, yes.
All right. Got it the first time out.
Thank you, Chairman. Thank you, Commissioners. My name is Teresa Hirschberg. I'm a professional geologist licensed with the State of California. I have a bachelor's degree from Arizona State, a master's degree from UCLA. My area of expertise is the Ventura Basin and the geology of it. I work for Petrollog, who is a mud logging company. Currently, we don't have any projects going on with CRC, so we don't have a true vested interest in this project. But my other experience is I've done both environmental and petroleum work. And part of what I noted sitting here is that the due diligence on the appeal side isn't quite there. They're pointing at various things. For example, the condor landings, as I'm sitting here, I noticed that condors didn't appear to land on the wells. The well sites were pink, the condor landing sites were elsewhere. If I were doing an environmental report on a property, that's off elsewhere. I can't justify saying that that site's contaminated based on what I'm seeing. Okay? The landscape, we're in a drought, which is fine, you know? We've been in a drought for a long time. So having a mesh, alls I see is that's an area for graffiti. You want to add hikers. If you're going to shut down the oil stuff, you might as well shut down the hikers. Hikers and the fish, hikers are going swimming, hikers have sunscreen on. They're going to pollute and contaminate the water. Okay? So you have to judge where you're going to stop, what you're going to do. I think the due diligence by the planning director and her staff has been excellent. Having done environmental stuff, it's a lot of research. It's a lot of work, and you have to truly go through the details and understand what you're looking at and how it's going to affect everybody that's out there. You can't just say, because you don't like something, we're going to shut it down. So in that being said, I completely agree with the staff and their conclusions, and thank you.
Thank you for speaking. Any questions? Thank you for your patience.
Thank you. No problem.
All right, Steve.
Good afternoon. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I am Steve Gregg, and I'm with California Resources Corporation, CRC. Mainly, we're here today to answer questions of the Commission. I think the staff has done a terrific job of kind of not only going through the project application and addressing some of the issues in that application, but also addressing the concerns and the issues raised by the appellants. In the interest of time we're available, a little bit of background, just so you know, California Resources was formed last year, 2014. Occidental Petroleum Board of Directors made the decision to spin off their California operations. They did that effective December 1st of last year. So we are now California Resources that we have what formerly were the Occidental Petroleum operations up and down the state. We are the largest oil and gas producer in the state of California. And so that's a little bit of background in terms of ownership and who we are. We have staff here available to answer specific questions on the project, if there are any, and I can answer questions about generally if you have them. But at this point, I think we are more than anything just willing to support staff and answer questions.
Okay. Any questions of Mr. Gregg at this point?
Would you like to respond to any of the points that were raised during the testimony by the appellants?
Actually, what my preference would be is to allow staff to respond, because I know that Brian, Mr. Baca-
Yeah, but that'll come last.
Then I think I would wait till, I mean, I guess I would like to hold up an opportunity to respond to additional questions, if you have them, of us specifically, if the staff doesn't address them.
So you're declining me?
Unless you have specific questions. I mean, in terms of, they mentioned a lot of things. If you have specific questions of us, then I'd be happy to answer them. If it's about the appeal, then I would defer to staff.
One of the things that they have, a point taken. One of the things that was raised was that there are numerous violations, and as such, we shouldn't even be hearing this, because if there's outstanding violations, you don't get to come in and ask to expand. What do you say to that criticism?
Yep. A little bit of background. So Occidental purchased this property in 2006, so now we are CRC. We purchased all of the Vintage operations, Vintage being a wholly owned subsidiary of Occidental. Over that period of time, we've been going through all of those assets. There was a large number of assets. It's taken more time than we would like to, than we wish it had. But in that process, we've looked at a number of things. We've improved our operations. We've included, integrated mechanical integrity program. We've installed additional monitoring. We've installed additional inspections. So I think through the process, we have identified areas where we can improve the operations and the facilities, and we've done that.
With regard to that pipe overcrossing the creek, are there shut-off valves?
There are shut-off valves on both sides. They're not automatic shut-off valves, but there are shut-off valves on both sides. And then just the one thing that wasn't clear, when you look at the photo, that the pipe that you're showing is actually the casing. So the pipe is inside that. It's a double-walled pipe, so that in the event the pipeline were to leak, it's actually contained in that casing. So when you look at the photo, what appears to be the pipe kind of exposed to the environment is actually a containment for the pipe that's inside that.
And how often do you go through with a pig or whatever to monitor that?
We hydrotested that line back in 2014, and it passed the hydrotest with-
And what's-
December 2014.
Okay. And how often is that kind of monitoring performed?
On that line or any line?
On the line that, on the line in question?
Oh, I don't know when the last one was done, prior to December 2014.
Is this something that's ongoing, or is this something that you just did because you purchased the asset?
Oh, I see. There's, I mean, for most, for all of our operations, there are requirements in place that we have to do, whether it's a Dogger requirement, Department of Oil and Gas and Geothermal Resources, whether it's a condition of our permit, whether it's a condition of the APCD. We have, as an industry and as a company and as our operations, are regulated, and we have a kind of a long list of compliance-type inspections and monitoring that we do, and we do those according to those permits.
Understood, but let me play devil's advocate here. You're familiar with the spill in Refugio, I assume?
Yes.
What happened there, and why can't it happen to you?
You know what? I don't know what happened in Refugio, so I can't talk to it. It's that pipeline is owned and operated by Plains Old American Pipeline. I can tell you what we do. We do inspect our facilities. We inspect our pipelines. We do what's required under the regulations and go beyond that. So I really can't comment, because it's not our pipeline, not my operations.
Fair enough. One of the other criticisms is that Hemp #72 well is under investigation. What's your knowledge about that?
Actually, I'll let kind of one of our engineers, Bruce Carter, respond to that. It's, I mean, it's in terms of where that well's at, if that's okay?
Sure.
Just give us your name when you hit to the podium.
Sure. Good afternoon. My name is Bruce Carter with California Resources Corporation. I'm the guy who's been sitting in the audience all day with my name up there on the corner. So with respect to the Hemp 72 line, that's on a separate lease, where we take all our produced water, and it goes into a license permitted by Dogger injection well. There was some questions, and I'm going to defer to our geologist over there. And we worked with Dogger as well as county staff with respects to the issue that came up. That well that's in question is not part of this permit. It's on a separate permit. However, it is not, it's on the EPA list right now. It should be removed. And as of this week, it hasn't been removed yet, but it's supposed to be removed based on the requirements. And Brian can, you know, verify that. He's also had discussions with Bruce Hesson over at Dogger.
So there's no, so there's no well that's under investigation that's connected with the-
Not that line, no. Not this lease, not that one. It's on the list, but it should not be on the list. We're talking about the Hemp 72 well, I believe, Commissioner, that you're-
That's the one that was raised, but I'm just wondering, I'm nosing around to see if there's anything else.
Anything else county-wide?
That's on the list that is connected to this project.
That's not connected to this project, no. That was the only one.
All right. One of the other things that was raised was that the drain should be considered part of the project. There was a photograph of a drain going directly into Santa Paula Creek. Do you know which one I'm talking about? It was up there briefly.
Yes, Commissioner Westner, Commissioner Adukas, that photo. I believe, and I'm going to defer to our consultant, Liliana with Interact, that drain system takes the stormwater that runs off the cliff face that's behind Pad 7, which is what we're talking about, and then that drains into the creek. Is that correct, Liliana?
Yes, I believe that-
Oh, you have to come-
You have to come up. Correct. It's a diversion. But-
Understand, we're not trying to be pushy about this, but this is a recorded proceeding, and there are other people listening, so that's the microphone you need to come to.
My name is Liliana Miko, and I work for Interact, and I'm a regulatory and environmental services manager, and I'm a consultant for CRC. We believe that the drain that was described on the photo, it is part of the collection system of the water that drains from the cliff that is on the south side of the pad, bypasses the pad underneath, and drains the water that, so should the water drain from the mountain that is on the south side, not impact the pad, but bypass and drain further out.
Okay. Is that part of this permit application, then?
I don't know if you're-
It's existing.
It's existing and part of the existing setting.
Okay. Then I'm not sure with the-
But it's still part of the oil and gas operation.
Okay. One other question following up. Are tanker trucks allowed on-site? One of the criticisms was that there's no truck traffic, and yet there was a picture of a truck. Are you allowed some trucks?
We are allowed some trucks. And the photo, and I do apologize for texting and hearing, but I was texting our operations guys out there. And as Steve had mentioned, part of our mechanical integrity program and upgrades that we're going through everything, actually, yesterday, we were performing a hydrotesting of a line, and that tanker truck was there to collect the water that was in the line that was just tested.
Okay. Okay. Last one, I promise. On this picture, I'd forgotten. It shows ponding on the surface water during a rain event. Should that be? Do you want to see it?
I see it, but I know that, I was just out there Thursday, and we've done improvements. We're continuing to improve the assets throughout the basin that we have. So, although that shows ponding, we had a recent rain event, and one of the questions I had was, did we have ponding in that specific area from that event? I was unable to get the answer back in the last, you know, couple hours. We just saw that photo. So, I will, hopefully, if we have a lunch break or we keep going, I'll be able to have that.
Well, there shouldn't be ponding, right?
No. But if you have a major, major event, you're gonna see some water.
Yeah. I don't know how major the event was back in March. I mean, I know my roof leaked.
Yeah.
It was major to me. But anyway, so you're saying that there are improvements to the site-
The pad's engineered to, you know, contain within-
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear. What?
The pad is designed to handle the stormwater and keep it on-site.
So, ponding is acceptable?
Let's say you have a 50-year, 100-year storm, you're gonna have some water that's gonna pond a little bit on the site, and that's taken care of within the pad and the engineering design of the pad.
So, it's acceptable to have ponding on-site with the-
I'd have to like a look at the photo. I'm not sure if that was like in the sunlight right after a storm or-
Do you want to look at the photo?
Yeah, if I could take a look at the photo.
Madam Carter?
Sure.
Here you go.
Yeah.
Bruce, she's got a copy for you.
Thanks.
Excuse me. Isn't it the case that there is a berm there to hold in not just water, but in case of a spill, that it would be held on-site rather than going off-site?
So, the question is, is there gonna be ponding of water?
Obviously, there's ponding of water. Is that, is that something that's designed and acceptable? This is just something that was submitted to us, and I'm following up.
Yeah.
I think that the way to respond, this is Steve Gregg again with CRC. I think that, a couple of things. First of all, yes, there's a berm around the entire site. In the event of, what we don't want is for, to have kind of runoff of that site in the event of a storm, if at some point in time, there's been any kind of contamination. We also make sure that we do maintenance, so there is no contamination sitting on-site. So, we kind of do that. And then, we do maintenance of the operations periodically anyway, which is what's probably happened since this photo and then the last rain. So, and this was, I believe he said, March or February. That, you know, that's, it's one of those things that, yes, when we get rain, there's gonna be some standing water. It just, there's no other way around it if you want to continue to keep flow from staying on the pad. On the other hand, we've designed it in a way that it goes to a collection site, and if it's a lot of water, we can remove it. So, hopefully, that helps. So, this was, maintenance has been done on the site since February, but another event like this, it shouldn't pond like this.
Okay. One of the other things were these violations. They were said that there hasn't been compliance review done, that they, the equipment was supposed to be painted, that there was supposed to be graffiti abatement, six-foot-high fencing, locked gates, and landscaping. Do you want to answer any of those charges that your project's out of compliance?
Sure. Yes. I don't know. These things are dangling. With respect to the landscaping, one of the issues that we had, obviously, there was photos, and staff was out there months ago, that the screening was not adequate. We have since gone out there. When we've gone through this site, we're going through all our sites, we've addressed that. You saw the screening that's put around the fencing. To address the six-foot fence issue, I did get a text back from our guys. It's a six-foot fence. The problem is that the hiking trail is slightly above where the fence is, so we would have to raise it another, you know, put in additional two or three feet of fencing in order to do that. But it, right now, it meets the six-foot fencing requirement, and that's six feet of screening. But as the hikers walk by, that trail, if you looked off to the right side of that picture, it dips down a little, and where we, we can't put the fence on the trail. So, that's the fence issue. I'm sorry, what was the last?
It was compliance reviews not being done. They were supposed to be compliance reviews, and there was only one performed. Do you guys have compliance reviews with the county? Do you have a monitor that comes out and sees the cheering compliance?
Yeah. That's essentially the county's position. We, as was stated, there was a deposit and reimbursement agreement in 2008, and then, again, when the application was submitted in 2013, they went, you know, they went through all of our conditions, and the analysis that was performed by Mr. Dabrolowski and Mr. Baca encompassed not only the permit conditions and compliance with those permit conditions, but all of the zoning ordinances and policies that are in place. So, we feel that although there, if you're referring to the exact compliance review, I think staff has gone above and beyond the normal compliance review in the analysis of this project that was put before you, including the addendum to the EIR, the Planning Director Hearing, and then here before this hearing at the Planning Commission, and the entire record was considered, including the past EIRs and all those. And I would defer to Mr. Baca if he had a question with respect to, or answer with respect to the compliance review.
Understood. It's not chair doing. It's the county's. So, the color of the facilities, the graffiti and lock gates were the outstanding ones.
Okay. So, the graffiti, if you've seen the before and after pictures, there was graffiti. We occasionally get graffiti. There, if you continue hiking up the trail to the punch bowls, I see that face, so you know how much graffiti is all over the rocks. We have had issues with graffiti. We have painted over all of that. So, I was out there last Thursday, and we submitted the new photos showing no graffiti, and then, as soon as last Monday, we had somebody come in and tag again. We extended the fence up the backside. We keep it all, we keep the entire fence locked. We installed new surveillance cameras out there to try to prevent that, and still, there was some yellow spray paint that, we talked to our operations guys. Soon as we were able to do that, and you could go out there today, they just painted it the other day. I think it was Tuesday. They repainted over the freshest graffiti that happened on Monday.
Yeah, and the new fencing stuff is gonna be a target too.
There's nothing on the new fencing, and I say that, yeah.
Yeah.
And there is a problem on that trail. If you continue maybe a mile up that trail, the rocks-
I don't know if you've been up there recently, but the graffiti on the rocks is just, it's mind-blowing how bad it is.
It's terrible.
It's terrible. All right. Thank you.
Any other questions of Bruce? Commissioner Callie?
Are there some, can you address any safety protocols for, in the event of a flood? In the event that we have one of those 100-year experiences, and the storm has been going on, and the water's rising, do you have some safety measures? Would you be, you know, shutting down the pipeline or doing anything if it looks like it's going to be approaching a critical level?
Sure. Commissioner Westner, Commissioner Callie. The way, if we have one of those events or another type that would create a disaster, we have operators that are on 24 hours a day, going around all their leases, looking for any problems, monitoring, you know, the instrumentation. If something does happen, then that would be brought up to our field operations supervisor, and a determination would be made, is it safe to continue operating that particular piece of equipment, given, you know, if there's a major flood of it? I think it was referred earlier in 2005. I think Mr. Baca had mentioned that, you know, the site was engineered very well and did its job, and the 2005 storm was very significant. If you're gonna ask the follow-up question, did we shut the pipeline down during that 2005 event? I do not have the answer to that question. Yeah. It was, that was three years before we owned it.
Okay. My question is more of a giant boulder falls and gets, you know, crushes the pipeline. Is there somebody there to shut it down?
If a boulder falls on the pipeline, it's gonna be shut down. It is fairly high. That would have to be a pretty substantial boulder, but any additional questions?
Any other questions? Commissioner Rodriguez?
Just out of curiosity, who at CRC, for yourself, is responsible for ensuring that the requirements of the CUP are complied with? And how is that responsibly conveyed to line staff that might be doing inspections? Or are you the appropriate person to ask that question to?
Sure. Chair Westner and Commissioner Rodriguez. I would be that person that would be working with staff to implement all of the new conditions that are being put upon us, and then I would work with other individuals within our organization, our corporation and the field guys, to make sure that all this gets done.
So, you're the person responsible for compliance with the conditions of the CUP?
I would be the one, correct.
Okay. Obviously, CRC has just come on, come on scene via Vintage, via Occidental Petroleum. I sense by some of the photographs and some representations that have been made that there's a lot done recently. I assume it's, I'm presuming that it's since the application period began-
That is correct.
-that things have been brought up to snuff to comply with the requirements under the CUP. I guess in my mind, as I sit here, why is it taking an application to get those things done or corrected, if in fact, there was a plan in place, an inspection process in place internally to make sure that compliance was occurring?
Right. I think, and I've been here for several months, and that's what I've been hired to do. So, I think from a corporation's standpoint, the fact that I'm here doing all this, it speaks to that event, and we're going through the fields, not just this one, and addressing all of these types of issues, making sure that we're coming up to snuff. And as Steve mentioned earlier, CRC is the new corporation going forward. We're taking a new look at all of the assets that we have and bringing them up to speed. There have been some issues in the past, and we are actively addressing those issues. And as you can see from the photos, and also, I believe that staff has been out there probably in the last month or so, we are addressing these issues as fast as we can as they come up. And we hope to be, you know, obviously, in full compliance with all these conditions in order to, you know, when we secure the inauguration's zoning clearance, we have to satisfy all those conditions prior to that and demonstrate that.
The original CUP call for inspections, on-site inspections, separate part of compliance review, compliance review, as happens with staff. I interpret that to be physical on-site inspections after two years, and then every five years subsequently.
We would welcome those inspections for county staff to come out.
Yeah. I mean, my point is, those inspections, there's no evidence, with the exception of one document apparently, that those inspections were occurring with irregularity. The concern I have, as I sit here, is continue compliance with the CUP and those requirements if in when, if in fact, this CUP is granted. Do you understand where I'm coming from?
I understand exactly where you're coming from, and-
And I think that's, and I think that's part of what's being voiced by the appellant in an indirect way, but in some cases, but that's in fact what's going on.
Correct. And obviously, you've seen, you know, what the existence is and going forward. The only time, only we can demonstrate that our character is of the quality as an operator, that we will be good stewards of the land, and I can sit here and assure you now, but I want to be back and take you out there next year and ensure that all those conditions continue to be complied with. And if we do have additional graffiti or something, that we will paint over that graffiti, and we'll maintain these conditions and compliance. It's very important to us that we project that we are a good steward of the land and a good operator, and that's the way that our corporation is.
Thank you for your response.
Any other questions? I got one, Bruce.
Sure.
We received this information from Blue Tomorrow LLC about Number 7. I don't know if you had an opportunity to review that.
Some of that was posted late last night, and my son graduated high school yesterday, so we were doing all that last night.
Now, you really get to pay for them.
Yeah.
Okay. Then, there's no reason. It's already been stated since it's not a certified, but my main question to you was, if you'd read it, was there any useful information that you received that could improve your operation? Obviously, you haven't read it, so.
I haven't read the whole thing, and I don't want to, you know, there's some stuff in there. It's scientific data, and I would defer to possibly some of our consultants. So, I would be hesitant to comment on what's in there.
Trust me. I just want to know if you found any useful information. That was my point, because again, we're trying to be collaborative.
If there is, we would look into it.
Okay. All right. Thank you. All right. Anything else, Bruce? Thank you very much. Steve, if you want to wrap it up?
Yeah. Commissioners, thank you for your time. Thank you for allowing us to respond to questions, and obviously, we'll be here, and we support, again, support staff's recommendations to deny the appeals and amend the conditional use permit. So, thank you very much.
All right. As, though I know some people don't believe there's a process, it is, but it's painful up here. So, as I stated at the beginning, the appellant gets to have the final rebuttal, then we will get the staff's input, and then we'll close the public hearing and make a decision. Who would like to finish? Jeff or John?
This one. One thing that I did that.
And boy, am I hungry.
That was for the apple I got up here.
The one, Commissioner, Chair Westner and Commissioner Idukas, you were mentioning the drain on the facility, on the oil and gas facility of Drill Pad 7. The Blue Tomorrow report, which was scientific data, disclosed that it was within 50 feet of the redline channel. That is in clear violation of the Non-Costal Zoning Act, even by any interpretation. You cannot put facilities within 50 feet of a redline channel, period. That is part of the facility. It drains into the creek on a very mild rain event, which that picture was. You saw the ponding and the petroleum that was on it, and the whole drill pad drains in that direction. It's not a bypass for the pad. Also, again, someone was talking about a boulder falling on a pipeline. That is not a strange phenomenon. The cliff, if you look at the picture of that drill pad, the cliff above that drill pad has collapsed repeatedly during flood events. The hiking trail that used to be there has been obliterated. The fence that used to be there has been crushed. Rocks come off of that in a rain event, and they come down, and hopefully, they won't hit those pipelines up there. I don't know, but they certainly could. And I thank you, Commissioner Rodriguez, for talking about how, why does it take an application to get compliance of a CUP? To all the oil industry people that are here today, hey, we get it. We know, we love your jobs. We're not opposed to those things. We're trying to get the environment better so that we all continue to live in this county, and we don't bring these up facetiously or without any kind of scientific backing. That's why we went to the expense of getting a consultant report on that drill pad. If Mr. Baca chooses to ignore it and doesn't interpret the information that's contained in it, that's his choice. Maybe we'll talk about it again down the line. I got a communication from the co-author of the report today, who was traveling and out of town, that he said, if you want a, was it a PE stamp or DE stamp or whatever it is, for an engineering stamp on the document, we'd be happy to provide it at a future date. We support the data, and it's accurate. Thank you so much.
Okay. Thank you, John. Jeff, did you want to finish anything?
Just really, really briefly, wanted to thank you all again for your time today. I know we've all been here a lot this morning, and again, want to reiterate that we support jobs. We are not out to demolish the oil industry. Our job here is to make sure that permit conditions are complied with. Our job here is to make sure that the environment is protected, and our job here is to make sure that when new information comes up on these old environmental analyses, that we all do an adequate job of evaluating those and identifying what they are, getting all the data together and figuring out how to move forward. Even if the commission today decides to make changes to the permit conditions to require subsequent EIR, that's not, that's not the death knell of this oil facility. It can continue operating, because they have submitted their application before the permit expired- expired. So as the county sorts through what type of environmental review is most appropriate, the status quo remains as is, and we look forward to working with county staff and with the commission to make sure that we get to a point where this facility is up to code and we've covered all of our bases in terms of environmental impact. So thank you again for your service to this community and I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, ladies and gentlemen, just for clarity, because there's going to be the tendency to do this, we're going to now have staff's response. Remember, it's for our benefit, for our information purposes. There's going to be the tendency to try and rebut and answer while we're receiving that report. Please refrain from doing that because this is where we're going to ask questions. We've asked you, if at the end of that report, we want additional information from somebody, we'll bring you forward. But we're getting down to the point where we can complete the process and make a decision. Okay? So with that, who'd like to go first, staff? Oh, the big gun.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair Westner. I just wanted to touch on a few big items that I heard today, and I'm going to let Mr. Baca go through the rebuttal on the kind of point by point because I think it's important that we get it all on the record. First, I want to say to the appellant, to Mr. Kuiper and Mr. Brooks, that every time that they appeal, and I tell them this every time, there's something that we learn, right? There's something that we learn. I've learned something today. I think that there's something that we can modify in the permit. So I think the relationship is not adversarial. It's a beneficial relationship for both of us, and I think this is the public process playing out. A couple of things, like the violation. So where Mr. Kuiper says, hey, if you spy a violation when you're out there, you need to package up the whole application and send it back. Well, that doesn't really happen that way, right? So otherwise, nobody would survive a compliance review, right? If somebody was missing a portion of their landscaping, if somebody didn't have a locked gate, when the conditions say that you need to have a locked gate. But what goes out is a letter from the county that's saying, hey, your conditions say that you need to do this and you need to get on the ball and make it happen. But there is some discretion that's used by the compliance officer, and mind you, there's only one compliance officer. So I think that the issue of the facility wasn't being reviewed every five years is completely an error on the staff of the planning department. In the defense of the planning department, I would say we have thousands of permits that were permitted over a period of 70 years, and it's unusual to have a 30-year-old condition that says, we're going to do something every five years. Because the code says, we're going to do something every three years. So, you know, we've been talking about this for years since I've been the planning director, that we are putting together a very robust condition compliance, but it takes a long time to go back in history and pull each of those permits and build a database to make sure that every single thing has been addressed. But we do, you know, 100-plus reviews of existing permits every year. So it's not as if we're not looking at it, but I agree with Mr. Kuiper that we could do a better job. That being said, the conditional use permit is a contract with the applicant, and whether or not the county is watching you on an annual basis or every three years or every five years, it's irrelevant because you need to be doing those conditions whether or not the county is out there, right, paying attention. And so I think that, you know, there's a heightened awareness of that, and it's just the nature of the beast that things do get done during a review process. So that is the way that it happens. There's a heightened level of review when somebody is going through a permitting application, as it should be. But we're not shutting down applications because of lack of things such as landscaping, because landscaping has been a very big issue for us over the last year, where people are letting their landscaping die, where they're letting it go in certain areas. And it's very difficult for us to say, well, you need to run a water line out there and make that landscaping happen, right? So there's some deference giving to landscaping all through the county right now. I also want to talk a little bit about the letter that I received from the United States Department of Interior. It's dated July 18th, 2013. It's from the Fish and Wildlife Services. There's been much hay made about this letter, so I kind of wanted to put it in context. So the county and the state agency and the federal agencies, the Department of the Fish and Wildlife on both levels, we have a very good relationship. We have a working group where the county's biologists from both the planning department and from the watershed protection meet on a monthly basis with the state and federal, and we talk all sorts of issues. And we talk mightily about the condor, right, and what we can do on a case-by-case basis to make sure that we're doing the best possible for this endangered species. So Mr. Kuiper is not the only person that's concerned about the condor. The planning department is too, the county is too, and we pay a special attention to this. This letter, it's not like it was a letter that came out of the blue and said, you're not doing enough county, you better do more. It's a letter where the county sends our discretionary permits to all sorts of state and federal agencies. And whether or not we get a response from somebody as big as the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service or Caltrans on a case-by-case basis, we probably send them 10 projects a month, hey, here's what the county is doing. Whether or not they can focus and pay attention and give us a meaningful response on a case-by-case basis, that wasn't happening. So the better course of valor here was to say, well, why don't you just write us one letter, right, that talks about perhaps all things that we should do or keep into consideration? And that way, if we don't get a response from you, we wouldn't say in our typical, well, we didn't hear anything from the Fish and Wildlife Service, so everything must be good, right? Now we have a letter, July 18th, 2013, and I can assure you that the conditions, the discretionary permits that we've had, have, every single one of them have looked at this letter, have focused on this letter, and has paid special attention to the letter. A couple of things, everybody wants to, you know, point out special things in the letter and that mean something to them. But I would say it starts out as this, the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service recognizes the vital role that local jurisdictions play in the conservation of endangered and threatened species. And you are often the first to become aware of a proposed development project or other changes in land use that could affect undeveloped areas and typically implement environmental review processes that require disclosure of important information in the presence of sensitive species. The service appreciates this function, and we are writing to provide you with information that we would recommend considering during the review. So the word recommend, that's important to me. I don't just say, oh, they're recommending it so I can willy-nilly take it. A federal agency is recommending something to be on an endangered species, I'm paying attention, right? And then they say, to assist in this process, we are enclosing a list of measures for you to consider incorporating. So we consider them mightily. They also say in the letter that, we understand that each oil and gas project is unique and every measure will not be applicable to all projects. So we take that into consideration. And then it says, with your cooperation, we can help ensure that oil and gas exploration, development, and production activities in Ventura County are compatible with the conservation of the California condor. So I think that the agency is recognizing that you can condition them to be compatible. But the most important thing on the condor to me is where it says, to assist in the process, we are enclosing a list of mitigation measures for you to consider incorporating, which will help protect the condor from potential adverse effects of the oil and gas projects. So to me, I'm always looking, right? This is the critical issue. So we're not digging in, we're trying to find the substantial evidence. What is the substantial evidence that adding five new wells on an existing drill pad, as it's existing, with apparently the condors landing all around it, what is the impact of the five new ones going to have on the California condor for me to say I've chose the wrong environmental document? So that's what you're going to have to struggle with, right? That's the crux of the argument that I'm always struggling with. Is the evidence of what do I have before me even when the agency that is there to protect it is saying, these uses can coexist and add these conditions on there, right? And so I just want to, I hear about this letter all the time. I have this letter in my office. I just want you to understand and the public to understand, and Mr. Kuiper to understand that I take the letter very seriously, and we have a very collegial and working, a good working relationship with this agency. So I'm going to let Brian talk about the point-by-point issues, but I did want to get that on the record.
Chair Westner, members of the commission, I'm as hungry as Mr. Brooks is, but that's not important, is it? I have a series of one-liners here, and I'm going to save the greenhouse gas discussion for the end. So just to give you a headline, but the rest are pretty short responses. First, on the landscaping, and I wanted to make the point about drill site seven. It is acknowledged in the EIR and in the MND that is in your packet, that hikers will have a clear view of the oil wells on drill site seven. And so there was never a thought that there would be the trail going around the drill site, and the hikers would not have a clear view of the oil wells going up and down on drill site seven. So that issue in terms of recreation and impacts on the trail was already addressed and acknowledged early on and approved. So the view along the trail of drill site seven is what was contemplated, is part of the existing setting, and also that particular section, the trail's about 500 feet long, and you would compare that to the 100,000 feet of trails that immediately follow that spot. So there's about, you know, 200 times the length of trail than the particular 500 feet that you would walk past the wells at the end of a paved road. So if it was going to be anywhere, that's where it would be. And one thing I'd like to point out, drill site seven was approved by the county. There was a compliance review of that pad when it was constructed, that is of the planning department, prior to any wells being drilled on it. It was found to be in compliance with the approval of the planning commission, or provide, excuse me, the board. And it was also permitted and engineered in accordance with standards and permitted under grading permit 7355, permitted by the Public Works Agency. And they've approved that permit, and that was done back in 1988. And then in 89 and 93, wells were drilled on that pad. So the pad is exactly what the county has approved. It's exactly the same today as it was then. And so the landscaping plan, there is an approved landscaping plan for drill pad number seven. There is no planting inside the fence on that approved landscaping plan. All the planting is on the outside of the public trail, and as you can see from the photographs, the planting is alive on the outside of the public trail. Including in the area photograph, you look down, the entire bank outside the public trail is all vegetated. Well, that's precisely what the approved landscape plan that was approved in 1987 says. And so there's no violation of a landscape plan there. The issue of screening, there's a condition that says that sites should be screened so that you don't look at the oil facilities to the extent determined reasonably feasible by the planning director. Well, the former planning director found the site in its current condition to be fine, and that was what was reasonably feasible. And there hasn't been a change since, even though we've had, you know, several downgrades in planning directors. And so there's not a problem with drill site seven. Regarding pipelines and oil spills, number one, the pipeline there, the fluids have been piped from that site since 1982. In fact, there was a condition of the original permit that said, you have until August 31 of 1982, and after that, you may not truck anymore. And so they beat the clock. They had the pipeline in service on August 25th, 1982, and they haven't trucked oil since then. Now, later on, they also piped over the wastewater over to the Hamp lease so that there'd be no trucking at all, even of wastewater. So all the facilities were consolidated with the Hamp lease, and so there's really no production facilities on the Ferndale lease, that's the subject of this permit. Now pursuant to Public Resources Code 3106, the state oil and gas supervisor, that would be the equivalent of DOGAR, they regulate and permit and are responsible for all of the ancillary facilities at an oil site. So those kind of facilities are regulated by DOGAR. And of course, among the conditions of approval is that before they get their zoning clearance for use inauguration, they have to demonstrate that they're in compliance with everything, including all of DOGAR regulations in terms of spill plans and pipeline tests and everything else. And of course, we would require a written certification from DOGAR that they have completed all those missions. An issue that came up, and I think it was a real issue, and I'm not sure whether it was Mr. Brooks or Mr. Kuiper, and that was having to do with, well, when do they have to implement the conditions that would be on the recommended permit that's before you today? And what is in the permit now is our standard language for any conditional use permit, which gives them a year to get a zoning clearance for use inauguration. And that would be a point of full discretion by your commission, since we have a situation where the current permit has expired, and they're coming for a new permit, and you may decide that a year is too long. And I just point that out, that's a standard condition, and you may wish to change that and have them implement these things sooner. And that's perfectly fine. The condors and steelhead, again, it's an existing setting, and in terms of the steelhead, there was no evidence or information to indicate that there was any effect on aquatic wildlife in the earlier documents. And the wells that are being proposed, they all meet the setback for biologic reasons specified in the zoning ordinance. And our planning division biologist determined there's no potential for effect of aquatic wildlife with the wells being set back the distance that's recommended. And of course, again, the pad itself is existing. Regarding the pad, which came up, the pad is exactly the way it was approved, you know, in 1988, and by both Public Works and by the planning department. And so the pad includes, of course, a drain at one end. The pad's designed as a large, flat bowl, and the idea is that you contain runoff on the pad, and then you meter it out at a lower rate to drain the pad. And there's always a little bit of water left at the far end next to the drain, but when you look at it, it's intended to slowly meter the water out so that you don't have a big gush of water from the pad and erosion of the pad. And it's bermed also for any potential spill problems. So that's a common technique, and we don't consider that to be a facility in terms of the setbacks in 8107-5.6 of the NCZO. That specifically refers to the location of wells relative to the creek. And those wells will all meet the appropriate setback. And getting back to the setback issue, and this goes back to Blue Tomorrow or some other color today, the issue of the setbacks and the engineering of the pad was evaluated by M3 Civil Engineering, that would be Catherine McCouney. She's a registered civil engineer, and her number is 43604. And so we have a civil engineering report regarding the pad and any potential flood issues on the pad, and she states that there are none. And then we have the memorandum prepared by myself and evaluating the consistency with 8107-5.6 setback standards. That's signed by me, a certified engineering geologist. It's also been reviewed by the Watershed Protection District and the Engineering Division of the Public Works Department, and it's been approved by that department because, of course, that section of the NCZO requires approval by Public Works Agency if you're going to have less than a 300-foot setback from the top of bank of a redline channel. And so they have approved, in accordance with the ordinance, a 100-foot setback for any new wells. And there's room on the pad to accommodate the wells at that kind of a setback. There was a statement that we were getting away without doing an EIR. And I would submit that the volume of your staff package would indicate that we're not getting away with anything. We don't even attempt to get away with anything. Every time we get commentary, we evaluate it according to regulations and law, and we take it all very seriously. And I think you can see by the staff memorandum dated yesterday and the volume of staff work here that we take everything seriously, and we're not opposed to doing an EIR. And like I said earlier, we have an EIR out for circulation right now that is for a project that's approximately a mile and a half to the west of this project for only a three-well project. Because the particular circumstances of that project tripped the thresholds cited by Mr. Kuiper, which required an EIR to be prepared. So we're ready to do an EIR as long as we see substantial evidence and the trip wires are met. In this case, we don't see it. Again, we had comments about the recreational and visual impacts. They're not changed with this project unless you find, you know, I mean, the view of wells and the well pad is what was anticipated, and it's part of the existing setting. And it's a very small section of the overall trail area that is even involved with the pad of interest. The CEQA addendum, and there was an issue about whether you can addendumize a pile of previously certified documents. Well, that's precisely what CEQA anticipates, is the use of certified documents and having their modification by either a supplemental EIR or an addendum at some point in time. That is clearly a common practice, and it's anticipated by CEQA that you wouldn't That is clearly a common practice, and it's anticipated by SEQA that you wouldn't rewrite a new EIR every time you have some particular issue. You would do a supplemental document. Where you don't find a potentially significant impact, you do an addendum. Where you do find a potentially significant impact, even in one issue area, you would do a supplement. And if you find that the previous document really is inadequate to describe the situation that's on the ground today, you would do a subsequent EIR, which is a completely redone EIR. And which is the kind of EIR that we did for the other project about a mile away. So there's no procedural problem with doing an addendum to the existing certified environmental impact reports. In terms of the issue, and Ms. Pearlheart mentioned it, and I'll reiterate it, when we're processing an application and a violation is discovered, it says that you can't process the application. Well, that would be true if the permit request that you're evaluating would not abate the violations. So we're dealing with all the issues that Mr. Kuiper has identified as potential violations. And I'll give you an example. There's a permit condition that says Drill Site 7 should be paved. It is not paved. Well, we have different stormwater thoughts these days than we had back in 1985, and the entire, you know, it's been an entire turnaround as to how stormwater is handled since 85. The idea then was to have it sheet off the site as fast as possible and send it into the creek. And now, under current regulations and thought, you're not to do that. You're supposed to retain it on-site, in fact, and let it circle into the ground, sort of like a little pool at the end of the pad. That is more consistent with stormwater regulations. Are they in violation of that condition? Yes, it was never paved. But our recommendation is to eliminate that condition, thus the permit that's before you would abate that violation. And in fact, some of the modifications of the past, Mr. Kuiper, Mr. Brooks are right that there is a history of violations on this site, and many of the CUP modifications addressed those violations. There's no notices of violation that are actively on the site now by either us or by DOGAR or by the Air Pollution Control District. Now, Mr. Kuiper mentioned that he had submitted a letter involving what he perceives to be violations on the site, and he submitted it after the planning director hearing. Well, that's an interesting procedural problem. He submitted the letter after the close of the public hearing in front of the planning director. We were not able to take additional testimony after the hearing had closed and take private testimony by a letter given to us on a project for which the public hearing had been closed. So we had to make the decision based upon the administrative record in front of the planning director at that time, and then we dealt with his letter. And then while I was preparing the response to his letter, he appealed the case. And so then I sent him a letter, says, well, since you've appealed it, I'll just include the stuff in the staff report for the hearing that you're going to have, and you can have the same, you know, stuff in front of the, what is now the decision maker, the Planning Commission. So that's the issue that happened there. There was commentary that a qualified hydrogeologist should look at the groundwater situation. Well, one has, that would be me. I'm certified hydrogeologist, number 398, in the state of California. And I can assure you that 10 acre feet of water withdrawn over a 30-year period will not cause any kind of a significant impact on any aquifer in the county of Ventura. It's not very much water. And when you do the math, and if you had a well pumping, say, from some aquifer, for one year, at six gallons a minute, you'd produce 10 acre feet of water. So it's not very much water in the grand scheme of water. Tens of thousands of acre feet of groundwater are pumped in the county every year. And so this has literally no effect on any aquifer. Now, that was one issue, that would be the sort of water demand and groundwater effects. Then the other issue is whether the injection well at the Hamp is causing some kind of a problem. Well, that particular injection well was reviewed by DOGAR, and in fact, found by DOGAR, that's the Sacramento version, to be completely inconsistent with regulations, and also that it is injecting water into the same unit below the ground, 5,000 feet below the ground, that the water is being produced from on the other side of the creek. So under the ground, the same formation, myosene shale, just extends between the Hamp Lees and the Ferndale Lees. So the water's being injected right back into the same formation from which it came.
Mr. Bakka, would you yield for a question for a moment?
Sure.
Commissioner Dukas.
I don't mean to interrupt, but there was something that came up regarding the amount of water in your previous point, not the one you just made. There was testimony read into the record about, from Helen Conley, that we're talking about 19 months and not 30 years. Do you recall that testimony?
There was some confusion of the factors there. It's a 30-year permit, and there's 19 wells. And the 19 wells require about 10 acre feet of water to drill.
Oh, I thought, I thought that the point that was made was that the water use was more intensive, and it actually doesn't take place over 30 years, it takes place during a very short period of time. Was that not correct?
Well, you know, the permit as it is structured now doesn't have any particular rate at which they can drill oil wells. The record of the past is they drilled 17 wells in a 20-year period.
I think the concern was that this is a sudden, and, you know, I'm just recalling what the person read to us, that there was this sudden demand for water that can't be sustained. Is that so, or no?
There is no problem with sustaining, I mean, we don't have any evidence they're going to drill all 19 wells at once, but because that generally doesn't happen. Normally, they drill a well, they evaluate the geologic situation before they decide where to drill the next well. So I'd be shocked if they drilled more than three wells in one year, even at the most rapid pace, and you can ask the applicant. But even if they took 10 acre feet of water and did it in one year, that's a temporary, one-time use of water that's not repeated. This is not a land use that involves a long-term use of water. So it still would not be a significant impact under county standards. And there'd be no problem coming up with 10 acre feet of water.
Commissioner Rodriguez had a question?
I have a follow-up question on your response to Commissioner Dukas. The documentation we've all read, I certainly have read, mentioned the fact that there's no fracking going on, and there's no plan to do any fracking as a form of extraction. However, there's a caveat there, unless the conditions or something to the effect allow it to occur. At this point, none is going on. Being the devil's advocate here for a second, and since you mentioned that the water is being extracted out, is being pumped back in via another well, back into the original source, what is going to happen if fracking comes to pass with the water and whatever is else is being used to extract that oil, is I assume being pumped back in to the original source of the water? If I understood you correctly?
Well, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Rodriguez, the current situation is that they produce oil and they separate the wastewater, that is salty brine, from the oil. The oil is sent by pipeline down to Wilmington, and the water is injected in the Hamp 72 right back into the same formation at a point below the oil-water contact. So the water is sent back from where it came. And that isn't a groundwater aquifer, that's a salty, brine aquifer, that's wastewater, that's, you know, the freshwater base would be up in the neighborhood of 400 or 500 feet below ground. They're injecting at a mile below the ground. For fracking, the, you're allowed to do what your permit says you're allowed to do and nothing else. And because of commentary by Sea Frog and those other, and other people, we've made it a practice that, and basically based on direction from the Board of Supervisors, to ask the question, are you going to be fracking or are you not? And if you are going to be fracking, we would have to do environmental review on that, and it would be part of your permit. They have not, and it's specific in their condition, and we've made it specific, I believe, from a question from Supervisor Park's office, we've made it specific in the conditions that if you are going to frac, it requires a modifications hearing, and it can't be done with a permit adjustment because it requires, also requires a public hearing and additional environmental review. So it's very clear in the permit conditions that they cannot frac. So we're not analyzing a project that's not before us today. And if they came back and said, we want to do a frac job, well, we'd have to analyze the water use, where it's going to go, and the environmental review thereof. Now, the background here is that the state is doing a large EIR that the county has commented on regarding the impacts of acid well stimulation and hydraulic fracturing. And so that EIR has not yet been certified by the state, and Mr. Kuiper's commented on it, so have we, and we're all waiting to see what happens with that process at the state. But it's not part of the project today, so there's no analysis of a project that's not before us.
Thanks. Your response then was that whatever is injected back into the ground, if that, if the fracking situation came to pass, is not going to be in an aquifer that would be used for human consumption?
Commissioner Rodriguez, after the recent excitement in the newspaper, I imagine any injection in the ground on the basis of a new facility is going to be looked at with incredible scrutiny by the state of California.
Thank you.
Let's see here. Oh, there was a question about archaeological impacts. Well, first off, the best information we have is the archaeological studies that have already been done that show that the drill sites are outside of the archaeological site. So we start with the point that the drill sites are already there, there's going to be no new grading, and so there's no sort of mass area where you could possibly affect any intact archaeological site. The second point would be that an oil well has approximately, the surface casing is approximately 16 inches in diameter. And as a round number, let's call it two square feet. So 19 wells would affect below the ground, only 38 square feet, all 19 wells. These are not doing any grading, they would just put a, they would put a pad on the ground, and they would just dig a hole. Maybe you could take a small, six-foot circle for the cellar, but it's a very minimal amount of area that is used for the well itself. Now that being said, the wells that, the drilling pads we have now are cut pads. And what is below the immediate surface of the pads is myosene bedrock, which is millions of years old. So there's no possibility of cultural resources from the Chumash era or any era of human existence to be there below the ground, because these are cut pads. And so it's just simply not possible. And I say that as a licensed geologist, it's not possible. So there really is no potential effect on archaeological resources. And the compliance review, we do have, I mean, I would like to point out that at least in the early days, you know, shortly after Pad 7 and the current permit was granted, there was in January of 1988, a specific compliance review done by the county planning division. And it was, and there was also at a similar time, a compliance review done by the Public Works Agency. And in both cases, they found Drill Site 7 and the site as a whole to be in compliance with all the permit conditions that had just been granted by the Board a few years earlier. So the contemporaneous record is that it was in compliance, and there was a compliance review when it started. And now, lastly and not least, greenhouse gas analysis. I've discussed this with the Air Pollution Control District, and Mr. Colom was gracious enough to contact the district last night and express his concerns. And the district last night also sent me a memorandum saying even using Mr. Colom's numbers, it still doesn't come up to the threshold of significance. The numbers Mr. Colom had on the screen included a factor of, one of the factors he uses was 100. Well, the adopted factor is 25. And so even if he says 15,000 tons, it's actually 4,000. And the memorandum I have from the Air Pollution Control District is even using these higher numbers, it's somewhere between 2,700 and 5,500 tons a year as a maximum. And even that is sort of over the top. One thing to point out is that, that was in some of the commentary, is that the leaks along the pipelines should be evaluated for, as part of the impact. Well, the gas pipeline already exists, and it connects up to Southern California Edison, and it just becomes part of the Southern California Edison system. And so the minimal amount of gas coming from this oil field facility is negligible compared to the amount of gas that's in the Southern California Gas Company system. And it would have virtually no effect on any leakage or pressures in the Southern California Edison system. And so whatever leaks are there now would stay the same, and there'd be no incremental effect of these wells. So what it's talking about is the incremental effect of the leakage of each well. And they, there is an EPA number that is, it is a standard in the industry, and that's what the Air Pollution Control District is using. It's published standard numbers that are used by the EPA and by the California Air Resources Board. And it's two pounds a day of leakage is what they estimate from each oil well. And so given that, they've done the analysis, and it doesn't come close. Now, it was pointed out that I was engaging in unprofessional work, and that my performance in this regard was embarrassing. Well, that's up for, that's up for the commission to discuss and determine. But the analysis that was done previously for the Marata Petroleum Project and for this one, it first came from the Air Pollution Control District assisting me in the Marata case, and then I translated it and just used it, the same analysis for this case, since they're very close to each other. There were some minor typos and errors, but the errors we had were that we overestimated the amount of gas, not underestimated. And that analysis was a screening analysis. It wasn't intended to be a complete and thorough rendition of analysis. It was merely to see if it was even within the range where a more detailed analysis would be needed. It wasn't, it's not even close to the 10,000 metric tons per year threshold. And then again, of course, you have to look at it in terms of, not all 19 wells will immediately be drilled. They'll be drilled over a period of time, largely in response to price spikes in the world price of oil. And so it's a worst case, even a really highly, and this would be the word I got from the Air Pollution Control District last night and today, even in the worst possible case, you won't even approach the 10,000 ton per year limit. So I think that is about it for me, and I'm sure it's, you've reached full saturation level.
Oh, don't, we were enjoying this. Commissioner Dukas? I know the audience is.
There was one more point that there was, that Mr. Colom made about an executive order from the Office of the Governor, and how it might impact this, that there's some kind of change.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Dukas, you know, we're of course aware of executive orders and the whole idea of greenhouse gas analysis, but there's no executive order saying you should take the standard number used by the EPA and CARB and multiply it times four. We just, we do analysis based upon the standards we have available and the SEQA threshold we have available. We haven't received any policy guidance from the Governor that we should jump all our numbers and make sure things are over 10,000 metric tons.
Any other questions? Commissioner Kelly? General? Anything in County Council? Any questions of any member of the audience? With that, ladies and gentlemen, I am closing the public hearing, and the commission will deliberate. Rich? Did you want, anybody want to deliberate, or we're just going to? Rich?
Yeah, I'll deliberate. There's a lot of things about this that trouble me, not the least of which is granting a fresh CUP for 30 years. Given the change that has occurred technologically, environmentally, et cetera, et cetera, and the things that are on the horizon, I'm troubled by that. I've read, as I assume most of the, most of the people here have read, about the issues related to groundwater intrusions and the contamination. And DOGAR, and Mr. Bakka is, I think, a board member or something related to DOGAR, as I recall from a previous presentation you made, they're taking a lot of heat, and it seems like a major criticism was that they're not doing the job that they're supposed to be doing. doing the job that they're supposed to be doing. I realize that's not necessarily out of, in our control, but we depend on Dogger to do their job so that we can come in with appropriate reports and responses to this commission and/or the board as it relates to issues like this. And I don't know what their inspection requirements are of an operation such as CRC, for example. I don't know whether it's mandatory, I don't know whether it's scheduled, but maybe Mr. Baca might have a comment on that.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Rodriguez, Dogger inspects all the wells every year. And so on occasion, Dogger and the Air Pollution Control District run across each other, because they also do an inspection every year, and they use equipment to make sure that oil wells are not leaking. And so there's two agencies that inspect every oil well every year. Oh, and just to, I never worked for Dogger. I was working for Union Oil and was subject to their regulation for 10 years, but, and I had hair at that time.
I remember that.
Yeah, I was on the State Mining and Geology Board for eight years.
My apologies, I knew there was something there. It's unfortunate that although we write regulations into the CUPs as it relates to inspections and stuff, and the applicant is required to submit monetary deposit of some kind for those, to pay for those inspections, that it hasn't occurred on some regular basis. I would assume that part of what the director talked about is part of this catch-up cleanup is to create some sort of tickler, if you will, so that these things are addressed with some regularity, and they're not just there without any teeth, and for us not be able to discover the problems until 30 years later when the CUP is up for renewal. And I think we're going in that direction. I think I heard Mr. Baca also state as it relates to compliance with conditions in the CUPs, that it's discretionary on the part of the board as to when they require those compliances with the conditions of the CUP. You mentioned a year, and I forget what the circumstance was that you mentioned that under, but is that something that we would want to consider as a matter of practice?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Rodriguez, when we have a sort of a standard CUP case where someone is not conducting the use that they're requesting, it's just a new CUP, they would have a year as a standard condition to get a zoning clearance for use inauguration, or the CUP expires. That is, the approval of a CUP is not in effect, and it literally expires within a year if you don't get a zoning clearance. In this case, we have an operating facility, and their former CUP carries an expiration date four months ago. It's clearly within the discretion of your commission to give them a shorter timeframe for getting the zoning clearance for use inauguration, which would also shorten the timeframe for compliance with all of the conditions that are required. And so whatever timeframe you choose, that'll be their deadline for getting things done. And right now, it's a year, and you could make it shorter than that.
Well, I'm not advocating necessarily making the conditions, compliance with the conditions shorter. I'm just, I guess my, the point of my question is, on the other conditions of the CUP, how the county becomes aware that they've been complied with if there isn't any inspection that occurs, unless it's written in to the process that all conditions should be in place. And I'll use a simple one, i.e. landscaping, since we've talked about that. And I've got thoughts both ways on that, but just to use that as an example, if in fact landscaping was supposed to occur to some degree, what happened?
So just in general, if you're talking about in general, you know, moving forward, the process, the condition use permits that we process now, we have a very robust condition compliance program in. So, you know, we know right now, and we have for years, for several years, so the projects that we approve now go to a condition compliance officer, it's all detailed out, we do have a tickler system, it spits out a report every month saying, here's the 19 or 27 that you need to do this month. So that's been moving forward. The issue is us moving back, you know, it takes a long time to move back into thousands of permits to find every condition that says, and every one of them, as you can imagine, are very, very different. So I wouldn't be concerned about our ability to do condition compliance moving forward, you know, with a brand-new set of conditions that this implements, because once a permit is approved, it moves to someone else now that does condition compliance and logs in every single thing that needs to be done, the mitigation monitoring, reporting program, as well as the conditions. So there's quite a robust system that happens for that.
Thank you. I don't know if the other commissioners have any thoughts on that or not. That was something that occurred to me.
Commissioner Kelly?
Well, I just, I noticed in the conditions, there is, you know, timing, documentation, a lot of things have to be photographed and presented to the planning division to prove that they've been complied with. So it seems like going forward, there's a good system.
My comment on that would be, we've had situations where we have been sensitive to a situation, things have been brought up, the issue of whether the compliance will or not be done. We have set a report back in our conditions to this body, so that does, not only puts staff on recognition, but also the applicant, that the clock is ticking and somebody will review it. So that might be something we would want to consider in this particular case as we go forward, because of the concerns that have been raised today, if it should be approved. Any further comments?
Well, trailing on your comment, if we go forward with this, I think that's something I would like to see incorporated into the CUP, some sort of report back regarding compliance back to staff.
And to be brought back before the commission by the director. However you would like to work. What are we doing? They're worried about the fact that the zoning clearance, that whole issue, to bring it, to either shorten it up.
Right now, they got a year.
They got a year. And/or, how do we know they're going to comply with these things? That's been one of the issues that has been raised. What we have done in the past is, part of the condition is that the staff through the applicant brings it back in front of us to ensure that that tracking and the compliance is being performed.
Does it have to come back to us? They got a year, they'll report to her if it's.
But then she can counter to bring it to us, so that if she feels the compliance is not being done, she can bring the applicant back before us.
Yeah, I think that would be the appropriate thing.
Okay.
If in fact we go forward.
But what you do then anyways, a matter of course, you probably embark on a potential sanction, so you notice, you go through a notice procedure.
Major?
So Commissioner Anstott, I believe what Commissioner Rodriguez is asking that we do is perhaps, they have a year to come back.
Right.
You know, they have a year to work through all these issues, that's very standard, there's usually a lot to work through. And then you come in and you get your use inauguration permit, and that's what one person here at the county is doing, working through all their issues, making sure they get a permit on time. What I heard Commissioner Rodriguez be interested in is that we would come back then and report that back to the planning commission as saying, yes, all of that happened in this particular case. I know that your commission has done that on a couple of cases before, to saying, we want to, we want to take a look at this permit in a year from now, or we want to take a look, or we want you to report as the planning director to the commission that everything went according to plan.
Do we really want to look at it, or just know that zoning clearance has been issued? That means the same thing to me.
That would be at your discretion.
I would feel more comfortable if the report came back to the director, and then if compliance didn't occur, the director could always bring it back to us. I don't think we have to have it come back directly to us if we've already, if everything is fine, there's no reason to deal with it. If you're comfortable incorporating that into the CUPs, then the applicants will accept that.
Yeah, I don't believe that's going to be an issue.
Commissioner Dukas, Commissioner Campbell?
I'm just wondering, do we need to address the landscaping, or are we clear on that? How are we leaving the landscaping?
Well, Condition 70 says it's, they've got to comply, it's within Kim's discretion to relieve them. You know, going back in the history of this thing, I was around day one when they were told to plant sheer slopes on the back with a cherry picker, if necessary, I remember a rather heated conversation. And a lot of it is very difficult, incredibly expensive, and they went through several plantings, and none of it took. And so I just soon leave 70 the way it is and leave it in her discretion. I would concur with that. I think the director has the ability to make that discretionary. I mean, and one final comment regarding the fencing that occurred, it's in place now. You've cleaned up a lot of graffiti as you, but as I, and this isn't my first rodeo, but seeing that screening, that's going to be your next problem. So I'm not sure if that necessarily in the long term is the appropriate issue. But you worked with the director to figure that out. Thank you.
And I do commend you for putting up surveillance cameras. I think that was a good move.
Commissioner Dukas?
Yeah, I agree with you. I did note that Bruce Carter invited us to come visit in a year. What do you think of taking him up on that?
Road trip?
Well, okay, I'm disquieted by Los Padres Forest Watch saying that their job is to make sure that these permits are in compliance. That shouldn't be the public's job. That's burdensome, that's not fair. That's not right. That should be on you as your operators. And I have every confidence, based on what you've done so far, that you will continue to do so going forward. It's just, you know, these things that were neglected in the past, these old permits that kind of lost, they don't have the same level of attention that we do now. But going forward, they will. So I see that as a positive thing. But the thing that concerns me about the screening of that area is that, I see that as a target for taggers. And it's just something that, anything that the operator can do to lessen that, the less ugly it will be. So I'd like to, I don't necessarily think that going by that short area of industrial use spoils my enjoyment of the trail, that's my opinion. I look at it, you know, and I just, I keep moving forward. What really bothers me is the areas that are graffitied on the rocks. All around that area, it's, that ruins the experience for me. The difference, I get really into the details on this kind of thing, on whether or not we really are crossing every t and dotting every i with regard to SECP review. And I think the county has. I think that every criticism, every point that was made has been asked and answered to my satisfaction. I understand the frustration, you feel like you're hitting your head up against a brick wall. I don't like feeling like I'm the brick wall, because I'm very interested in making sure that the condor continues to flourish, because I remember the days when there were none in the wild. And now we have a success story, there's a nesting pair. I think that's an incredible success story. I hope that the operator will do the training and put up the signage and continue to make sure that those sites are spick and span, because we do know, we have had evidence, not of this particular operation on the health of condors, but we know condors like to get into trash. We've seen pictures of it, whether it's this one or not. I find that kind of, that argument is kind of specious, in my opinion. We do know that they're in the area, they're curious birds, and they get into trouble. And I think it's our duty as stewards of the environment and caretakers of this creation that God gave us, that we should do everything in our power. I think we are, I think the operator could do a little more in getting those signs up, as has been suggested, to make sure, and make sure the operators and all these good men that come out and represent the workers that will be there, that they too take care about the hikers that use the facility and all the partiers that go up there, and who knows what else goes up there with their trash. I don't know what you can do. Just make sure that what you have responsibility for, that you take it seriously, because we do. I do. So I'm prepared to move staff recommendation to, on H1 through 8, as in the staff report.
I have a motion on.
Second.
I have a second. Any discussion on the motion? No, Commissioner Anstott. The only discussion I would have would, are you comfortable that you sufficient direction to the planning director to report? Yeah, well, yeah, yeah. You feel comfortable that she can handle it?
Yeah, I think, yeah, I think.
You want to make it part of the motion?
I don't think we have to.
Okay. All right, will the, make of the motion, amend the motion to include all the exhibits that we received today?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion on this? Please vote.
Oh, jeez.
It's the left. He went to the University of California, what can I say? All right, ladies and gentlemen, the appeal is denied, the applicant's getting his permit. I do want to say something to the appellant's. Thank you, thank you, thank you. I know it's expensive in your time. And if I could get one person to explain, even one paragraph in this bootleg to me, not being facetious, it's one of those things, obviously a lot of technical knowledge went into this. And so we appreciate you bringing it to us so we can hear it. Ladies and gentlemen, I want to thank you for your time. We do have a couple other small things to take care of, like the planning director to tell us what to do. So if you need, give us a couple minutes, and then we'll come back to the hearing. No, 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 I said we wait for them to exit the room, and then we'll.
You might have a point on three years. That's a long time. Yeah. It is a long time.
Yeah.
And just, just the show.
I know, I know. Just one of the conversations I have with the groups pulling the general plan. I said, that's one of the problems, we have to deal with what's behind us, and I understand as a lawyer, it's called case precedent. But when you turn around with new information, how do you reach out and use it?
Okay.
Without blowing everything up behind you? Because there's constantly. And when you're giving people 10, 20 years.
They're going to take it seriously, they're going to turn into, was it Peter and the mother kid that cried when he left the camera, nobody was. There was no evidence.
Yeah, and the liability, the minute you put that home.
If somebody, if they asked me, if they asked for their money back, I would have prepared to say, I'm prepared, I had my way, I would surcharge you for that appeal.
All right, I think we have a clearing on the room. Going back to our agenda, we now get to hear from the planning director on board actions, item 7.
Thank you very much, Chair Westner. I wanted to report that the board did meet last week, I'm not sure if you all saw that on your, they upheld your decision on a 5-0 vote. It was a 5-0 vote from your planning commission for the appeal of Los Padres Forest Watch on the zoning clearance issue. So that also was upheld by the board, and hopefully that issue has been put to rest. We have a couple of, you guys have a, you have a very busy schedule, if you've looked at it. So yes, your tentative schedule is packed. So what you have going on in July, July 7th is the hearing that we were speaking about before, it's going to be the Joint Board of Supervisors Planning Commission Study Session on the general plan update and the scope of work for that. So that will be the first time we're doing a joint study session workshop, and.
Yeah. That will work.
Oh, it will, it will work. Lots of different people meet in this room besides the board that have a lot more than five seats, so we'll just squeeze everybody in. And we'll lay out to you before the process, you have to share them. You have to share them. But we're, there's some information that we've been putting on our website, you know, we've conducted the three public outreach meetings and we've had interviews, probably 35 hours of individual interviews with, from, everybody from different spectrums. And so our consultant is putting all of that information together along with their analysis of our current general plan and then is going to be making a presentation and some recommendations. And then the Board will be directing them how to move forward with that process. So that will be an opportunity for the public once again to come out and speak and, and talk to you about their concerns with the general plan, how it's existing now and, you know, things that they may be interested in adding. So, that will be a, probably the complete afternoon on that. It starts at 1:30 on July 7th.
So there's public input too?
Public input too. It's a workshop.
So the Board gives the workshop?
No, the, it starts at 1:30. The Board is having their regular agenda. And typically, when things go to the Board of Supervisors, the, the Planning Department has the last issue of the day. We're almost always at a 1:30 time slot, just so we don't, we take the rest of their afternoon. We also have, I see July 16th and July 30th, so you have those dates. July 16th, the Saticoy Area Plan is going to be here for your recommendation to the Board. Also, there is the Santa Rosa Valley Trail Plan that Supervisor Parks and Chris Stevens, the Agency Director, has been working on a while, so they're going to come, or Chris will come and make that presentation to you on the 16th. And then on July 30th, there is a, a variance request on your calendar. And that's, that's all I have for you, unless you have something for me.
Anything for the Planning Director, other than to improve the process for the public?
I think that was a shorter timeframe that they wanted. That's completely in your discretion.
I went to UCLA, what do you want from me? I just find it fascinating. You try to cut us off, you don't let us talk, we let you talk to, we should go before them. Nobody's ever happy.
I think maybe we ought to consider taking affidavits from the public if we're inconvenienced them so much that they have to wait for their turn. But, that's just my opinion.
Well, we can have County Council research right after he gets back about us getting documents at the last minute. Hey, it just comes with the territory. All right, anything else with the good of the order, ladies and gentlemen? If not, this meeting is now adjourned.
I may make my doctor's appointment. I hurry.